Good morning. Welcome to the December 3, 2024, meeting of the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Yes, good morning. Supervisors Serna.
Here.
Desmond Frost, Hume.
Here.
Kennedy.
Here.
And you have a quorum. This meeting of the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors is live and recorded with closed captioning. It is cable cast on Metro Cable 14, the local government affairs channel, on the Comcast and DirecTV U-verse cable systems. It is also livestreamed at metro14live.saccounty.gov and can be heard on 96.5 FM KUBU Radio. Today's meeting will be repeated Friday, December 6, at 6:00 PM on Channel 14. This meeting can also be viewed at youtube.com/MetroCable14. The Board of Supervisors fosters public engagement during the meeting and encourages public participation, civility, and use of courteous language. The Board does not condone the use of profanity, vulgar language, gestures, or other inappropriate behavior, including personal attacks or threats directed towards any meeting participant. Seating is limited and available on a first-come, first-served basis. Each speaker will be given two minutes to make a public comment and are limited to making one comment per agenda or off-agenda item. Please be mindful of the public comment procedures to avoid being interrupted while making your comment. Comments made by the public during Board of Supervisors meetings may include information that could be inaccurate or misleading, particularly concerning topics related to public health, voter registrations, and elections. The County of Sacramento does not endorse or validate the accuracy of public statements made during these open public forums. The recordings are shared to provide transparency and access to the proceedings of public meetings. To make a comment in person, please fill out a speaker request form and hand it to clerk staff. The chairperson will open public comments for each agenda and off-agenda item and direct the clerk to call the name of each speaker. When the clerk calls your name, please come to the podium and make your comment. If a speaker is unavailable to make a comment prior to the closing of public comments, the speaker waives their request to speak and the clerk will file the speaker request form in the record. The clerk will also manage the timer and allow each speaker two minutes to make a comment. You may send written comments by email to boardclerk@saccounty.gov, and your comments will be routed to the Board and filed in the record. And if you need an accommodation pursuant to the Americans with Disabilities Act or for medical or other reasons, please see clerk staff for assistance or contact the clerk's office at 916-874-5451 or by email at boardclerk@saccounty.gov. Thank you in advance for your courtesy and understanding of the meeting procedures.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Will you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, proud, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and all.
First item, please.
Our first item is public comments relating to matters not on the posted agenda. Our first speaker is Betty.
There's no timer.
I'll put it on when you start.
Okay. Why am I here? Why do I have to leave my house and come down here and speak to you? Are we a small group, as Serna said on the news on Channel 3, "We're just a small fringe group"? Or did millions of people come and vote on November 5 to declare that we are tired of our government, we're tired of the division of government up here and the people down here? So we're coming into the houses, the institutions that govern us, and we're holding our leaders accountable. When our Chair, Patrick Kennedy, says AB 969 is something we must comply with, that ties his hands from manually counting an election, that he's to do nothing when an election is being counted, that if he sees something, nothing can be done, and we must comply with it because Governor Newsom? Who is Governor Newsom but an elected official? Who is he, someone that we put into office? He works for us, and you work for us, and we're here to stand up against that. We need leaders that are going to stand up against that, that are going to do everything that they can when they see something like this in place, and they say no, and they push back, and they say no, and just like in Huntington Beach, where they checked the voter rolls when it was told it was unlawful, or AB 957, when it says gender-affirming a child, cutting their genitals off, is the state standard for the health, safety, and well-being of a child, we say no. We demand that we have leaders that do this, and if you're not willing to do that, we will replace you with someone that will. The MAGA ascendant is rising, and we will make California great again, because we're going to show up, and we're going to demand leaders that lead and not follow, not follow-along for their careers, not follow-along for what's in their best interest. You serve the people, and we're coming into the houses that we have allowed you to run wild with for too long. Thank you.
Next speaker.
Jim Reeves.
Yeah, I'm not entirely. Good morning. On April 27, 1961, President John F. Kennedy gave a speech entitled "The President and the Press." The following excerpts capture the essence of this speech. "Our way of life is under attack. We are opposed around the world by a monolithic ruthless conspiracy that relies primarily on covert means for expanding its fear of influence, on infiltration instead of invasion, on subversion instead of elections, on intimidation instead of free choice, on guerrillas and material resources into the night..." I lost my place. "...on guerrilla by night instead of armies by day. It is a system by which it has conscripted vast human and material resources into the building of a tightly knit, highly efficient machine that combines military, diplomatic, intelligence, economic, scientific, and political operations. Its preparations are concealed, not published. Its mistakes are buried, not headlined. Its dissenters are silenced and not praised. No expenditure is questioned, no rumor is printed, no secret is revealed." The subversive, monolithic conspiracy was so troubling to JFK that he created the special forces within the military for the purpose of defending against the globalist. Tragically, President Kennedy was a dissenter that was silenced. John F. Kennedy was assassinated on November 22, 1963. Donald John Trump promises to complete John Kennedy's declaration. There had been at least two attempts in his life within the last year. On July 13, 2024, President Trump was shot in the face near Butler, Pennsylvania. On September 15, 2024, Donald Trump, a former President of the United States and future President by Electoral College and popular vote, in the 2024 presidential election survived an assassination attempt while golfing at Trump International. I only bring this up to remind you that there will be a new controlling authority, and it's time for self-reflection, and it's time to stand up as a lesser magistrate. Thank you.
Next speaker.
Good morning. My name's Sarah, and I'm from District 3 in New California. I want to thank you first, Supervisor Kennedy, for your response to the cease-and-desist letter the last time we were here. This is an admission, in our opinion, of the Board's making it valid of the facts from that letter. Also, thank you, Supervisor Hume, your acknowledgement of the flaw of the California one-party executive and legislative branch as they turn a deaf ear to we, the people. Public servants are supposed to represent the people, the people's will, in a constitutional republic. On November 5, we chose to engage in our constitutional duty to vote on THE ONLY TRUE ELECTION Day, not an election season. Board, how could California call the election for Harris at 8:01 PM on November 5? Why do I ask? I know of individuals who were still in line, waiting to vote in our county at 8:01 PM. I also personally know of a poll worker who was transporting thousands of ballots to the RV office at 8:05 PM in Nevada County. There are many other deceptions occurring in other counties throughout California, still counting, still wondering how huge leads are erased with mysterious ballot drops well after Election Day. Yet at 8:01 PM on November 5, California was called for Harris. This makes no common sense. We have no confidence in California's election process. Therefore, this Board must vote no to certify this election when the time comes. I ask you, Board, please be courageous and reject this unlawful election process that's happening in California right now. To vote for it would be complicit in an illegal, unjust, fraudulent process. I yield the remainder of my time. Thank you.
Next speaker, please.
Good morning.
Morning.
I come here today to talk about the fact that we're all residents of this county and we're constituents of this Board, and I feel that the two-minute limit that we have here is very unfair. The fact that you feel you have no requirement to respond to anything that we say is insulting. We live basically, right now, in a failed state. The U.S. Constitution guarantees us a republican form of government, which we don't have in California, and so I would encourage you to find another way to interface with your constituents in this county, and I would encourage you, maybe town halls, for example, quarterly, to get better feedback from your constituents. Thank you.
Next speaker, please.
All right. So, like the rest of the speakers so far, we've been calling it action for weeks and months, and I just wanted to give some presidents for doing so. So I'm here to discuss the principle fundamental to just governance, the doctrine of lesser magistrates. The doctrine of lesser magistrates is a guiding principle stating that when higher authorities issue unconstitutional or immoral mandates, local leaders, lesser magistrates like you, must interpose and protect the people from tyranny. Just like Hume had expressed, you assured us that everything was just fine with the voting process, Kennedy, but Hume did acknowledge that it's probably a good time to look at the voter rolls, and that would be something that'd be corrected within the next four years, and he has our full support in doing so. And that's actually the thrust of our message, is we're behind you in doing that. But as far as the presidents. Codified in 1550, the Magdeburg Confession, this doctrine guided city leaders in defying the Holy Roman Emperor to uphold religious freedom. It echoes in the Declaration of Independence, where colonial leaders resisted British overreach to preserve liberty. The U.S. Supreme Court has affirmed its principle. In Prince versus United States in 1997, the court ruled that state officials cannot be forced to enforce federal directives violating constitutional principles. Similarly, New York versus the United States in 1992 upheld state sovereignty, confirming the federal government cannot compel local compliance with unconstitutional laws. As Sarah mentioned, on October 2, we delivered a cease-and-desist order regarding California's AB 969, which unlawfully bypassed constitutional procedures via a fraudulent urgency clause. AB 969, Article 2, Section 9 of the California Constitution, by denying referendum rights in Article 4, Section 8D, as its urgency clause lacks factual justification. We just want to call you all to action, and we're giving you... If you want to go back and watch the video, you can figure out that we're following you closely.
Next speaker, please.
Good morning, Board members. During the past five months, we've been here entreating you as our county representatives as lesser magistrates, as was just mentioned, to safeguard our rights as a constitutional republic to fair elections. Now that the elections are over, we're calling your attention to the following violations. Number one, our U.S. Constitution requires same-day voting in all federal elections for the entire country, yet our state government has added 29 days before and 27 days after that day, creating the fraudulent situation of five counties still receiving newly found ballots three weeks later to change the election results for five counties. Do you really believe that the people you represent think that this doesn't compromise their vote? Argentina, by contrast, took six hours to record 27 million same-day ballots cast. Number two, both our U.S. Constitution and California state constitution require voter identification so that only citizens vote in our elections. Yet, our governor declared voter ID is not required, and only one lesser magistrate, the city of Huntington Beach, refused to comply with this unconstitutional mandate and was vindicated by the courts. Who knows how many illegals in California compromised our vote? Number three, the Help American Vote Act, whose funds California received, requires, with severe penalties for noncompliance, among other things, accurate, updated voter records, which we do not have. Who knows how many illegals or dead voters or those who have moved out of California have voted and compromised our legal vote? So we are asking you, as lesser magistrates, to inform the Secretary of State that you cannot, in good conscience, certify this county's elections, or for that matter, the state's elections.
Thank you.
Therefore, we request...
Thank you. Your time is up.
ASAP this December to remedy this compromised election.
Next speaker, please.
Free elections do not exist in California. California's elections are in the hands of the government. This is unlawful. This is unconstitutional. Let it be known, we, the people, will not let up on these Sacramento Board of Supervisors until elections are back into the hands of the people where they legally belong. Our country is now nearly solid red, although California still has the most corrupt elections process in the entire country. California is still counting votes 28 days after Election Day. Republicans were ahead in the 45th congressional district, and then there was the bomb threat at the Huntington Beach precinct. All of a sudden, Democrat votes started pouring in. This is unbelievable. The Huntington Beach precinct was doing the right thing by checking IDs in order to verify legally registered voters. Newsom's new law, that identification is not required to vote, continues to corrupt California's election process. California's use of mail-in ballots, electronic voting machines connected to the Internet, and third-party software has enabled widespread manipulation, fraud, and foreign interference, and there are algorithms that fractionate votes. California indeed has the most corrupt elections in the entire country. Gavin Newsom wants to make California Trump-proof. Newsom wants to stop all of the great things that can be done to make California great again. It is time for we, the people, to make California Newsom-proof so that we can start doing the great things to make California great again. Well, well, well. New California was featured on Sacramento local news. How nice. We have been accused of spreading misinformation. New California State gathers our information from many credible and reliable sources. We are confident that our information is factual and true.
Thank you.
For the record, one of these supervisors is spreading the misinformation...
Thank you. Your time is up, sir.
That New California State is spreading misinformation.
Your time is up, sir.
I bet you won't.
Next speaker, please.
Good morning. I don't know if you remember me coming to you guys for help, because your director had spread some lies, which brought death threats to me and my family, but we did go to small claims, and I found out intentionally spreading lies to harm someone's credibility or sharing false information that harmed someone's reputation is not defamation, nor is it considered assassination of character if you are the director of a government department, in spite of that being the very definition. With that aside, I've come to you for help about retaliation from that same director. Even with the very definition of what proof is, I was still ignored. So I'll give you guys another example, is that of some of the types of bull feces that we're faced here as citizens to you guys. During this court case, this director, he told me that I could communicate with him using the county email, which is very ironic, because this was a very private event, and I believe he wrote me up for using the county email for something that was not work-related. And I had emailed that I passed out at my desk, but he said it was after hours. But he could use it, you know, for his personal leisure. I just thought that was kind of slapping the face, you know, where, how could I communicate with you? Oh, just use my personal county email. Yeah, this just amazes me. And then I hear Gavin Newsom say he wants to Trump-proof California. It's like, from what? We live in a capital where stuff is permitted. Yeah, so it's just not adding up. People say that Trump's putting people in places they're not qualified for, but I'm looking at a board that runs the state capital of the county with very little education. The directors with no master's degree that oversee...
Ryan, you're out of time.
Positions that have master's degrees.
You're out of time, Ryan.
I understand I'm out of time.
Okay.
You guys need to be out of time up there.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
My name is Jermaine Dowdell. I'm a journeyman carpenter, and just to give a couple of my reasons why I'm speaking for the carpenters, I believe that going through the apprenticeship for me was a godsend. I didn't have the traditional college pathway that most people might have, but it has provided my family with a solid foundation to have health care and to, you know, take care of our future. I also believe that hiring locally is very important for Sacramento. There are a lot of jobs coming up, and we have the people and the members that are educated and trained to provide you guys with that solid work that you need. Also, I'd like to speak about prevailing wage. You know, those dollars that come from the people that work in this community will circulate through this community. It also helps to bring that pride in community, that pride in what's going on around us in the place that we live in. I just want to see that those carpenters that are out here, our apprentices, are put on these great jobs that are coming up in the future and that were considered. Thank you very much. Happy holidays to you all.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good morning, Board. My name's Megan Elsie. I am a member of 350 Sacramento, which is a climate justice organization. I'm here to ask you to oppose the Upper West Side Project, which will be coming up for your consideration early next year. The Upper West Side Project will increase vehicle miles traveled. That's VMT. VMT is one of the leading causes of greenhouse gas emissions, which of course cause climate change, which is very dangerous to us here in California. Now, the VMT will be increased because the Upper West Side Project is not infill or smart growth. It is sprawl development, and it is outside the urban services boundary and the urban policy area. It has been advertised as something that is mixed-use development, but it will not... That is a speculative and ungrounded claim, because the amount of development is not needed. SECOG, the Sacramento Council of Governments, has found that far more development has already been approved than will be needed for decades in the county. So these different developments, some have already been approved, are going to be spread out, so no businesses will want to go there to be mixed-use development, so people will have to drive miles and miles for services. It does not meet our housing needs. The kind of housing that we need built would be adjacent to public transportation and/or low-income housing. Those types of housing are what will lower poverty, homelessness, and greenhouse gas emissions. So again, I ask the Board to deny the Upper West Side Project next year. Thank you very much.
Thank you for coming in. Is that our final speaker?
That concludes your off-agenda comments.
Okay, thank you. Next item, please.
Okay. For your consent matters, items 2 through 72. For item 8, you're adopting an ordinance amending Sacramento County Code 4.54.360 pertaining to the application fee to sell fireworks. You waived reading on this on November 5. And for item 33, you're adopting an ordinance amending Chapter 16.91, Title 16 of the Sacramento County Code relating to Sacramento Countywide Transportation Mitigation Fee Program, and you waived reading on this on November 5.
Thank you. Supervisor Serna.
Thank you, Chair. Turn on my mic. Thank you. Just wanted to offer a comment on item 6 and then record a no vote on item 16.
16 is a no vote. Got it. Okay. For item 6, this is the authority to place Aggie Square Possessory Interest Assessments on secured tax roll. And then for item 16, for the no vote, this is the contract to approve the Second Amendment II agreement with Notton Lewis Architects for additional architectural services.
Great, thank you. I just wanted to offer my thanks to our county executive, David Villanueva, and our county assessor, Christina Nguyen, for their assistance on what was a concerning issue earlier in the year relative to how Aggie Square would be and is taxed as it is being constructed. I think it was kind of an all-hands effort to get us to a place where there's not going to be any hindrance of progress on this very important project that will undoubtedly serve the city and the county, I think, very well in the future. So I just wanted to put that on the record, and thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Supervisor Desmond.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I would like to remove from consideration item 30.
Okay. Let me read that into the record. This is acting as the Carmichael Recreation and Park District. This is to approve the resolution delegating authority to the district administrator to negotiate and execute a new lease.
And, thank you. And just with the Board's support, I would just like maybe to delay the hearing on this matter until early January to give me a chance to have a discussion with the Carmichael Recreation and Park District Director about this lease and some of the concerns I have relating to it.
I'll second that. Thank you. All right, number 26, please.
Fern Bacon Middle School's Safe Routes to School Improvements.
Just want to thank DOT staff and all the staff that has been involved with this. This is, I was saying, Mr. Villanueva, who actually went to Fern Bacon. We were talking, and he said that's why it's so familiar to him. It's so familiar to me, because I've been working on this for eight years, and it's not because of our staff that it took so long. It's the funding streams, the color of money, and all of that. But this is a great project for a neighborhood that badly needs it and for kids who are put in danger every day to go to school, walking where there's no sidewalks, busy corridors. And so this is not only good for South Sacramento, but it's also going to save lives. So thank you for your work. Okay, I see no one else. Is there any member of the public that would like a comment on an item or have an item removed from consent?
We do not have anyone sign up to speak for consent matters.
Is there a motion?
I'll move approval. Second.
Okay, we have a motion, a second, noting Supervisor Serna's no vote.
Okay, unanimous vote for items 2 through 72, with the exception of 16 and 30. Okay, for item 73, this is the presentation of resolution congratulating the Sacramento Ballet on their 70th anniversary.
Board, we're here today to recognize the great work of the Sacramento Ballet, who for the past 70 years have not only entertained Sacramento, but educated Sacramento and introduced Sacramento to the arts in many ways. From the leadership of Barbara Crockett from the very beginning, to, of course, we all remember the works of Ron Cunningham in Corinne Brenda, and of course, Anthony Kretzkapp. We've had fantastic leadership, which shows that while we may not be the biggest ballet in America, we're certainly among the elite, partially because of that leadership and the work of all the volunteers that make this ballet so successful, and also the community support that you enjoy. I will say that we've all enjoyed things like Romeo and Juliet and so many of the fantastic productions that have been put on, but probably none has had more impact than the annual signature Nutcracker, which many of us probably... That was the first ballet that we first saw. Many of us in this room, I can say, probably that was the first ballet we saw, and it has actually introduced tens and tens of thousands of children every year to the arts and... to the arts and specifically to ballet. So on behalf of the Board of Supervisors, therefore be it resolved that the Board of Supervisors, County of Sacramento, State of California, hereby commends the Sacramento Ballet for their outstanding artistic contributions and community outreach to the greater Sacramento for the past 70 years. The County of Sacramento community celebrates the Sacramento Ballet's artistic director, the dancers of the company, and the second company. The directors, the Board of Directors, the staff, the volunteers, and the children who all work tirelessly and serve as representatives of California's thriving cultural scene on national and international stages and for everything that you do in Sacramento. Thank you very much.
On behalf of the dancers, the staff, the Board, and the school, we want to say thank you to the county and you, and through history, those who have sat in those seats. Because without you, we couldn't continue all of our outreach and community engagement and shows throughout all districts. We're greatly appreciated.
Thank you.
Item 74 is the presentation of resolution honoring David Magnino for over 10 years of county service with the Emergency Medical Services Agency.
Good morning. I'm Tim Lutz, Director of Health Services. Bittersweet to be here today recognizing Dave Magnino for his amazing service to our Sacramento EMS agency. Dave stepped into the role in December 2013, and I can certainly highlight the fact that his contributions have enhanced patient care and system efficiency across our entire EMS system. And he really has been a strong advocate for addressing some of the challenges that I know we've talked about with this Board. Ambulance patient offload times, system efficiencies, those things that often I think we take for granted until we need to call 911 and want an ambulance to be timely and get us into an emergency room quickly. Some of the programs that Dave has really helped or been an integral part in helping develop and bring to us are one that we're talking about in a little bit today, which is our triage alternate destination program. And I'll just say a significant point to that is numerous other pre-established community paramedicine programs have applied for and been denied or had struggles implementing a triage alternate destination program. Our application went through quickly and was approved, and that is very much in part to Dave's tremendous knowledge of our EMS system in California. Dave also has helped herald in our prehospital blood administration program and specialty care for trauma, stomy, and stroke. Really what I would say his focus has been is innovative solutions to address some of our critical challenges like our ambulance patient offload times that directly contribute to the betterment of all of us in Sacramento County. As Dave approaches his retirement, I think he has a good legacy that he's left us and big shoes to fill. So thank you, Dave, for your service and work for Sacramento County residents.
Thank you very much, Board of Supervisors. And I know I've gotten to know most of you over the years, and I want to give a big thanks to my team. It's not me that's done all this work. It's the team that's sitting back here behind me because I couldn't do it all myself. It is 100% them with the support of previous directors for Department of Health Services and my immediate supervisors, Dr. Caserier and Dr. Demiano. I wouldn't be here today if it wasn't for their support. So again, I want to thank you, and hopefully we can keep moving the EMS system in Sacramento County to be a leader in everything that we do. Thank you.
Okay. Next item, please.
Yes. Item 75, presentation of resolution recognizing Michelle Caheas upon the occasion of her retirement.
Colleagues and members of the public, it is my privilege, but I am also somewhat saddened today to be here to present a much-deserved resolution for Michelle Caheas for her dedication, her dedicated and outstanding service to Sacramento County. As we all know, Michelle has been stalwart protector of children in her capacity with DCFAS and throughout her career. And certainly, I've also had the great honor to work with her very closely on the First Five Commission as Chair, and she's been a faithful, dedicated commissioner working in that capacity as well. This is the second time I've had a chance to present a resolution in the last month. We did one for her service on the First Five Commission earlier, and that was at her objection. She didn't want all the fanfare and attention. And that really speaks to the kind of person she is. She is a very, I think, humble public servant. I think she's a model public servant. I think for young people that are considering work in local government, especially on subjects as important as child welfare, Michelle serves as a distinct role model. And one of the things that I mentioned during the resolution presentation for First Five is, I think, in her honor, while she's going to go off and enjoy retirement, we ought to adopt part of her lexicon and refer to our smallest constituents, our children, especially those aged zero to five, as the littles. I think she's stood at this podium many times and referred to that particular population as the one that she has obviously been most focused on. And I think it really is obvious, especially through the work of the Black Child Legacy Campaign, which she has been an incredible component part since its inception, that we really focus our intention on making sure that every child in Sacramento County has the opportunity to succeed in life, to be healthy in life, to enjoy early childhood development opportunities and their families. So I am not going to read all the whereas's in the resolve here. I did that for the First Five presentation. But I will tell you that as the senior member of the Board and having had the opportunity now for 14 years to work with Michelle, I am sincerely saddened to see her go. But I understand that she needs to ride off into the sunset. But she can definitely look back on an incredible career here in Sacramento County doing incredible work, and I would argue the most important work. So Michelle, it's my distinct honor to present you with this resolution honoring you on your service and congratulating you on your retirement.
Michelle, step away from the PowerPoint remote.
I know, right? My last opportunity to mess it up. Wow, this is very humbling and uncomfortable. And I stand here today with a very full heart. I started my career in a nonprofit agency that had a contract with the county and really enjoyed serving in that capacity. And I thought, you know what? I'm going to go try the county. Give it five years, just see what it's like on the other side. And here I am, 28 and a half years later. And it has been such a great ride, and I'm so grateful to have been able to serve our community as a county employee. I would recruit folks to come work for the county. You can do different things and serve our community in different ways, and it's a great place to work. So there are so many people who have supported me along the way that I would love to thank. I can't thank them all, but I do know that I have accomplished not one thing other than maybe driving myself to work alone. I've always had a team that I've been a part of or led, and I could not have gotten to where I am today without all those folks behind me, in front of me, and by my side. But there are a few folks I want to call out. First, my wife, Tara Garrett, who- Tara has been my rock. She has supported me, encouraged me, and quite frankly tolerated me for the past 27 years. If you don't know, I can be a little much at times. She's had her own successful career, often with long hours, but somehow managed to support me, our family, and our home in a way that has allowed me to work the extra hours that are often needed in these positions, and I'm so grateful for that. And the wonderful news is we are both retiring, so we get to start this new journey together. So I'd also like to thank my parents. My mother's no longer with us, but I know that she is cheering me on. And my father is with us, and I'm so, yeah. So grateful for that. He's served our country for 22 years and then completed another career with Lockheed Martin. He taught me the importance of a strong work ethic, of commitment, of humor, and never, ever giving up even when things get challenging. He lives in Texas, and he would send me articles from Texas papers that highlighted stories about foster children with complex needs and how difficult it was to find placements for them. And he would send me a note encouraging me and telling me, it's not just a Sacramento issue. Hang in there and keep trying, right? And now he's a role model to me for healthy and joyful aging. He's 90, almost 90 years old, still buying green bananas, and does everything possible to enjoy the gift of time. So thank you, Dad, out in Texas. A huge thanks to my executive leadership team, Dr. Danny Morris, Melissa Jacobs, Melissa Lloyd. Our department, although relatively new, is very strong because of their leadership, their experience, and their ability to lead all the DCFAS employees, who are an amazing group of folks that show up each and every day to serve some of our most vulnerable. You confirmed on consent the appointment of Shelby Boston, who will replace me. You have a great team, Shelby, and I know that you will be a great asset to the department. I would be remiss if I did not thank Siobhan and all our social service agency directors. Emily, Ethan, Tim, Julie, Dallin, Jania. They are such an incredible group of folks, hardworking, also committed, very funny. You should have them do a little show for you. And it's been wonderful being a part of that team. So thank you. And lastly, I want to thank this Board for all your support over the years, not just for me personally, and not just for our department, but all the support for our social services and health departments that provide and support our safety net services in the community. A quote I'd like to end with from Hubert Humphrey. "The way we treat our children in the dawn of their lives and the way we treat our elderly in the twilight of their lives is a measure of the quality of a nation." And I would say the quality in our community continues to get better because of this Board's actions and support. You understand the importance of prevention and investing in children and families while also allocating resources to support our seniors so they can age with dignity and respect. So thank you for supporting our littles and our seniors. It has been such a pleasure to serve as your deputy director and director for the past 12 years. Thank you. Thank you.
Board down? Okay.
Okay. Okay, let's-
Photoshop.
Then we're going to get the picture.
Hey, this is a good iPhone.
You just stay there. Supervisor Frost.
Michelle, I just want to thank you for all of your hard work. You know, I learned a lot about the complexities of what you do when I faced situations in my own personal life, the complexities of the foster care system, not only for those that are being fostered, but for the families that are involved on all sides and the foster parents. And I just know, under your leadership with your team, and I don't know exactly each person that was involved, I know some of them, that someone who I love very much and my almost immediate family is alive today and her baby's alive because of you and your team. So I want to personally thank you for all that you did. We didn't think she was going to make it, and she did. And she's doing great. And so you deserve a great retirement. And I know that we really appreciate everything you did with the county over time, but I know that a lot of great things happened under your leadership, not just handling problems, but prevention and education and finding ways to prevent those situations from happening for people. So thank you so much for your commitment to all of that, and I hope you have a wonderful retirement.
Thank you so much.
Supervisor Hume.
Thank you, Chair. Michelle, I had the pleasure to meet you. Obviously, I have the least experience of anyone up here being associated with you, but I had the pleasure of meeting you very early on when we were touring the youth correctional facility. And it just struck me, you have this magnetic electricity that exudes from you. And your job forces you to deal with some of the most intractable situations and systems in our society. And that quote from Herbert Hoover, so perfect because you advocate for those who either don't have their voice yet or maybe their voice is diminished at the end of their lives or towards the twilight of their lives. And yet you bring this smile and this, like I said, there's just this perspective and this energy to it that I hope will be replicated and continue on. And you have a great team of people behind you. You know, we've been leaning in recently on the foster care situation and how we sort of wrap our minds around those that, you know, have- of wrap our minds around those that, you know, have received a bad shake in life. With the standing up of Natoli Place, we increased our bed count for seniors who deserve to have a place of respite, you know, to get themselves back, their feet back under them. And so I just commend you for the work that you've done, and I agree, you deserve a great retirement, and please don't fail it. Like, go out and enjoy life, and I don't want to see you back here anytime soon, except it's for joyous reasons. And so congratulations on a storied career, and I'm glad you came over to this side of the House and found a place where you could really do some good work. Thank you.
Supervisor Desmond.
Yes, Michelle, don't do what Dave Magnino did and go get a job at the state or something, you know, and keep working, you know? Get it right the first time when you retire. But I just want to echo what everybody's said up here. You know, we were just at a CSAC conference a couple weeks ago, and LA County Supervisor said, you know, "The role of counties is to be there for people when the bottom drops out of their lives." And you have really been really at the vanguard of that effort to protect people when that happens, to help lift them back up and care for them, especially the most vulnerable people in our society. And you have just been a joy to work with, so responsive, so understanding of the unique, you know, challenges we each face dealing with constituents, certainly with regard to the setting up the welcome homes and dealing with the challenges with our foster care system. But I just thank you, and I wish you and Tara a long and just wonderful and enjoyable retirement. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor, Mr. Villanueva.
Thank you, Chair Kennedy. Michelle, I just wanted to say congratulations. I know we had a chance to have lunch the other day and go over all the great things that you've done. You know, this is a well-deserved retirement after 28 years. What a fantastic career that you've had. You know, you continue to touch the children in our lives and the older adults and people with disabilities, and you do a fantastic job. And just know, you've made it so much better for so many other folks. You know, when I first started as the county executive, I was out meeting with a whole host of CBOs, and they've just talked nothing but high praises of you and your department and the great things you do. So congratulations on your retirement, and congratulations on all the legacy that you left here, and I hope that you have a chance to get out and improve that golf game and spend some time with Tara and do the wonderful things that you have planned. So congratulations.
Thank you, David.
Thank you. With that, I'm sorry, hang on. I believe we have a caller.
Caller, please start with your comments.
Thank you. Good morning. First, I want to thank the board for allowing me this time to share some of my thoughts about my daughter, Michelle. I know it is not always possible for a father to see his daughter retire, and it is certainly something special to be invited to participate. I have a tremendous feeling of satisfaction and pride in seeing how Michelle has come to this place in her career. From her early work with the Weave to her position as Director of Child Family and Adult Services for Sacramento County, Michelle has been driven by compassion, caring, and commitment to helping people. These qualities have been her north star her entire life. They reflect values parents always hold, their child will uphold, excuse me. As parents, her mother and I saw those qualities take shape as she was growing up. Michelle was a team player and leader. She fully embraced school, community, school and community activities, and team sports. As she mapped out her academic career, both undergrad and graduate school, she never lost focus on her purpose to help others. I am also proud she stayed in Sacramento after graduating from Sacramento State to build her life and serve the community. Through media coverage and many special father-daughter conversations, I saw her navigate her career. I saw her resilience and determination to help manage the vital human and financial resources that allow this department to protect so many of Sacramento's most vulnerable children and seniors. To all of you here today, I know your time serving the people of the county reflects some very good choices, hard choices, challenging choices, but certainly purposeful choices. And I thank you for choosing my daughter. And to all of the people who have accompanied Michelle in her professional journey, please know how grateful I am that you saw fit to present her with opportunities to expand her commitment to public service. Michelle, I see you, and I see your leadership and professional record as testament to the compassion, caring, and commitment to others that have always defined you. Congratulations on your retirement. Your entire family is proud of you and loves you very much. Thank you.
Thanks, Dad.
Well, that goes to show you that the green banana does not fall far from the tree. Okay, I believe we have some members of Michelle's staff that would like to say a few words.
It's an episode of This Is Your Life from Michelle.
Chair, I'd like to have DGAS to look at the ventilation system. It just got a little dusty in here or something. I don't know what's going on.
Definitely a day for some Kleenex. Good morning to all the board members. Melissa Lloyd, Deputy Director, Child Protective Services. And I'm here with my teammates, Dr. Danny Morris, over our Quality Management and Administrative Services, and Melissa Jacobs, our Senior and Adult Services Deputy Director. We wanted to come here together as a team today and publicly show our admiration, respect, and love for Michelle. We could take up an entire day sharing how much Michelle means to us, but we will not do that. We will keep it very brief and just say a couple of words in terms of how much Michelle means to us individually. So Michelle, I just...
Come on up.
Yes. I just want to say thank you for supporting me unconditionally. Michelle's been my direct boss for nine years. I came in after she promoted to Director, but this, just, I have so much gratitude for all of the support you've given me. Michelle has taught me so much. She has led by example. She's challenged me, and I'm very honored to say that she has made me a better person and a better professional in the work that I do every day. So I just want to say thank you so much. I also want to give acknowledgement to Tara, her wife. The work that we do, and so much that is done in public service, is definitely not nine to five, 24/7, and Tara, like all of our family members, has been supportive. And if you don't have that support at home so that you can do the work that is required on behalf of our community, it just would make things so much harder. So I do want to say just thank you to Tara and your family for all the support they've given. So thank you and congratulations.
Thank you. Appreciate that. I just want to say publicly and acknowledge you and congratulate you. Thank you so much for also caring about seniors and our older adults and individuals with disabilities in DCFAS, and thank you for your leadership.
Being the newest person on the team, but knowing Michelle for over... Oh, wow. Long time. We've had the opportunity to work together as colleagues with CWDA, and I remember her joining CWDA meetings for children, and the fire she brought and the energy and the knowledge and the change she brought to California really helped change, shift, and do things that some may not know that she did statewide, not just in Sacramento. So I thank her for that. And the humor that she has is great. And I know when we're in meetings, when she's getting tired of the meeting, she'll do something and say something that's very fun, and I appreciate. So I found a shirt that expresses what she shares and says when I know she's ready to move on. And the shirt says, "I don't say blah, 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 but she does say blah, blah, blah," to end on a level.
Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, any other?
We have one public comment from Tamiza, Tamiza or Tamiza Wash? Tamiza.
We need you one more time. That comment from your dad took me out. I was like, oh, that was amazing. But it really just exemplified what you have in family and what you provide us each and every day in family. My name is Tamiza. I'm the Chair of the Women and Girls Commission. Michelle shows up for us endlessly, and your leadership is unmatched. It truly exemplifies every day how much we can be doing for survivors and community. You're so innovative and creative, and the commission just adores you. We appreciate you, and it's our hope you can make it to our open house where we want to continue to celebrate you. And just excited about this next journey. Please, sis, rest, adventure, enjoy. And I just wanted to really just take this time of the day to say thank you. We have so many memories when I've got in the work of domestic violence, anti-trafficking and so forth. Many people said, "You got to know who Michelle is," and I understand why when I met you. Working with survivors each and every day has been a passion of mine. I'm born and raised in Oakland, and when I came to Sacramento, I didn't think it was some of the same parallels, but I start, I began seeing those things, and I began seeing the richness and the culture that you provided, not only in our nonprofits, but also within the women and girls. So we thank you for having this torch and keeping it lit even in the darkest of times, and we will continue to keep that torch lit in the work that we do for women and girls because there's still so much work to do. And we thank you and we appreciate you.
Thank you, too.
Okay, I believe that brings the Michelle hour to a close. Next item, please.
Okay, for item 76, Presentation of Resolution Recognizing Chief Probation Officer Marlon Yarber Upon the Occasion of His Retirement.
Sorry, dude, you should have gone first. So we're here to honor Marlon Yarber, who's been with the county probation department since 2013, but served as our chief probation officer since 2021. And under Marlon's tenure, we've seen huge, great advancements in our youth programs that are offered through probation in the facility itself. We have seen a real push, a continued push, but a laser-light focus on anti-recidivism. Marlon takes all of his heart, his caring, his kindness into the field and utilizes the latest technology and science to do it in a data-driven way. That doesn't sound terribly sexy and exciting, but it's extremely important and changes people's lives. If you don't do it right, you may as well not show up at work, and you've been doing it right for a long time. We sincerely appreciate everything that you have done. I know that, you know, when I look at the men and women in your department, and I think we have the best department in California, and you've been a part of that for quite some time, and you've been an exemplary chief. I will say on a personal note, I think my very first meeting after my election was down at Del Paso Boulevard at the ARDC, where sitting around a table, you were there, and I could tell from that moment that not only were you smart, not only were you, did you have the experience and knowledge and your expertise, but you cared, that you had a heart that was as big as that smile. And we appreciate everything that you have done for the county and the youth in Sacramento and those that sometimes fall between the cracks and get forgotten, and how you have made their lives better, which has made the community safer. So thank you, Marlon, for all your efforts.
Thank you. Thank you, Chair and board. Thank you for making time on the agenda. Yeah, a little bit of heartburn with maybe the clerk's office or, you know, county executive, "Don't follow Michelle." You know, incredible speech. Congratulations. You know, I've been here before. I think there were animals and there were children, and I've often said, like, "Don't follow animals and children." By the time I'm up here, no one cares about what I have to say. Today, you know, par for the course, not an animal or a child, just an incredible speech with a dad calling in. I should just say thank you and sit down. I think that's more appropriate. I will not be long at all. You know, I need Michelle's speechwriter. That's the other thing I recognize, that maybe it's Michelle. But just want to say thank you, certainly the board, all of your support, county executive, you know, Eric, rest of the deputy county executive staff, the court. You know, we're joined today by the court executive. You know, the chief in Sacramento was appointed by the presiding judge, and, you know, it is a tough thing when you say you're done. It's been 30 years for me in and around the field, and, thank you for the tissue, I'm glad these are already up here. 30 years in and around the field and never thought, you know, it was never a thought to be chief. You know, I only got into the field because of curiosity, really, about, you know, disparities, and then thinking, you know... You know, thinking you could help kids. You know, my wife's like, "Are you crying?" I'm like, "No, I'm not crying." It's, you know, hearing Michelle's dad. You know, and I could think of my own parents and like, oh, you know, you got to, you know, balance, you know, kids, all kids need love and discipline, and you've got to balance that, and that's what probation's about. So, you know, it's appropriate, I think. Then I ended up here. Did not set out to do it. You know, certainly wouldn't be able to do it, you know, without the support of my wife, Shannon, who's here, my kids who are at school, you know, where they need to be. And certainly my team, you know, the work. You know, we had lots of incredible successes, innovated, I do think, you know, best department in the land, certainly in the state, maybe in the country, you know, tops as it relates to, you know, the way our facility is operated. We're just really blessed, you know, as am I, really blessed to have incredible talent. You know, I'm joined by Assistant Chief Julie Wary, Assistant Chief Mark Marquez, he's not here, he's out sick, but sends his regards, and, you know, host of our team. And the things I've been able to do or that, you know, former chief SEAL was able to do, we don't do it alone. You know, Michelle said it right. It's really only because we're able to find people who are truly passionate, caring, and talented to make real, you know, the crazy idea, you know, a day reporting center or, you know, teaching kids, you know, the construction trades and getting them jobs. And forward, I'd like to thank, you know, the community, the county. It's in a better place, and, you know, really we'll just end by saying thank you. Appreciate all the support. So that's it for me.
I can't sit down.
Ms. Chair, if I could offer some comments?
Yeah, we have a queue. Is that okay?
Sure.
Supervisor Desmond?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And I'll be brief. Marlon, I love what you described. You know, probation straddles that line between love and discipline. I always think about straddling the line between social services and frontline law enforcement. It's the same thing, and you have been an incredible leader in Sacramento County in making sure that we are doing everything we can in terms of prevention, rehabilitation, just the ongoing evolution of a criminal justice system that keeps people safe while also making sure we do things that make sure people will thrive as well if they get caught up in the criminal justice system. So, thank you. And you're also just a class act when it comes to advocacy for better probation-related policies at the state level, and I'm sure you have a bright future in that regard, Marlon. A lot of, I think, a lot of organizations would love to have you come and join their teams because I know you have a lot more to give in this area, and I wish you all the best in your retirement. Thank you for your service.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Supervisor Frost?
I didn't know you had such a sense of humor.
Well, usually I'm, you know, over-prepared and I'm on point anticipating your questions, so today I did not prepare. Here I am.
Chief, I just want to say, I think I came in late. I think I started in 2017. You'd been here for quite a while, but I remember touring your facility, the juvenile facility, and the events that we went to and learning a little bit about probation and the complexity. Probation is those gun-toting officers with a heart, and their training is extensive. And I want to say that I really appreciate the work you've done over the years in that facility to create a situation where you could break the chains of a bad start. And I don't think that's an easy thing to do for people, but I think you've changed the direction of lives, and it's not just because of the programs that you instituted, but the partnerships, private partnerships. I mean, you have used every tool in your tool chest and looked for more, including gardening and everything you could think of. I couldn't, I was literally shocked at all that our county probation was doing to help young people thrive and work their way out of a challenging start in life. And you've been a great leader for the county, and I've appreciated your leadership, and I just want to thank you and say I hope you have a wonderful retirement.
Thank you.
Supervisor Hume?
Thank you, Chair. First of all, Chief, I just want your wife to know we've put in the work order for the ventilation to fix the dustiness.
Yeah, appreciate that. Thank you. It happens in here.
But, you know, again, having the most recent experience of going through the election process, your employee association makes two demands of people that are seeking the roles up here, and that is, one, to do a ride-along so we have a better understanding of the work that your men and women do, and the second is to sit down and meet with the chief. And I had the opportunity to sit down with you and Assistant Chief Wary, and just impressed by, obviously, the passion that we just saw exhibited here today for the work that you do. And the other thing is that you and DCFAS kind of work like gears or teeth on the gears sometimes. And whereas there's the prevention front end and there's the sort of back end of work that's done, there's also that intervening time where someone is justice-involved. And so you have this double-edged situation where you have to make sure that you're upholding the law and the standards and everything that needs to be sort of the consequence side of things. But also, as you mentioned with the trades and the vocational training, to say, "Look, there's a better life out there for you guys if you just kind of lean into it and don't accept." And so really, you could pile on, in which case now you're just perpetuating the cycle and all of those things that we don't want to do, or you can do what I think you've done in your career, and that is recognize that, yeah, some bad choices and some bad decisions were made along the way, but it doesn't have to be the only life available to you. And so I commend you for the work that you did. I agree with Supervisor Desmond. I hope that you do continue to pour, take some time off, you know, enjoy the retirement a little bit, but continue to pour into this space and try and make a difference wherever you can, because you have, and it's very important work. So thank you very much for your service.
Thank you.
Supervisor Serna?
Thank you. So first of all, thank you for all of your dedication to this county and to the, especially to the younger people of the county in your capacity as chief. I think you've served extraordinarily well, and you should be very proud of what you've achieved. Just listening to some of my colleagues' comments and reflecting on one thing that you said before you broke down.
You had to remind everyone.
You said, Marlon, you said you were done, and this goes for Michelle as well. It goes for any, I think, public servant that could look back on their time in service to the public, that you're not really ever done when you leave in this fashion, where you've, you know, given years of your time and energy, and obviously by the emotion that both of you have shown today, I think you've been so personally invested as well as professionally. And it just makes me want to reflect on the fact that our meetings start and have started for several months now, if not years, with constituents that come and use their off-agenda time to, you know, wag their finger and criticize, and that's their prerogative, that's their absolute right. That's what makes our, you know, our system of government the best in the world, in my opinion. And so that's to be expected. But oftentimes in those comments, I just can't help but reflect on the fact that those same critics just don't take the time to really understand what we do as a team here in Sacramento County. And they don't really understand the sacrifice, dedication that people put into their careers when they decide to work in, especially local government, and even more especially in county government. You know, county government continues to be one of the more mysterious levels anywhere because, you know, people typically become very familiar with their city council people and the mayor. And in the capital city, they certainly understand probably better than most in the state what their legislators are doing. But it really is county governance and county service where, I'll argue all day long, it carries the most importance in terms of how we're using resources more and more. They're becoming scarce, but resources efficiently and effectively, and our most valuable resources are people, to do the work that you do. And so when you say you're done, you're not done. I mean, your legacy, Michelle's legacy, that'll continue, and it sets a new high bar, in my estimation, for how to deliver services with integrity, with a genuine interest in succeeding and measuring that success by how well others can succeed in their lives. And so, as I wish you fond farewell into your retirement, Chief, again, I would encourage you never to lose sight of the fact that your presence will be felt here for years and years to come. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, that's all the board comments we have. Do we have any other? Yes, Mr. Villanueva.
Thank you, Chair Kennedy. Chief, I just want to say thank you and congratulations. The 30 years is a great career, and I know you spent a lot of time in this field, not all your time in this field, with 10 years, 11 years, I think. I think 11 years and a couple of weeks are today.
11, the fifth.
The fifth. So a couple of days from now, 11 years here with the county. And I just want to say I appreciate all the innovative programs that you've brought to the county and the way you've continued to transform the way probation does provide services here in Sacramento County. I think not only here in Sacramento County, but it's a model for us going forward with the leadership that you've provided, but also I think it's an incredible foundation for the state of California to follow. So I think, like Supervisor Serna said, your legacy and leadership sets incredibly high standards, not only for our county, but for the state of California. And thank you on behalf of myself, the executive leadership team here, and all the department heads sitting behind us. Thank you for your service and wish you luck in your retirement. And I know you'll have a little bit more time to run those kids around, all those sporting events. I know that was one thing that was important to you.
Talking this morning about where I have to be today. Yes.
I'm glad you made it instead of taking it to the different soccer, the different practices. So thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we have any others? All right. Thank you, Marlon.
Thank you.
Okay, so the next item, we have an announcement from our county executive for item five. This is the authorization to appoint Shelby Boston as Director of Child, Family, and Adult Services.
Great, thank you, Flo. With item number five today, you've approved and confirmed the appointment of Shelby Boston as our new Director of Child, Family, and Adult Services. Ms. Boston has more than 25 years of experience in serving the public and social services agencies. She is most recently the Director of the Public Guardian for Butte County's Department of Employment and Social Services since 2016. Prior to that, she served in several positions in Butte County's Child and Family Services, including being an analyst and social worker. She is the incoming president for the California Welfare Directors Association, and Ms. Boston holds a master's degree in social work and a bachelor's degree in health services, both from CSU Chico, which we won't necessarily hold that against her. But we're fortunate to welcome Ms. Boston to the county, and I appreciate the board's support on this, and ask her if she would like to say a couple of words.
Good morning, Chair Kennedy and members of the board. Thank you for the introduction, and I have to say, both of my sons have attended Sac State. So I get a little bit of credibility there. I am incredibly excited to be joining Sacramento County after a long career in Butte, and I feel very fortunate to follow in the footsteps of Michelle. I've been fortunate to know her for many years as a peer. She is incredibly respected, and I hope to live up to the expectations that she has left for me. And I just have been so appreciative of the process and just the warm welcoming of all of my colleagues, my soon-to-be colleagues, and I've already warned Ethan, if anything goes wrong, it's his fault. So, thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Shelby. And if I might make a recommendation, you were probably going to do this anyway, but to make appointments with each one of us so we can get to know you better.
Absolutely.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Welcome. Next item, please.
Okay, for our next item, item 77, this is county service area number one, zone number one, public hearing on the benefit category change and levy of increased service charges for the Watt and El Camino Chick-fil-A Project.
Hi. Okay, good morning. The Watt and El Camino Chick-fil-A Project is located on Watt Avenue, approximately 400 feet south of the intersection with El Camino Avenue. It consists of construction of a Chick-fil-A restaurant, drive-through, and associated site improvements. The project was approved with a tentative map, the tentative parcel map, special development permit amendment, and design review on June 3, 2019. In response to the project's condition of approval required prior to building permit issuance, the project proponents submitted an application requesting the initiation of the benefit category change process. In response to that request, a ballot notice was mailed to the property owner on September 20th. On November 5, 2024, at the request of the project proponents, the public hearing was continued to today. Currently, the project's parcels are in the street and safety light non-residential benefit category and is assessed $75.14 annually, which includes the 278 feet of public driveway. After the benefit category changed the enhanced street and safety light non-residential category, the increased annual service charge will be approximately $238.42. If there are no questions from the board, we recommend the board open the public hearing, consider written oral testimony, and objections and protests, and close the public hearing and then direct the clerk to tabulate the returned protest ballot.
Thank you very much. Any questions from the board? Seeing none, I'll open the public hearing. Is there any member of the public that would like to address the board at this time on this item?
We do not have any public comments signed up.
All right, we'll close the public hearing. Would the clerk please tabulate the protest vote?
Yes, I'm going to open the ballot now. Okay, let me just see what I've got here. Okay, so I have received one ballot. The legal owner is Intelli LLC for parcels 281011047 and 048, and the address is El Camino Avenue, Sacramento, California 95821, and they are in favor for the annual service charge increase.
Okay, will you please read changes into the record?
Thank you. In section two, at the close of the tabulation, the board received zero oral and written protests. In section three, at the close of the tabulation, the board received one protest ballot totaling 100% of the total amount to be levied, of which 100% was in favor of the benefit category change, and 0% was in opposition to the change of the benefit category.
All right. Is there a motion?
Yes, Mr. Chair, as the supervisor with the dubious distinction of having the highest number of fast-food chicken restaurants in this district, I move approval.
Is there a problem with that?
Yes.
Unanimous vote.
Thank you very much. Next item, please.
Item 78 is county service area number one, zone number one, public hearing on the benefit category change and levy of increased service charge for the Oxform subdivision.
I'd like to mention that we would normally combine the multiple CSA items into a single agenda and hearing, but since the other one was a continuance and this one's already on the agenda, that's why they're two separate. So this is the Oxform subdivision. It's located 650 feet east of the intersection of Oxform Lane and Bradshaw Road and consists of 95 single-family lots, a park lot, miscellaneous landscape parcels, and associated site improvements. The project was approved with a small lot, tentative map, and design review on November 7, 2023. In response to the project's condition of approval requiring, required prior to filing a final map, the project proponents submitted an application requesting the initiation of the benefit category change process. In response to that process, in response to that request, a ballot notice was mailed to the property owner on October 18. Currently, the project's two existing parcels are in the safety light only non-residential benefit category and is assessed $2.56 each annually. After the benefit category changes, the increased annual service charge will be approximately $5,937.50 for the 95 residential parcels in the enhanced street and safety light residential category, and $256.91 for the 252 feet of public frontage for the park parcel in the enhanced street and safety light non-residential category, for a total of $6,194.41 for the project. If there are no questions from the board, we recommend the board open the public hearing, consider any written and oral testimony, and objections and protests, and close the public hearing to direct the clerk to tabulate the returned protest ballot.
Questions of the board? Seeing none, open the public hearing. Is there any member of the public that would like to address the board on this item at this time?
We do not have any public comments.
I'll close the public hearing. Please tabulate the vote.
Okay, I'm going to open the ballot now. I have received one ballot, and the legal owner is KLLB Buy2 LLC, parcels 0660110006 and 0660110025. Site address is 9770 Oxform Lane, Sacramento 95829, and they are in favor of the annual service increase.
Please read changes into the record.
Okay, so section two, at the close of the tabulation, the board received zero oral and written protests. In section three, at the close of the tabulation, the board received one protest ballot totaling 100% of the total amount to be levied, of which 100% was in favor of the change of the benefit category, and 0% was in opposition to the change of the benefit category.
Is there a motion?
Move approval.
Motion's second, please vote.
Unanimous vote.
Thank you.
No tears.
Yeah. You have a very funny county.
Item 79, the Sacramento County Emergency Medical Services Agency Report on the Triage to Alternate Destinations Program: An Ambulance Patient Offload Time Reduction.
Great, thank you. Chairman Kennedy and the rest of the board, thank you so much for giving us an opportunity to come in to give a, an update on two of our programs at the SAC County EMS agency. So again, my name's Greg Can, I'm the EMS Medical Director for SAC County EMS. So, I stood before you about 13 months ago, where we had a chance to talk about the dire state of our EMS system. And I come back today with, with a sense of incredible pride in where we have come just in 13 short months. Before I get going into the presentation, I want to acknowledge all of the folks who are in the audience with me today. It seems like every time I come to the board, I've got this incredible wind behind my back of these, of these EMS leaders in our community. 13 months ago, when we were 70, 80 minutes into our APod offload standard in hospitals, and our, and our crews were on their, at their breaking point, and our system was at its breaking point, these are the folks that led those crews and that workforce to get through that dark time and to get us into a better place where people are feeling better about what they're doing. We are able to care for the patients that call 911 in an efficient and effective way. So, just a kudos to everybody who's sitting in the, in the audience behind me, and also point out to the folks at the EMS agency who work every day to, to give me the support that I need to give them the support that they absolutely need. So, with that said, so we're going to, we're going to move on and just give a couple of updates on, on first off, our Triage to Alternate Destination program, which again, I'm going to point to Supervisor Hume as being a real champion for us in, in moving that forward. So, we were given a mandate just about a year ago for the county to stand up a Triage to Alternate Destination program. So, as was mentioned earlier on in Dave's retirement discussion, he was, was instrumental in, in giving us the, just the bandwidth and the, and the leadership to, to allow us to stand up a program really in light speed. We had, we have really no experience in this county previously doing community paramedicine or other programs similar to this, whereas other municipalities and counties across the state that had these programs already in place, we were kind of in a, in a, in a race with them in order to stand up a program. And I can say that we were the first to be approved to move forward Triage to Alternate Destination when a lot of these other programs that had that experience failed. And, and that is a testament to Kristin Bianco and to Dave and, and the rest of the team that helped me move forward with this program. Okay, so this gives us a, our approval letter. So, as of August 16, we were approved by the state EMS authority to stand up our Triage to Alternate Destination for psychiatric care and for substance sobering centers. So, a momentous day for all of us to, to kick off our movement forward in getting our program up off the ground. So, one of the things that comes along with getting a Triage to Alternate Destination program approved is a opportunity to apply for a grant with the CareStar Foundation. So, CareStar has stepped forward and essentially put a blanket offer to any county that has a Triage to Alternate Destination program approved to be able to apply for CareStar funding. So, we are in the process of finalizing our application, which would allow us to get a one-time grant of $50,000, which we have earmarked within the, the agency to cover the production of training materials for our county, and also to assist with our providers in defraying some of the costs that they have when it comes to them training their folks to be able to go out and do this good work. So, our curriculum, so our Triage to Alternate Destination providers who will be trained throughout the county are going to be trained in these specific areas. So, understanding mental illness, looking at specific mental health conditions like schizophrenia, mood, affective disorders, understanding suicidal thoughts and behaviors, having an understanding of alcohol and substance use disorders, and then the specific county-wide protocols that would allow patients to move to our specific sites for alternate care that's not an emergency department. I know Kevin Mackey was here, so he's, he's sitting in the audience, and I want to thank him personally. We sat together in his office for seven hours, shooting video, and this guy's great at chasing away leaf blowers and, and FedEx trucks that are beeping in, outside the window, and it put us in, it's going to put us in a great spot where we can do really asynchronous learning, where folks can, can log in and to take the training and to get themselves TAD accreditation within our county. So, I'm going to, that, that kind of covers the, the Triage to Alternate Destination piece. I think we've, we are in a great place to, to be able to move forward with this come the, the start of the year with our providers achieving their accreditation and then starting to move folks into the new alternate sites for care. It is my hope that I can come back to the board at some point and to give you some numbers and, and to show really the, the amount of emergency department hours that have been, that have been kept out of the EDs and, and to show the safety and efficacy of our program.
Supervisor Serna.
Thank you, Chair. So, you know, obviously, we received all the presentation materials in advance of the, the meeting this morning, but I wanted to ask you a question about this graph in particular before you left it. And I'm not sure it has, nope.
The next one?
The graph, the graph.
Okay.
There you go. So, I'm not sure it has any relevance on kind of the punchline of this, this meeting or not, because I'm sure we're going to hear different perspectives after you, after you deliver your presentation, but I wanted to know, is there a really distinct seasonality to this? Because it's, it's showing, by the way, you win the award for the smallest font on a, on a graph here. But, but there is, there's, seems to be a distinct reflection, both locally at Sacramento County level and statewide in terms of the peaks and valleys here. So, I just wanted to understand, what are we, what are we looking at in terms of, you know, the similarities despite the differences?
Sure, sure, I can speak to that. So, definitely, you, you see that those two curves are, are kind of synchronous with one another, and those, those spikes that you see generally coincide to the areas where are the times of year when we have a lot of respiratory viruses and those sort of things. So, we, we know and as a, from, from a county perspective, our EMS transports to the emergency department, 10 years ago, I would say that we have, we would have more transports in the wintertime than in the summertime, but now it is almost flat. So, we see about 10, anywhere from 10,000 to 12,000 EMS transports to local emergency departments every month, and that happens in June, it happens in July, it happens in January. So, we, we've really seen kind of a load leveling across our entire year. But what, what we see with these spikes in our APod times, which is the time that it takes to get a patient off of an EMS gurney into a bed space in the emergency department, that time tends to get higher when our hospital census is high, so when we have a lot of patients that are admitted to hospital, and when there's a logjam or backlog of getting patients out of the ED. That's typically when you see those spikes. I, I put this slide into the, into the deck today just to highlight the fact that we have consistently been above the, the statewide standard. So, the state produces, there's, or gives us the statewide view with every EMS commission meeting. So, the last one was back in September. We're expecting another update just in, in a week's time. But this, this shows us that we came close to being able to, to, to claim that we were at or better than the statewide average way back in 2020. But, but if you look, that's right when the teeth of COVID was happening, okay? So, then, I remember those emergency department days where you could hear a pin drop in the ED, and there was, you were seeing like half a dozen patients when you normally see 20. So, at that point, the, the graphs or the, the lines coincided, but then if you look all the way to the very right edge, you can see that as of September, we were almost at the point of where we were at the statewide average. Going to fast forward, I'll, I'll maybe let the cat out of the bag here, but I anticipate that with the EMS commission data that comes out next Wednesday, that we are going to be below that line with where we currently are in, in the county of Sacramento.
Before you leave it, if we were just to impose Sacramento County's trend here on some of our sister analog counties, Alameda, Santa Clara, some of the more urbanized counties with somewhat similar populations, would, would that, would we look similar? Would we have wider gaps in the, in the comparison?
And it's, and, and I actually have data from the EMS commission is actually smaller font than this. So, I spared everybody that. But when, when that data came out mid-September, it was, it was shocking that we, we had traditionally been 20, 30, 40, 50 minutes higher than our peer counties. So, and, so these are looking at places like Medestow, Stanislaus County. This is looking at Alameda, LA, Dland Empire, that all of our, our EMS agencies that are, that are comparable to us. We, we had traditionally underperformed them. But with the, with the data that came out in September, and I said this in my, our second APod meeting that we had just, just in, in October, that we could stand there in that moment and say that we have a better APod time, our ambulance patient offload times are better than any peer municipality in the state of California.
Thank you.
Continue, please.
So, again, just to highlight again that we are, we are nearing the statewide average on the right edge of this graph, and to kind of put this next one out, which again, shows a, a three-year trend line with that dark hatched trend showing that we've had a consistent downward trend in our 90th percentile APod number just going through the, the year 2024. This is, this is kind of where the rubber hits the road. We have to submit our, our data to the, to, I think I made this presentation in September or, or the first couple of days of October, where we're able to show the downward trend. So, a year ago, we, we stood at 73 minutes as our 90th percentile APod time, and you can see that we've had month-on-month a consistent decline over the course of this year. 35 minutes in October has moved down to 29 minutes in the month of November. So, we, we currently stand at 29 minutes, and again, I will, I will, I, if I were a betting man, I'd put money down on the table that we're going to be better by far than any of our peer municipalities across the state when the EMS data is put out on, on next Wednesday. Okay? I put this slide up here also just to, to highlight. So, on, on the, the left-hand side of the slide, you see the, the 1 to 2, 2 to 3, 3 to 4, 4 to 5, and greater than 5. So, that highlights the, the time that a patient sits on an EMS gurney before they're moved into a, a bed space. So, if you look across the bottom row, so 1 to 2, so back in November of 2023, there were 715 patients in that month that spent between 1 and 2 hours on an EMS gurney before they got into a, a hospital bed. We peaked up at 1,263 patients that were greater, that had a 1 to 2 hour wait. If you fast forward all the way across to October, and we'll have the November number soon, you can see that that 1,263 number has gone all the way down to 181. So, that is a, that is a testament to the great work that's being done in our emergency departments. I think that they, they deserve a ton of credit for the work that they are doing and for their understanding that this is a community, this is a community problem that needs to be solved, because all of these folks, crews, need to be back on the, on the, on the road. And to borrow a phrase from Chief Rudnicki from SAC Metro, they need to be prepared for the next patient. And that's, and that's really what it comes down when it comes to, to fixing our APod number, is that our EMS crews need to be prepared for the next person that calls 911. So, this gives a little bit more of a breakdown by month with, with our patient counts. I already kind of alluded to this in my earlier comments, that we see anywhere between 10,000 and 12,000 patients a month. The bottom number there was, I, I was able to submit a, a, an update earlier in the month where we had a small number of, of patient records into our system for November, but this November did finish up at 29 minutes. It's also interesting to see that our, the average offload time is, is shrinking dramatically as well. So, we even see that we're 19 and even 16 minutes is our average offload time, which is quite remarkable from where we were. Okay? I, I go back to this. This is kind of my roadmap for, for EMS medical direction, and looking at, at how we address not only our ambulance patient offload time, but how do we address all of our programs to kind of feed into pinch points across the, the arc of a patient care encounter through a hospital. So, on the left, you've got your 911 call, then your EMS interaction, and in the middle in the blue, you've got your emergency department, and then the patient moves into a hospital admission and then goes home at the end. So, the, all of the work that we've been doing over the last year is really focused on that purple area, which is our EMS portion. So, looking at Triage to Alternate Destination, looking at bolstering our MIH program and giving them kind of more rein to look at different patient populations. We've actually dropped their, their inclusion criteria down to two years of age, so they can actually start seeing kids at home with the upcoming respiratory viral season that we're really in the middle of now. That gives them the, the free rein to go out and do some good work with our pediatric population, also looking at things like telehealth, public outreach, and then our EMS bupanorphine programs in the field. So, all of these things have impacted our, on our APod number, and giving our, our crews the ability to bring patients directly to the waiting room, which kind of allows for our hospitals to be able to triage patients, so you don't get preferential treatment if you come by ambulance. If there's somebody in the waiting room that is more sick than the ambulance patient, they're the ones that are going to get in the bed space first, just to, to put everybody into a proper triage category so that everybody's got a fair shake at getting a, a fast, efficient treatment in the emergency department.
Supervisor Serna.
Thank you. So, you noted the, there's a bullet point in the second box on the left there, EMS bupanorphine administration. Is that, am I confused? I thought, I thought it was Narcan, not bupanorphine, that was administered in the field. Bupanorphine, the way I've come to understand it from, you know, taking tours of clinics and whatnot that deal with the opioid addiction epidemic, that, that bupanorphine has to be administered after a certain amount of withdrawal period. So, I'm, I'm just kind of curious about what's the distinction in, is there, is Narcan administered somewhere and it's just not mentioned here?
Oh, absolutely. So, so Narcan is given when somebody is in acute overdose.
Right.
So, that's a reversal agent in somebody's overdose to, to essentially bring them back, to reverse that respiratory depression and to, to give, put them on a, on a path where they, where they can be cared for. EMS bupanorphine is a, a, a field-level intervention. So, if you have somebody who is suffering from withdrawal from an opioid, they can be given bupanorphine in the field, which will alleviate some of their withdrawal symptoms. But we also know from the data that these folks who are given early bupanorphine end up being retained in medically assisted therapy longer. Their ability to, to kind of stay in substance use disorder therapy longer is, is, is true. So...
Bupanorphine is kind of a one-way street. I mean, in terms of, at least the way I've come to understand it from hearing from clinicians and doctors, and, and because withdrawal from bupanorphine is, I've been told, even somewhat more acute or can be more acute than coming off some of the other opioids.
So, I think, I think there's, there is a concern amongst our emergency departments that EMS given bupanorphine can cause precipitate some withdrawal symptoms, but that's just something, that, that is, that is a more theoretical concern, and, and the, the data that has been shown up and down the state and really across the country shows that that concern is not so something that we need to be on the lookout for and to be able to manage, but the benefits certainly of getting pre-hospital bupanorphine outweighs the risk.
Thank you.
Okay. So, I, I just want to highlight with our APod numbers that we are in a better place, and, and we've come down significantly from where we were a year ago. 29 minutes is, is a, is a number that we need to be celebrating. We're, we're in the Christmas season here, and I think it's a great opportunity for us to recognize that. Now, we have... think it's a great opportunity for us to recognize that. Now, we have, we have a robust discussion happening within the county about our ambulance patient offload time standard. So that standard kind of follows on the legislation, AB40 legislation that was, was put forward this year. We've been working diligently with our hospital partners to get mitigation plans for A-Pot, put in place, meeting state mandated deadlines for those that work. And we move forward into January of next year in a good place to be within kind of striking distance of our, of our A-Pot goal. So currently, our A-Pot standard in Sacramento is at 20 minutes. And that was established back in 2016. We have a policy in place that's going to be reviewed just in a few short days on December 12th, where we have our EMS stakeholders and hospitals coming together to, to really debate on what that A-Pot offload standard is to be. And with, and with that robust discussion, we will be having a decision, final decision on what the countywide A-Pot offload standard is going to be moving forward. So I anticipate that that's going to be a lively conversation. We've already had a number of submitted comments during our public comment period for that meeting. And we look forward to the 12th. So with that, I'll yield if you have questions.
Supervisor Hume.
Thank you, Chair. First of all, I just want to say congratulations. I know that when you came on board, you and I had a conversation before we even knew each other's respective roles. And you've leaned into this issue. And the short timer sitting behind you had obviously committed a lot of effort to it as well. And I know in my first budget process, I foisted money upon Director Lutz, just so scarcity of resources wouldn't be a crutch to perpetuate the status quo. But really, it's been the work of the folks that are sitting in the audience, both representing the hospitals, as well as our EMS and our private transporters, that, you know, have grasped the low-hanging fruit. And with, I think, minimal processes changes, certainly not any changes to the, to the built environment, you know, we've halved the average time for our county. And we are overperforming relative to our peers, going from the worst in the state to now that there's, you know, at least a dozen or so counties worse than us still. And I think there's still work to be done. So don't, don't let off the gas here. But I think the next step for that, and Lucy DeBoer and Kim Navah were in the audience earlier, but they're not here anymore. But I think the next step to that is we really need to lean into some of the legislative fixes that allow for the waiting room to be utilized better, allow for the reimbursement so that when we try some of these more novel concepts, that's not a cost disincentive for folks to utilize triage to alternate destination. And so anything we can do up here, if it's leaning in at CSAC and seeing if we can't get a coordinated effort to really recognize that the system doesn't work as intended any longer. And we need to update how we do this. But I just want to congratulate everyone. As I know, we're going to hear a lot of public comment relative to the standard that you just mentioned. But I want to congratulate the work that's been done so far. And I hope that as we continue this conversation, that we don't cleave that collaboration and that collaborative effort and get back to the finger-pointing days that I don't think were helpful. But I do have a question relative to 2016, when you said that 20-minute standard was put in place or enacted. What was that based on? And are there other counties that have a 20-minute standard? I know the state, the state has now said 30 minutes, but certainly that was, you know, after we'd established our own standard.
So I'll clarify one thing. So the, so the AB40 language states that, that counties will set their ambulance patient offload standard, but that is not to exceed 30 minutes. So the county, county can, if you want it 10 minutes, you can set it at 10. Okay? It just can't exceed 30. So the, you know, obviously, I was not there in 2016 when this was debated. But it was, it was agreed upon by our EMS and hospital stakeholders at that time, I think Dave was in the room there, that a 20-minute offload standard was reasonable. So we, California has a patchwork of offload standards. So there are some that are at 30, some that have recently been moved to 30, but some counties that have, that have held tight at 20 minutes. San Joaquin County, for example, has held, held pat at 20. But we also have other large urban areas, like Alameda as an example, they've shifted up to 30. So, but again, it is, it is very patchwork. But I think it's that, I don't think that there's one standard, one size does not fit all when it comes to this, this issue. I think that it depends on the, how robust is your pre-hospital system? You know, we have one of the best in the world. What are your emergency departments like in your, in your county? We have some of the best in the world, some of the most innovative emergency departments around. And I think that a 20-minute standard is not out of reach, and as is evidenced by some of the data that I've shown today. So our, we've achieved that with our average number. So a lion's share of patients are getting off the gurney in less than 20 minutes. But it's just some of those long timers. So people that are on for 2, 3, 4 hours, that may have, that may have specific needs that just need to be prioritized a little more. And I think that, I think that we continue to work. I agree with you that we don't want to get back into a position where we're pointing fingers. I think we want to continue the collaborative approach that we have, we've set forth with. Our EMS providers were able to provide some poignant examples of what happens when we have ambulance patient offload delay, and how that can relate or translate into somebody who's calling 911 not having an ambulance for them. And it was actually Chief Rudnicki who put forward one of the examples in February, that got in the mind of the folks at Kaiser Roseville, one of the largest hospitals, largest emergency departments in the state. And they just decided that it just wasn't okay for them to be at 80 minutes anymore. And, and with the November numbers, we see that they now stand at 22. So it shows that with focused effort, we can get to the place that we need to be. With that effort, you know, I don't, I remember, I'm going to date myself a little bit, but do you remember Avis commercials? You remember Avis? We try harder, right? So Dale Ainsworth, who has been working with us, he's a professor at SAC State, I'll give him credit for that, that slogan. He put that up at one of our A-Pot summits. Because I asked him to come and talk about, how do we make these changes durable? How do we make it so that a year from now, I'm not going to come back here with my head down saying we're back at 63 minutes? And he said to me, you know, Greg, you can't just work harder. And I worry that some of the gains that we've made is just that our emergency department staff, they're turning the wheel harder. And they're just, they're just trying to get people through. Now, certainly, there's been some operational changes within the EDs that have been phenomenal, that have, that have gotten us to where we are. And that came out of our mitigation planning, and it came out of some of the, out of our A-Pot discussions that were centered around AB40. So we've done a good job there. But now, now that we're getting within kind of shooting range of the, of that, of that target, I think we need to start putting some of our focus on the durability piece. So how do we make it so that it's just, it's just ingrained? So Kim Adams up at Kaiser Roseville, the nurse manager up there, when you retire, what's going to happen? Are you going to be right back to 80 minutes? Or are you going to continue to work? Some of the folks that we had stirring speeches of retirements today, you know, the same thing applies there. What's going to happen with your organization when you retire? You know, how do we, how do we get those changes to be durable? So that it's just, it's just Sacramento way. It's how we do it.
Yeah. Last question for me, and then I'll say to my colleagues. So the, the chart that you showed that has the 90th percentile sub 30 minutes, but then it shows the A-Pot average sub 20 minutes. So as you say, we are in shooting range of the target. And I believe in sort of the brass ring to the extent that the aspirational target doesn't provide for greater exposure or liability from a punitive standpoint. And so I guess my question is, relative to the AB40 standard, being different from our own county standard, what is the risk in that delta as far as if we, certainly, we need to meet the 30 minutes, but what if we don't meet the 20 minutes?
So, so again, again, we, we need to meet what we decide in Sacramento County is our offload standard. So if we decide that we're 20 minutes or 25 minutes, what we decide, that is, the state EMS authority takes that as the benchmark. It's not the 30-minute benchmark. So if we decide we're going to go to 30 minutes, then yes, that becomes the benchmark. But whatever we decide collectively is how we move forward. And the EMS authority will be making calls to our hospital partners. If you're not at 20 minutes, and that's what our standard is, then you're going to get a call. And they're going to be asking you about your, your A-Pot mitigation plan. You know, have you implemented that? What changes have you made? How are you looking to, to operationally get to that number?
Okay. Thank you, Chair.
Supervisor Serna.
Thank you. So to put a finer point on the last line of questioning from Supervisor Hume, and I'm asking for, I guess, more anecdotal information than hard data, because I'm not sure that it exists. It'd be great if it did. But
And it's coming.
I'm sure it is. And I'm sure it's going to be very small font.
Timing.
But so if, you know, what we're being asked to really, to meet the matter here today is 30 versus 20, at least in my estimation, from what I've heard from, from those that have been advocating on both sides. But if you were to look at what the patient risk is, if there is one, between those two objectives, what can you tell me anecdotally? Are there, for instance, are there examples where you had, you know, a patient in the field, someone calls 911, needs, they're in distress, they need assistance, but they can't, but EMS can't get there soon enough. So response times climb because they're on the wall. Versus, and, and just looking at though, that group of instances between the 10-minute delta. So if we could kind of get, if I can get my mind wrapped around that, that would help me understand not just the fiscal consequence, because, you know, as we're going to hear from the EMS folks, you know, you have a taxpayer dollar paid for EMS technician, you know, fire department personnel on the wall, waiting for their patient to be, you know, or for the hospitals to take full custody of that patient, you know, versus the hospital systems, not taxpayer-funded, which that's a, you know, I think that's a very interesting and salient point, again, for this supervisor to consider. But I really want to understand what are the consequences, not just the fiscal consequences, but what are the consequences to patients that are in dire need of attention between the 20 and 30? Is there anything else you can share? Do you have a slide you could whip out of your, you know, jacket pocket?
I can talk to you at length about this, Supervisor Serna. So
Try not to.
Try, we'll try. Point taken. All right. So, so state, state law, state law dictates what a paramedic or EMS professional can do inside of a hospital. So that law highlights that a paramedic may care for a patient if they're under the direct supervision of a physician or a nurse while they're in the course of training. So when you come out of SAC State or any other program, you come into one of our emergency departments, you got a nurse or a physician that you're on their hip, and they're walking you around the department saying, well, okay, let's start an IV, let's do all this, let's do this, this and this, and kind of get your, get you trained up. But once they, once they go out into the street and they come into the, to the, bring that patient into the emergency department, their ability to intervene on that patient is really zero. So they can continue to watch that patient.
So that patient goes into arrest? They can't get up there and start administering CPR?
So our, our providers will, they will, they'll do what's right for the patient. And that's what's happened in our county in previous instances. They will do what's right. They will start CPR. They will start doing what they need to do to care for that patient. But when that patient with chest pain or with other complaints comes in, and they're put on a wall, the crews that are in that hospital, all they are doing is essentially supervising that patient. So they've got eyes on them. So if something were to happen, they would have a sudden change in their status, they can raise a flag and say, hey, there's something going on with my patient. But their ability to intervene is very, very limited. And I think that that is, that is an area that there's, there's, I think, best put as some misunderstanding between our emergency department staff and what the statute is, which governs pre-hospital care providers in the brick and mortar of a hospital. So you can see a situation where patient rolls in and they, they have, so let's say they're having chest pain. And we do EKGs within 10 minutes. We allow our EMS providers to wheel that patient to a space where an EKG can be done to look at their heart. If there's an immediate issue there, they're going to take them. But if that EKG is negative, that patient can go on to a wall time. And then all of a sudden, you've got a situation where the medics are just standing there watching. Okay? So if, if in that, the next, say that EKG was done at 10 minutes, you've got another 10 minutes that goes by, that patient could be deteriorating. They could have an unseen medical condition that is getting worse with every passing second or minute while they're on the wall. And that may not be immediately evident just by you looking at a patient. So, and, and we have seen these instances as emergency providers, where patients decompensate on a wall, absolutely happens. We've seen patients where they, they arrest on a wall, where EMS providers start to do the CPR, and they raise their hand saying, hey, I've got a problem here. In my clinical opinion, as an emergency physician, active working emergency physician in this county, I feel that there is inherent risk in patients staying on an EMS gurney. There's inherent risk to that. To address, and just real quick, to address the pre-hospital side. So just to be clear, when there is no ambulance available, so I get asked this all the time, and I'm not the greatest spokesperson for our EMS colleagues, but I'm going to try. I'm going to try. I get asked this all the time. So why is, why is there an engine screaming down the road to get to a 911 call? Because there's paramedics on that engine. So the, you know, they want a six-minute response and on that, onto that sick patient. So engine's going to get there, you're going to get a paramedic crew that's going to start to care for that patient. So the response time is taken care of. The, the pre-hospital team is doing the work to stabilize that patient. But what happens with A-Pot is that all of a sudden, you might not have an ambulance. So the instance that Chief Rudnicki talked about at the A-Pot summit, there were paramedics on scene for that patient that was sick in the heart of Sacramento. But there were ambulances on the wall from all of the stations in and around that. And I think, where did that ambulance come from? Came out from Rancho?
Rancho.
From Rancho Cordova, to come into the, into Sacramento in order to take that patient to the hospital. So it showed in a very, very poignant way how ambulance patient offload delay and ambulance patient offload time can impact the next patient in the field.
So if, so in terms of the, how you began the response, explaining what a EMT, fire personnel, what their responsibilities are, once the patient is dedicated to wall space, they're basically just raising their hand, they're getting the attention of others if the patient deteriorates or, you know, has some more progress of their acute condition. What would you say is the qualifications then for, let's say you're going to invent a job, you're going to have a job description for that, for that person, regardless of, you know, what their, their background is, whether they're EMTs, doctors, nurses? If that's what you're telling us, that that is the responsibility, once they're on, on the wall, why couldn't you have a volunteer, someone, you know, or someone that's entry level in the hospital system, take on that responsibility thereby freeing up the EMT? And do so with the acknowledgement that that's going to be at some reduced cost to the hospital systems?
So and I can speak to this on both sides of the house. I can speak to it from an EMS side and on a hospital side. So we have, we have great work that's being done with SAC Metro Fire. We have SAC City Fire, Kevin's here, Brian's here, who have entered into a partnership with some of our private ambulance providers, where if you have multiple patients that are on a wall, it, you don't need to have multiple paramedics supervising those people. So you can have, you can have wall, essentially supervisory staff, other typically BLS units, so EMTs, that can come in and can take over observation over numerous patients. Okay? So that, that way freeing up the, the paramedic crew to get back on the street to be able to care for that next patient. Now, from the hospital side of things, we've seen some great innovation in this exact space over the last few months to the last year. And I think that that, that accounts for a lot of the improvement that we've seen. So our hospitals, so Sutter So our hospitals, so Sutter, Kaiser, Roseville was the first to really dive into this in a robust way, where they would have an offload zone. So a series of beds that were just in a hallway space, so typically where the wall time medics would be, where a patient arrives, they get the story from the prehospital crew, they get signed off as being now under the supervision of the emergency department, and then they're moved into that wall decompression space, where you have a tech or a single nurse that is able to supervise that group of patients until that they are then moved into an actual treatment space. And to speak to the treatment space, so currently, when a patient is on the wall, if I'm an emergency physician, I can go over there, I can, I can get their history, I can examine them, I can put orders in, but there's a, there is a barrier there. So they're getting their care started, from my perspective, is delayed. So even though I'm standing there able, I can't get you to get your chest x-ray, I can't get you to give me a urine sample, I can't get you to give me blood, all of those things. Now, our hospitals and EMS providers do some good work to kind of collaborate there, but the nuts and bolts of getting somebody cared for does not happen when they're on an EMS gurney. That happens when they're on an ED bed where I can do my work. And so that's why APOT is important for me as a hospital person, that I want to get patients into bed spaces so I can get them started and I can get them the care they need.
So have 100% of our hospital systems implemented this already?
So that's a great question. So Kaiser-Roseville implemented, and that was one of their biggest things that they did. So other than some cultural changes within their department to get people to buy into the, to the next patient idea. So they were able to get people moving in that direction. The next hospital that did this, and it's even more dramatic and impressive than Kaiser-Roseville. Kaiser-Roseville, again, largest emergency department, one of the largest emergency departments in the state, a ton of resources, you know, nurses, physicians, techs for days. Then you, fast forward, you shift over to Mercy San Juan Medical Center. I don't know if anybody's ever been in Mercy San Juan Medical Center's emergency department, but it is probably about the size of the space that us are standing in here. And they care for the largest prehospital EMS volume in the county. I'll say that again. So the number of EMS transports in the county, it's the highest at Mercy San Juan. They had some of the worst APOT times. Now, I think in November, they were 21 minutes. And it is because they did this, they call it APOT Alley, so their central hallway, they've got nurses that have just committed to this process, techs that are committed to this process to get patients off of the gurneys, EMS gurneys, quick, put them into this loading area where they can be seen, and then they get shifted over to the actual place where they're going to land later. So we've had two, I know in my hospital, I work at Kaiser-Sacramento, the nursing staff there is working diligently to replicate some of the work that's being done in Roseville. I know that the Kaiser system, there is discussions at a regional level about implementing those types of changes across their entire system. And I'll call out Morse Avenue Kaiser, I actually think that they went under 20 minutes in the month of November, from the worst in the county. So again, these work, but again, I worry that we're working harder, not smarter, and that we need to try to get in the durable systems changes that can keep us there.
Great. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Can. I don't see any more questions from the board. Is that the end of your presentation?
That's it for me. Thank you so much.
Okay. Do we have public comment?
We do have public comments. Our first speaker is John Rudnicki.
Okay. And if we could, we're really pushed up against a serious deadline for future, next items or upcoming items, so if we could try to represent a group, let's say, for example, if you're wearing a uniform that looks a lot like the people who are around you, and just kind of try to represent the group as much as well as you can, so we don't have repetition.
Understood. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
My name is John Rudnicki, Director of EMS and Metro Fire, and I am representing our EMS system, both public and private, in my comments and remarks, which are focused solely on gratitude, collaboration, and an ask for your support for the next phase of this. Dr. Can stole a lot of my words unplanned, but I'm glad he was able to answer it. First off, my gratitude towards you, all of your staff at the county that's been focused on this topic and supporting us. Based on the questions and comments and dialogue that just happened, I'm very much appreciative. It shows the engagement and the desire to understand both sides and positions. Also want to share gratitude to the hospital systems. It truly has been great collaboration and a good partnership that we've had, meeting with, meetings led by the LEMSA and Dale Ainsworth. As one big team, yeah, we see things differently and we have different views, but it has truly been a collaboration with Rose from Sutter-Roseville, along with the Kaiser and Mercy San Juans and all the systems. It truly has been. We are excited for where we are. Those numbers are great. Our EMS folks on the streets share with me regularly, asking questions of what happened at this hospital or that hospital? I'm not waiting as long. It's not as frequent. It's phenomenal. The ask is this continued focus on this AB40 and what our standard is going to be. I heard some questions about comparing us to other counties, and as the leaders you are, and as the LEMSA is, I challenge us all to look at how we're going to set the standard and the bar for the state. AB40 gave the ability for each county to look at their community, their hospitals, their resources and geography, and decide what is best for our county. And no other task or race or competition that I'm aware of, do you measure your success before you reach the finish line, just in comparison to where everybody is? And so I encourage us to do the same. I know my time is limited, but the last moment is just...
You're speaking for an important constituency in this issue, so I'll give you a couple more minutes.
Thank you so much. I appreciate it. I give you, our, our goal is to continue to work with our hospital partners. We know that it's a difficult position to be in when they don't have space and staffed, but we are excited about the progress we've seen, the many examples of reaching under 20 minutes. And so our desire and ask is that you continue to support Dr. Can and our county with being the leaders we are in establishing the standard, leaning on the examples we've already seen from hospitals, that we can achieve 20 minutes, not 100% of the time, we know that. And to your question, Supervisor Serna, about the examples, I'm not going to focus on examples of the negative outcomes, but we did have one yesterday where we had a seizure, the patient's on the wall for two hours, and they start seizing again on the wall. Those are challenges for us. And in our focus the whole time, as I've shared with all of you, is we are focused on the next patient, and the patient and their life is our priority. And I'll close with this. In the fire service, when we respond to a structured fire, we've all seen the news clippings and the media stories about when we save a life and we pull somebody out of a building. When our crews respond to those fires, it's in all of our minds that there is a life in that building. Our priority is life. Somebody's loved one, somebody who can't help themselves. And we don't move on to the next priority of saving the building until we know everybody's out. The correlation to EMS is every single dispatch is a life priority. We know somebody's there. Somebody's loved one, somebody who can't help themselves, somebody who needs our help. And that's what we want to do. We want to continue this great effort we've had, the success and momentum, and continue to be able to respond without delay, get our ambulances off the wall as a team, and respond to the next patient. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
Good morning, Board of Supervisors. My name is Tressan Ike. I'm a 30-year practicing emergency physician, as you can tell by the color of my hair. It's left a long time ago. I live in District 3. I'm the Medical Director for Consumables Fire Department in District 5. On behalf of Consumables Fire Department and Chief Rodriguez, we want to thank you, Supervisor Hume, for all the work and unwavering support you have given us over the years and for your work on APOT. Why am I here? I'm here to support the current standard of 20 minutes because it's a patient safety issue. And I'm going to tell you two stories. The hospitals, both the EMS, public and private, have done excellent work, and we decreased the time, and we'll continue to work together. But here are my two stories. Over the last three years, dispatch has gone down to zero medics in the system, three times. What did that result in? There was a patient that was having a cardiac arrest at the airport, undergoing care, but the closest transporting agency was 30 miles away. There was a pediatric respiratory distress. The closest responding agency was 26 miles away. So it does impact us on a daily. Someone say, why not put more ambulances in the system? Well, that doesn't solve the problem. It puts more ambulances in the system, it puts more ambulances on your wall. It doesn't solve the APOT issue. Lastly, I'm going to give you one from one of my crews. I had a 50-year-old with chest pain, complaining of chest pain for several hours, was transported in, had EKG changes concerning for a cardiac event, had an arrhythmia, got into the hospital, should have gone directly to room, did not. Not at 30 minutes, not at 20 minutes, but at 12 minutes, after getting an EKG, just to confirm what we already knew, that patient went into cardiac arrest. The patient ultimately went to a room and got treated, and no adverse effects. But these are the day-to-day toll of having wall time for our crews. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Doctor. Next speaker, please.
Hi. I'm Alex Schmaltz. I'm coming today, actually, as a member of the public. I live about a mile down the streets, and I'm somebody who really deeply cares about the care that my loved ones, our family, everybody around us is receiving. I also have a bit of background that I think kind of fleshes out my perspective. I'm an ER doc who's been practicing in Sacramento for a little over eight years. I'm the Medical Director for Sacramento Metro Fire, and I am the Stanislaus County Medical Director, so the Greg Can of Stanislaus County, if I can make that analogy. I'm also a member of the Public Health Advisory Board for you guys at the Sacramento County. So I have a little bit of context and something I care very deeply about. I think everything that we do revolves around patients, so I'm going to kind of hub this story around the patients that I took care of. I can think of dozens of these examples, but the one that kind of most stands out to me was a middle-aged man, actually not much older than I am, maybe five years older than I am, came in, was on the wall, waiting for a room for about half an hour. Unfortunately, he went into cardiac arrest. He underwent about an hour of CPR and he died. Couldn't bring him back. I wasn't the doctor taking care of this patient, but I was the doctor who was there when his wife showed up. And when I was telling her about the patient and the howls of grief and agony that just came out, because she kept saying, he was fine, he was fine. And that is one of the worst moments of my career, and that will stick with me for the rest of my career and the rest of my life. And I can't help but think that if that patient got into a room and got the care earlier, that may not have happened. Sorry, my notes just disappeared. But as the Medical Director for Stanislaus County, I know that we've faced a similar problem. Our APOT times were very similar when I came in there about two years ago. They're close to 60 minutes for the 90th percentile. Every hospital has gotten under that 30-minute period.
Can you wrap up, Doctor?
Yeah. This is a goal that is achievable. There are counties where, many counties, where all the hospitals are under 20 minutes. They do not have more resources or better hospitals. I think it's just something, if we keep working together, we can make a huge impact for our patients and prevent cases like this.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. Mr. Jensen, you have up to four minutes.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Good morning, or maybe it's afternoon now, it's been a good session. I'm Brian Jensen with the Hospital Council, and I represent the hospitals that serve Sacramento County and Rosa, which is in the Emergency Medical Services Agency's jurisdiction. I want to begin by saying, today is a day of celebration. I was here 13 months ago, and we had the same conversation, and it was dire, and we were very concerned. And there's been a lot of concentrated focus from the leadership level at the board and the staff of the county, as well as everyone in the room, and I have genuine respect and affection for my friends here, because it's a very difficult challenge that we've all been dealing with for a long time. And so it really is a time to celebrate. I want to commend the county for three things. You've supported the right programs, like mobile integrated health, like the infrastructure investments in behavioral health. You've supported the right policies, like triage to alternate destination and the 50-50 protocol. And you've supported the right approach by bringing in Dr. Ainsworth to facilitate conversations with EMS providers in the hospitals, to really grind away at this problem from a very granular level, and that's what it's taken. Hospitals have also done their part. There have been literally many dozens of individual adjustments to staffing, to operational procedures, and to internal alignment from the ED to the in-house part of the hospital, from physician staff to the nursing, all those kinds of things that are so complex. They've been ironing out individual things bit by bit by bit, and we're seeing the results of that. We are confident that the hospitals in Sacramento can reach a 30-minute standard. It's a stretched goal, and it has been, based on history, but we're getting there and we're doing it. And that would be in compliance with AB40. I will say that there are a couple of things that keep us from seeing the 20-minute standard the county now has as a reasonable expectation. I think, before we talk about enforcing this and holding hospitals accountable for meeting 20-minute standard, there are at least two things that need to take place. Number one, we need to ensure the data accuracy and integrity of APOT data. And as we look into it, we find out there's a lot of discrepancies. Some of it is structural because of the way our data systems are, and the county is working on a plan by having its own repository that will dramatically improve that. The Growth Factory Innovation Challenge that we've engaged with, together with everyone in this room, have identified a technological solution to that by automating and increasing the data accuracy of those times, which, if you're going to be held accountable to something, you want to make sure we're talking about facts and not an approximation of facts. The other thing, though, that I think we are already on the path to doing, is expanding the collaborative effort that the county has led through Dr. Ainsworth, and bringing the parties together to really have a singular focus on operationally making changes that work. However, there are at least two sets of participants or partners that are not in the room yet. And I would urge the county to extend Dr. Ainsworth's contract into next year and expand the group at the table to include managed care plans and skilled nursing facilities. Because APOT is largely a front-door symptom of problems beyond the hospital's control outside of their back door. With some assistance by us all coming together, like we have at the front door, and focusing on the broader continuum of care, ensuring that there are safe destination points for the people who no longer need acute care, that are being held longer in hospitals because they're not being directed to the safe next step. And so they're held longer, which backs up things through the hospital to the front door. The people holding the keys to the back door of the hospital are the health plans and the skilled nursing facilities and other post-acute providers. Let's bring them all to the table, let's continue this work, and a year from now, I would love to see us near that 20-minute mark. However, before we hold hospitals accountable to that, we need to take those steps. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker.
Good morning.
Welcome.
I'm Rose Clangelo, Registered Nurse. I'm the Emergency Director at Sutter-Roseville Medical Center, and I'm the Sutter Health Chair for the APOT Committee. Today's APOT number represents the collaboration of the hospital, the LEMSA, EMS agencies, and fire. The decrease is more than 50%. The 20-minute standard from 2014 was from the California Hospital Association and collaboration, and it was prior to a pandemic, it was prior to the increase in the volume of patients that are seeking medical care in our community that need our services. Patients don't arrive one at a time. We can arrive up to 20 to 30 patients in an hour, up to 10 arriving by ambulance in an already impacted emergency department. That's why it is so important for all of us to work together to meet the demands of our community. We all want what's best for our community, and we all want to offer timely care, and we all want to, the way we have proven it works, is by working together. I believe you're going to see a video, which highlights, as Brian was talking about, the work that we've done with the Growth Factory, and that really is with the collaboration with everybody in this room, having one common goal of looking at what kind of tools could we use to have transparency of that data. Right now, we don't get the data until the next month, 10 or 11 days after that month starts. So it's really hard for us to be able to pivot as a community to make sure that we have those resources available. We don't want patients on our wall. We don't want patients who are having chest pain, who are not, who really need that acute services. We want everybody to be seen. We want the 85% of our patients that are walking in, the 15% that are coming by EMS. We want everybody to be seen timely. So it's really important for us to be able to continue to collaborate together. And I really want to thank the LEMSA, Dr. Can, and Dave, our EMS Assistant Chief Rudnicki, all of us for coming together and really having that common goal, because 13 months ago, we didn't think we were going to get to where we are today, and here we are now. So just continue to work together.
Thank you, Rose. Next speaker, please.
Good afternoon. My name is Peter Hall. I've served in a variety of different roles, but I moved to this community 28 years ago to be an ER physician in Sutter-Roseville, which at the time was down on sunrise. I'm sure some of my friends in here remember that as well. And that's something really important to remember, is that many of our...
My name is Peter Hall. I've served in a variety of different roles, but I moved to this community 28 years ago to be an ER physician in Sutter Roseville, which at the time was down on Sunrise. I'm sure some of my friends in here remember that as well. And that's something really important to remember is that many of our emergency departments exist in areas now that are incredibly fast-growing and accommodating those changes is really challenging. Another important thing to remember also is that an emergency department is open to everybody. It's part of the reason I've always loved being an ER doctor. We see everybody who needs to see us, we're going to take care of anybody who walks through the door. And sometimes you have to realize, as much as we rely so much on our pre-hospital colleagues, some patients will arrive by private auto and not ones that are stable. Sometimes family members will panic and they will bring in a patient who is incredibly sick or even dying. And they will be really, really not thinking clearly and drive in to the ER with that patient. We need to see everybody. I think an important thing to remember is that the emergency department is there to serve everyone. And often, the sickest patients come to us by ambulance, but sometimes they don't. We have to be able to accommodate everyone that comes through the door. Only about 15% of our patients will come by ambulance and so we need to make sure that we're able to be ready to take care of everyone that comes in and we're dedicated to that, I can promise you. I'm very proud of the service that I have and I've been able to serve in a variety of different roles now with Sutter. I'm now the Chief Medical Officer in the Sacramento area. And we work very hard, as Brian Jensen said, to make sure that we're working every day to have the emergency departments available to take care of everyone.
Thank you, Doctor.
You're welcome.
That's the last public speaker that I see. Supervisor Serna.
Thank you. I know that this is just a report that we're receiving today, but I want to thank everyone who took the time to wait patiently and be here and speak and help us think through what I think is actually a good, an overall good situation, right? The fact that we can all, as someone said, celebrate the success that's occurred thus far. I do think that, you know, setting an objective below the maximum, what the state would set for us, is probably the right way to consider this. But I also wanted to take the time and, as others have, to publicly thank Supervisor Hume for being our supervisor, our Board of Supervisors leader on the subject. We oftentimes, the five of us, take up matters, sometimes as a matter of divisional labor, but I think oftentimes it's, you know, of great personal interest. And so, thank you Supervisor Hume for staying on this and look forward to your continued, you know, involvement in this as what I would hope would be a shared interest in the 20-minute standard. Thank you.
Supervisor Hume.
I saw Director Lutz coming to the podium, doing one. Were you?
The only thing I wanted to highlight to the board, we didn't have time to show what we think is a great video from Growth Factory.
No, you don't.
Yes. So Will, I was going to ask the clerk if we could probably link it into the board item and I'll be happy to send it out to everybody.
And send it out to us, that'd be great. Thank you.
And again, I know we're up against a time constraint, so I won't belabor the issue too much further, but I do just, again, want to extend my congratulations for the work that's been done and the effort that has been made. It has been substantial and it has to be sustainable, as I think Dr. Khan was mentioning. But, you know, the ultimate solution is not just creating better throughput for the existing funnel. And I appreciate Brian Jensen's points about, you know, making sure the information is good and making sure that we have the capacity and throughput. But the biggest capacity we have to have is adding more funnels. And a lot of that, as I said earlier, comes through a legislative fix that expands our TAD capabilities, the reimbursement. We do have to add those voices to the table of the folks who aren't here, who are critical pieces to all of this. We're going to have an item on the agenda, I see Dr. Porteous in the audience, relative to WellSpace and standing up a new center that's going to provide some of that capacity. So I agree, now is not the time to take our foot off the gas. Hold that higher standard out there, but please, use it as a carrot and not a stick while we work on these, refining some of our existing processes. So thank you all for the work that you're doing.
Thank you, Supervisor. And thank you all for being here that came out today. Appreciate what you do every day, but sitting through and, you know, this important item. So thank you very much for being here. And with that, we're going to take an item out of order. We are against a hard deadline, so we will take Madam Clerk, item number 83, next.
Okay. That is the Terracina at WildHawk, the execution of bond documents, up to $45 million. Approval to amend the budget to authorize the execution of a construction and permanent loan agreement with USA Properties for $9.2 million. Approval to provide $1.4 million in county fee offset program funding to Sacramento Housing and Redevelopment Agency and authorize SHRA to execute a loan agreement for $1.4 million with USA Properties.
Good afternoon, Chair, members of the board. Whitney Hinton with Sacramento Housing and Redevelopment Agency. Staff is requesting approval to enter into an agreement with the county of Sacramento and then USA Properties, the developer, for the impact fee waiver offset fees and approval of the final loan and bond documents for Terracina at WildHawk project. In April, the board approved a $9.2 million loan commitment and issuance of the bonds for the project. Terracina at WildHawk is a new construction project located on a 6.9 acre vacant lot at 9756 Gerber Road. The project will consist of six three-story buildings and one standalone clubhouse. There will be 145 one, two, and three-bedroom units affordable to households who earn between 30% and 70% of area median income. USA Properties will serve as the developer and USA Management Company will service the property management company. The project is scheduled to close on financing mid-December and construction will start immediately. This concludes my presentation. The staff is available, any questions you may have.
Thank you very much. I don't see any questions from the board. Is there any public comment?
I don't have public comments.
Okay. I will say, you know, this is proof that there's not one way to do anything. You know, I want to thank our planning staff and, you know, the various staffs and SHRA for coming up with this and making it possible to go forward with what's really a great project and meeting our needs for affordability and all of that. So thank you very much, all of you who worked on this, and I will move the item.
Was that? Okay, thank you.
Please vote.
Unanimous vote.
Okay.
Supervisor, thank you for taking it out of order.
Sure. All right, so now we're back to item 80. And this is the authority to execute a revenue agreement with Advocates for Human Potential and WellSpace and all the other actions therein that are reflected on the agenda.
Good morning, or afternoon now, board. Tim Lutz, Director of Health Services. I'm happy to bring this project forward. I'll say that this really represents the strong partnerships and collaborations that we have built up in Sacramento. This B-Chip or Behavioral Health Infrastructure or Capital Improvement Program funding originally was a county project that was going to be in Supervisor Hume's district. Unfortunately, the, when we originally scoped the project and then increases in construction costs were such that it was really going to be out of our reach to be able to build a new facility where we had intended. And that project could have completely gone away. However, WellSpace Health stepped in and said they could complete the project within the original grant scope. And so we've now, almost six months of negotiations with the state to come up with an agreement that everybody's comfortable with and really, really happy to be able to bring this project forward and fruition. It'll provide mental health rehabilitation center, beds, 32 beds, which is a sub-acute facility, something that we've identified as a key and critical gap within the county. And so very happy to be able to bring this forward. Dr. Jonathan Porteous is here today to talk also about this project, but also the broader scope of the Stockton Boulevard work that WellSpace is doing and kind of how this fits into certainly our behavioral health continuum of care, but also our community and the different levels of care that WellSpace is providing. So I'll ask Jonathan to come up and I think he has a presentation to walk through with you.
Thank you. Welcome, Dr. Porteous.
Thank you, thank you. It's great to see everyone. Thanks for having me and I will try to make this as quick as I can.
We're not in nearly the hurry as we were 15 minutes ago, so.
And I presume that when it points to the right, I can just click this to move the slides forward. I'll try it. Okay, I'm Dr. Jonathan Porteous. Thanks so much for having me. I'm the Chief Executive Officer of WellSpace Health and it's a pleasure to be here to talk about our wellness campus in general. I've been serving this community for over 20 years now. I've tried to build the best science-based interventions that we can have in our community. I've tried to start with the least fortunate people at the center of my focus and then worked my way out. I should say, it's not been a lonely road. It's been a road of partnership. And luckily, my name doesn't start with an M, so I'm not retiring today. But some of our friends with M names, these have been great partners for us. Also, I should acknowledge Ben AV and Petra Linden, who are here with me, incredible partners in our work. Our mission is achieving regional health through high-quality comprehensive care and it's regional and it's in partnership. We're one of Sacramento's oldest social service providers dating back to 1953. When we talk about the Warren E. Thornton Facility on Bradshaw, Warren E. Thornton was a founding board member of the Family Service Agency, which is a pro-genital organization of ours. When you think about EPI's Great Race, that actually was specifically created to fundraise for the Aquarian Effort, which is the pro-genital organization of ours. So we've braided multiple organizations to bring that integrated care package that we think complements what the county does and what the region needs. And so that's a lot about what this wellness campus is about. We, as an organization, currently have 125,000 patients served in our community health centers. We have over 400,000 visits a year with about 1,400 people seen every day. And importantly, our 988 Crisis Suicide and Crisis Lifeline is growing as a result of an increased 988 advertising and the use of that line. And we currently are going beyond 150,000 calls, texts, and chats annually. We have health centers across the region. I think just this map is rather bare bones, but you can see we've put multiple different types of health centers across our region. And this partial list, it's 20 things that make up a partial list of things we do, maybe I'll just point out four of them. Primary care, 125,000 Sacramento beneficiaries on the Medi-Cal, plus about 10,000 uninsured persons, both and beyond. A critical piece of who we are as an organization. A whole continuum of co-occurring substance use and mental health disorders, treatments, and the 988 Suicide Prevention and Crisis Lifeline. Important to us is the infrastructure. How do we bind our organization? We do that with quality and what I call administrative proctology. And my favorite group is the Joint Commission. They're rather invasive, they come and scrutinize us closely. We're accredited three ways by the Joint Commission, for primary care, for behavioral health, and now for our certified community behavioral health clinic. We're also certified, on top of those three accreditations, as a patient-centered health home and behavioral health home. And then we have additional accreditations with the American Association of Suicidology and the International Council for Health Plans. I'd like to call us a confluence of care. We know what a confluence is here in Sacramento, that is, the American and the Sacramento Rivers coming together. And our health, our community wellness campus really reflects that. We're developing a marquee regional community wellness campus in Sacramento County to provide comprehensive medical, dental, behavioral health, and supportive services, primarily to people insured with Medi-Cal, with a focus on expanding behavioral health and recovery continuum to care to vulnerable people. We are of the community and in service to this community. I think that's pretty obvious. The community wellness campus is intended to meet unmet local and regional needs, bolster program access, and serve as a template for how our community builds a recovery-oriented confluence of synergistic care. One component which we've touched upon in various ways, actually, this morning, most recently with the alternative destination discussion, is the community wellness campus will follow the Substance Abuse and Mental Health Service Administration National Best Practice for Behavioral Health Crisis Care, uniting typically disparate aspects of care to provide underserved people with high-quality comprehensive care across the region. Specifically, the model unites our system of federally qualified health centers, the region's largest Medi-Cal behavioral health system, and California's second-largest 988 crisis center, on a campus large enough for co-location of these key services. Now to the pictures. You can see here that this is actually the campus, the community wellness campus. You can see Stockton Boulevard on the right, Reza Avenue above, and Morrison Creek winds its way around the back end, the left end of our campus. The bottom of the campus is actually also the city and the county line. So we've tried to be accessible to the county and the city. The existing buildings on this campus listed as A1 through 3 and D add up to 70,000 square feet of unfinished space, which will allow various projects to move forward very quickly. The remaining land is eight and a half acres and has been compacted and prepared for construction so it's shovel-ready for various projects needing rapid ground-up construction. In the next slides, you'll see various layouts of this campus. I'd suggest you look at that traffic rotary, that circle in the middle there, so it can kind of give you a sense of where we are on the next few pictures. First, I'm just going to touch on the governor's Safe Stay Community. The Sacramento County will open soon with first-step communities as their operator. The Safe Stay Community has access to this undeveloped piece of land until June 30th of 2027. You can see here, you see the circle there in the middle, or part of one. So this is just south of that circle and there will be five villages in the Safe Stay Community with a buffer space between Stockton Boulevard to the right and the front of that Safe Stay Community. In this design, you can see how the campus is going to develop over the next five years. Immediately below the traffic circle is where the Safe Stay Community is and where the parking structure and buildings flanking it will go up. I'll let you know in a few slides when the construction actually is going to begin in timeline, but you can see access to the far left of the campus remains open with the Safe Stay Community since construction of those buildings to the left will begin while the Safe Stay Community is still there. Various residential rehab and withdrawal management programs will be built into the two structures on the far left. In fact, we've already received a $16 million B-Chip award from the state and, as you know, various local dollars that you've committed to this project, for which we're terribly grateful. The Mental Health Rehabilitation Center, today's focus is part of the B-Chip funding allocation and it's the building at about 11 o'clock on that traffic rotary with the bright green patch on it. The 988 Community Crisis Communications Center will be in that large building on the top. The top floor of that will be a 988 call center. We serve 32 out of 58 counties and that is where we're going to receive all of those mental health and suicidal crisis calls, plus perform dispatch, because there's an increasing integration between 988 and 911. And again, that fits with our idea that we're re-engineering the crisis response system and creating an appropriate place for people to go. The crisis-receiving site, the Crib, will be in addition to the one we have over the road here and it'll be downstairs in that same building. It'll represent an expansion of our 24-hour crisis-receiving work, which is especially salient with alternative destination, where we, people who don't actually need to be in a psych facility or take up an acute care bay in a hospital will be able to go. 10,000 visits, drop-offs to the site over the road in three years, 3% went to the hospital. 10,000, 3%. We'll also have an expansion of our outpatient services. We have an extensive slew of services for substance use and co-occurring disorders with the county, our CCBHC, and also our federally qualified health center. And ultimately, we'll have a housing entity down on the bottom right there. We plan on a senior housing, supportive housing site for elders in the local Southeast Asian community, since this is Little Saigon. This is the Mental Health Rehab Center that you are considering today. We have a three-story structure and we have built the top as the outdoor space that provides dignity and privacy to the person staying in that facility. We've designed this closely with a traditional provider of these services and this will, we will simply be the landlord for this facility, which will be run by the county and a county contractor. Our confluence extends to partnership. We partnered with ourselves, partnered with the county, with the city, Stockton Boulevard Partnership, the state of California, Advocates for Human Potential- Partnership, the State of California, Advocates for Human Potential, and Amity Foundation. We also have a confluence of funding, which we think of as a complex funding ecosystem. B-Chip, Behavioral Health Continuum Infrastructure Program. This has been a major, major program. I want to be candid. This is like gold or probably something better than gold for us. 22, 23 years now I've been here trying to find ways to build programs, and this program came along. The bit that I am a little cynical about, and I just want to request your support, we need the indigenous providers of this community to be getting those dollars. We need people who've been here in the good times, but also the bad times. We need the nonprofits who you have helped raise over these decades, and this is a great time for what one of my colleagues would call poverty speculation, where people sort of step in and start saying, well, there's a whole bunch of money out there for these programs. But we really need to remember our roots and who's been grooming these programs and who's been nurturing these programs over time. And if we need to consider other programs, we're happy to support other programs coming in that have the same kind of dedication to the community. But just in terms of funding, B-Chip Round Three, that's the money you're considering today with this MHRC. B-Chip Round Five is the $16 million we got to start raising the residential rehab facility. Prop One, the bond B-Chip funding. Round One, we have two applications out to build out the crisis continuum and also augment the residential rehab and withdrawal management detox services. So you'll see these funds really needed in this context. We're also working on a bond B-Chip Round Two plan, where the county and other counties are looking at what's needed out there, what youth services might have economies of scale across a region rather than one county. And it's been fun to kind of start imagining with your colleagues here in the county. We're getting into New Markets Tax Credits, which is one other form of leveraging the funding and bringing in funding into our funding stack. And so we'll be bringing those to the campus, direct investments through gifts and generosity of community partners, and obviously, conventional loans. I think it's really important, this project is in the city, I guess. Much of the work we're doing, just that infrastructure work that we've spent the whole of a year doing to change parcel maps, subdivision condominium maps, has been this incredible partnership with your county executive and his team.
So, Dr. While it's in the city, it is surrounded on three sides by the county, to be clear.
Thank you very much, yes. I am not as able to know that as you are. So, you got me. And I just, you know, we are here together doing this, and this is a partnership, and this will be a partnership. We're not really interested in doing what we think is good for us. We're just focused on what we think and we know in partnership is good for our community and our region. So thank you, and thanks also to any of my staff who are here.
Thank you, Dr. Portius. Is there any other presentation to be made? Nope, okay. Thank you. Is there any public comment?
We do not have public comments for this item.
Okay. I will say that, thank you, doctor, for being here and giving that concise presentation on a very complex subject. This is an amazing, I akin this to, in Supervisor Desmond's district, what we're doing on Wad Avenue, as far as a game changer for the county of Sacramento. And we've got, you know, that campus up north, this campus in the south, you know, delivering services to the direct area, which are badly needed, but also revitalizing an area in another respect, and, you know, being a part of the community. I'll give an example. The WellSpace folks made a conscious decision not to build food facilities, significant food facilities that are going to be needed for this, so that they could contract out with local restaurants and businesses. You know, WellSpace has made a commitment to that area and is going to be a huge benefit for us from a health perspective, but a community perspective as well. So, thank you for, Supervisor Desmond.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and I want to echo a lot of those same sentiments. This is amazing, what we're doing here. And Dr. Portius, I want to thank you for your leadership, tenacity, creativity. It's amazing how integrated and comprehensive this campus is going to be. And, you know, when I first got elected, like a lot of people, went out and visited, you know, Haven for Hope, and you go to places, programs, and other parts of the country and other parts of the state. This, and hopefully eventually, the campus on Wad Avenue, these are the places where people from other states and throughout the state of California are going to come visit, because they're going to see that these are really game-changing programs. So I'm very excited about this, very supportive about what this is going to do. And those little kind of details that you mentioned in terms of not providing food services, but committing to the local community, and also looking at opportunities for both permanent supportive housing nearby and affordable housing nearby. It'll be great to have that geographically proximate to these locations, too. So, very, very supportive of it, and thank you for all your efforts and the efforts of county staff.
I'd like to move to staff recommendation. Please vote.
Unanimous vote.
Okay. Before we get to the next item, which is 81, we are going to actually hold that over until the afternoon session, so we'll schedule that for 2:00. And so that takes us to 82.
For item 82, you're acting as the Board of Supervisors and the Housing Authority of County of Sacramento. This is the approval of the 2025 Sacramento Housing and Redevelopment Agency Proposed Budget and Adopting a Multifamily Loan and Mortgage Revenue Bond Application Schedule.
Good afternoon. Take it, can everyone hear me? Good afternoon, Chair Kennedy, and my supervisor, Vice Chair Supervisor Serna, is really happy to be here. And I just want to say, my name is Cecile Nunley, and I serve as the Vice Chair of the Sacramento Housing and Redevelopment Commission. I also serve on the Agency for Aging for Area Four, again, as part of Representative from Phil Serna. And I am an aging senior, as they would say. And you see my dress here, I just came from the gym, literally, so I was exercising and trying to keep the health, because health is so important. And not just for aging seniors, but it's also important from the standpoint of the housing. And you have housing for seniors, which is a significant component of the Sacramento Housing and Redevelopment Agency, because so many of us are on fixed income, as I am. And we just see barely the colas that keep, hopefully keep pace with inflation, but then you have health costs that go way above. So it's just with a great honor that I'm introducing the Sacramento Housing and Redevelopment Proposed Budget, and hopefully for your acceptance. SHRA operates on a calendar year, and the current operating year will end December 31st. The agency prepares its annual budget and presents it to the commission and to the governing boards. The budget presentation includes updates from each of the agency's core department functions, which focus on goals, accomplishments, and projections for the coming year. Between August and November, the agency's staff presented us the following 2025 budget updates to the commission. They included revenue trends and projections, administration department, housing choice voucher, homeless innovations, and housing authority, as well as development. And on November 20th, the commission approved the 2025 Sacramento Housing and Redevelopment Agency Proposed Budget. On behalf of the commission, I would like to commend SHRA staff for presenting budget reports that were very thorough, informative, and for being responsive to any of our concerns or recommendations from the commission. I am very proud of the hard work that has been done by the commission and all agency's staff throughout the budget process in achieving SHRA's mission to provide affordable housing opportunities to Sacramento residents. I also would like to say, given the current political environment and reality that we are now facing, both staff presented a very comprehensive overview of what the potential could be for our group going forward. So in closing, I would like to ask SHRA Direct Finance Director Irene DeJong and Executive Director LaChelle Dozier to present the agency's 2025 final budget for your approval. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chair Nunley. Good afternoon, Chair Kennedy, members of the board. I am Irene DeJong, Director of Finance at SHRA, and I'm pleased to provide a brief overview of our 2025 budget. Our proposed budget is balanced. Our fiscal year runs January through December, and we're estimating about $419 million in total revenue for 2025. As in previous years, vast majority of those funds will come from the federal resources. That represents almost $302 million, or about 72%. And then the remainder, 28%, or about $117 million, will be coming from state and local resources. In terms of our proposed expenditures, those total $327.1 million. Majority will be committed to our HAP payments, which is Housing Assistance Payments, followed by capital projects at $61.2 million, salaries and benefits at almost $34 million, services and supplies with about $23.3, public services at $5.8, followed by debt service at $2.3, and financial transactions at .9 million. The next slide provides a brief comparison of the past, of the four years of our budget trends. As you could see, we're coming back to the pre-COVID spending trends. As compared with 2024, our proposed budget is slightly higher, about 1, excuse me, $1.4 million, or 0.4%. And this is mainly attributed to the net impact over housing assistance payments. And the next slide provides a 10-year snapshot of the housing assistance payments trends. As you could see, since COVID, those have gone up, and the HAP payments are primarily based on the utilization of our vouchers, as well as the cost of housing. And as you could see here, since 2020, those costs have increased significantly. Also, it's important to note, as we are converting our public housing portfolio into the RAD, which is Rental Assistance Demonstration Units, those additional units will be generating vouchers for us, so the trend will continue in the upcoming year of higher revenues. And then conversely, on the public housing side, as those units from the portfolio are being converted into the RAD program, you will see slight decrease on this revenue side. And so this concludes a brief overview of our budget highlights, and I will turn over the presentation to LaChelle Dozier, our Executive Director.
Thank you, Angela, because I keep talking with my hand, so sometimes I can't do all those things at one time. I'm LaChelle Dozier, Executive Director for Sacramento Housing and Redevelopment Agency, and I'd just like to say, provide highlights, kind of the big picture, looking at what are we seeing at the state and the federal level as it relates to housing and all of the resources that we receive. As Irene just pointed out, the majority of our funds do come from the federal government, so we're always very keenly aware of exactly, you know, what's going on and what are some of the opportunities and challenges with that. But before I go into federal, I think I want to start with just the state. In the state, we have, $4 billion have been committed to housing affordability and homelessness. Governor Newsom has done an excellent job of focusing on homeless housing and has provided, you know, a lot of resources and information and funding. $1 billion of that is our HAP funding, and we all know that that is what's critical, that we use to help support a lot of the homeless shelters that we oversee. $500 million goes into low-income housing tax credits, which is a part of all of the funding mechanisms. You know, we call it lasagna layer funding, because you need so many different pieces and components to make affordable housing work. So there's been continued commitment of that in terms of the $500 million. And then the $418 is the competitive funding, another source of funds that we use to pull together these projects. But more importantly, is the $2.2 billion of Home Key funding. We've been very successful with Home Key over the last few years. We have projects that are literally under construction as we speak, and we are gearing up for the NOFA that just came out on last Thursday, I believe it was. No, Thursday was Thanksgiving, so it must have been Wednesday. And we have projects that we are getting ready to submit for consideration. We've been, as I said, very successful. If we are successful in our next two Home Key rounds, then we will be up to eight Home Key projects that we have been able to initiate, which translates to hundreds of individuals who've been able to get off the streets as a result of that program. So now let me turn over to what's going on at the federal level, because there's a lot going on at the federal level.
Is there?
Yes. Yes, there is. The federal level, we are, we have a lot of challenges, just to be honest, and we are currently operating under a continuing resolution. So that continuing resolution goes until December 20th of this year, and it's very unlikely that Congress in this lame duck session will actually come up with a budget. So this continuing resolution will expand into, go into next year, which has happened in the past. Our initial kind of, what we're hearing is that maybe in May that we might receive a budget. If not, there is a possibility that we could be under a CR for the entire year. So what does that really mean? What impact does that have on us? It has a lot, because that means we are being funded at the previous year's level of fiscal year '24. Obviously, our costs continue to go up, and I'll talk a little bit more in terms of how we're going to adjust within this budget with those uncertainties. The other issue is the impact of, on our vouchers. As you know, we are in a shortfall situation like many other housing authorities across the country. And the chart, if you're, you know, that Irene showed, showed that our expense level did not meet our revenue level, so there's a gap, and that's what the shortfall is. So we are continuing to work with HUD and the shortfall team. They have calculated what that gap is. It's about $4.5 million that we receive to help assist with that through the end of this fiscal year. However, the issue is that under a continuing resolution and not knowing exactly where our funding level is, that we really have to be extremely conservative. So in meeting and talking with HUD, the way that they were able to address the shortfall was to take money from all their other accounts. So we kind of said, wait a minute, you've taken the money from other accounts that really need it, but they know that the shortfall is the biggest priority. They started out at $200 million at last count. It was well over $400 million that was needed. So as a result of taking money from those other funding sources to close the gap, the impact in terms of next year means that they don't have a cushion. So that is very alarming, that, you know, HUD, which is a billion-dollar agency, doesn't have any type of wiggle room. So hopefully, we'll get to a resolution soon in that regard. The other thing that was pointed out to us is our emergency housing vouchers, which we received those during COVID for homeless individuals who are on the streets. And it was a 10-year voucher program. We were informed that it won't be for 10 years, that those funds will run out in 2026. So that was pretty alarming. So that is another challenge and hurdle that the housing authorities have to figure out and work with HUD in terms of how the funding is for all of those individuals who are housed and living, you know, out there on the private rental market. The other thing, too, is that's going on is transition of their major financial systems that they've had for decades, or in the midst of really transitioning that. If there are large changes in upheaval, it will really impact, you know, how we communicate with HUD, which is through those systems, and how we actually receive our funding, because it calculates our funding that comes to us. So a lot of unknowns and a lot of challenges, but in terms of how we've used the information that we have to our budget for next year, if we go to the next slide, is really take a very conservative approach, given the fact that we're not quite sure exactly when we'll Given the fact that we're not quite sure exactly when we'll receive funding, we have been very, very conservative in pulling together this budget. We have made decisions that we are going to delay in terms of hiring in certain positions until we actually know exactly what our financial outlook is. The other thing that we are doing and have done is really focusing on the use of technology. So in light of not actually having a lot of additional resources, then we have made sure that we are using technology to our full extent. We have put in different portals so that our clients are able to do things online. We have increased the technology availability for our landlords so that they can transact into a lot of things that they need to do without having to come into the office or transmit a lot of paperwork. So we're still continuing to lean very heavily on technology and will in this upcoming year as we look to transition a lot of our major systems over to new platforms. The other area, too, in terms of this budget, is how do we advocate and how do we really push at the national level to make sure that our elected officials know what impact this has back in Sacramento? So our national organizations are gearing up for extreme advocacy and education and outreach to our congressional members, who, the ones from Sacramento have been very, very open and really understand the need to make sure that we get a budget, we get a budget on time, and that it covers all of the valuable programs that we're running. The other area that we're also working on is the 10-year roadmap for public housing. That is a committee that was formed to really address the public housing inventory that has been deteriorating over time. We get money, but it's not enough to keep it up to the level that we need. That's why we embarked on the program like Marisol Village, because it reached the end of its useful life, and so we had to really start over. But we still have a lot in our inventory, so we're using the RAD program to convert. But on the national level, what we're doing is taking all of that information that housing authorities have done for their transformations like RAD and CNI, Choice Neighborhoods Initiative, and really coming up with what is the number that we really need to be funded at so that we don't lose valuable units? And that's the, that's the challenge that we have, is creating new units but preserving the units that we have, because if we only focus on one, then, you know, we're going to start to lose units on the other end. So it's the, you know, it's the balancing act that we need, but we feel it's important that we, as an industry, communicate to Congress as well as to HUD what the appropriate level of funding is. So those have been kind of our approach and what we have put together in terms of this particular budget, as I said, very conservative. Once we receive exactly, you know, where our funding is, then we'll be able to make adjustments accordingly, and those are the major things that I have.
Okay.
That. I'm available for any questions.
Any questions from the board? Not seeing any. Are there any public comments?
We did not have any public comments.
All right. Board, is there a motion? Chair will second. Thank you, LaShiel.
Unanimous vote.
Next item.
Our next item is item 84. This is a request for review of hearing officer's decision in the matter of Asian Flower Massage. And we do have an interpreter here to assist the applicant, or the appellant.
Good afternoon, Honorable Chair and Supervisors. My name is Blake Saquera with County Council on behalf of the Department of Finance and the Sheriff's Department. Before you today is an appeal of the hearing officer's decision in order revoking the massage establishment general and special business license belonging to Juan U., doing business as Asian Flower Massage in District 3. Before we begin with the appeal, the board needs to take a vote on the conduct in which this hearing will be held pursuant to the county code's staff request this hearing be conducted by oral argument only. I did speak with the appellant. She does not have any additional documents to submit.
Well, I will make that motion.
Oh. Unanimous vote with those members present.
Thank you. In appellant's appeal marked as Exhibit B of your record, the appellant did not allege any error pertaining to the hearing officer's decision as required by Sacramento County Code. Staff's request is that this board adopt the findings and orders of the hearing officers as those of the board themselves and deny the appeal request, upholding the revocation. The hearing officer's findings and orders are in Exhibit A of your record. The facts established by testimony and evidence presented at the hearing are that on April 10th of this year, Sacramento County License Inspectors performed an inspection at the business establishment. During the operation, it was found that the appellant was in violation of the county code for six different violations. This included unlicensed massage providers, incomplete massage logs, and various other establishment-related violations. Three months later, the county did a reinspection on July 11th. Inspectors conducted a follow-up inspection and found seven violations of the Sacramento County Code, many of which were continuing violations from the inspection three months prior, including having two unlicensed providers, evidence that massage providers were living at the establishment, and having incomplete and illegible massage logs and registers. The specific facts are outlined in more detail in the decision, which is Exhibit A, and the county's initial record, which is Exhibit C of your record. After review of the file from both the inspections performed by business licensing inspectors, the Sacramento County Sheriff's Office determined that the actions of the licensee exposed patrons of the business to substantial harm, risk of criminal deceit for or unethical practices, and that the licensee is not abiding by the Sacramento County Code. The Sacramento County Sheriff's Office moved to revoke the business licenses on September 3rd of this year. You can see that in Exhibit C, page 7 of the record. The licensee in this case appealed the determination to this board and asked that this board reverse the hearing officer's decision. However, in the appellant's appeal, which you can see in Exhibit A, I'm sorry, Exhibit B of your record, the appellant admitted to the violations but asks for special consideration to allow for continued operation of the business. Staff requests that, in light of this admission and in light of the hearing officer's findings and orders, that the revocation do be, that the revocation is upheld and this matter is adjudicated. I have staff from the Sacramento County Sheriff's Office and business licensing available by phone and in person if the board has any questions.
Any questions from the board at this point? Okay. Is the appellant here to make a statement of some kind? That's a no.
That's a no.
That's a no.
I think she's going to make a brief statement.
Okay. You can pull the microphones down.
My name is Joan Yu. I have a small business in Sacramento, McConney Avenue, Asian Flower Massage. I'm owner. I want to continue my, the business. Actually, I know everything my fault. I know. I see, I accept all those accession. I agree, well, that's my fault, but because I didn't manage well of my business, but I just want you to get a chance to keep, get back the license. I can continue my business, like, business. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay. All right. Supervisor Desmond.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Blake, can you just please clarify a couple things?
I'm sorry, Supervisor, before we do that, do we have any, we don't have any public comment on this?
We do not.
Okay. Go ahead.
Thank you. Just to confirm, how long did the appellant own the business before the first inspection?
The license was first issued in 2022, so approximately a year and a half.
Okay, and just looking at these, and it was three months between the first inspection, where six violations were found, and the second inspection, when additional seven violations were found, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. I move staff recommendation to deny the appeal and uphold the revocation.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Please vote.
Unanimous vote.
Thank you, Supervisor.
Thank you. All right. Is that our morning? I've lost track.
That concludes your morning, sir.
That concludes our morning session. We do have closed session, so we will recess to closed session. We'll come back into session with the clerk. Please call the roll.
Supervisor Frost?
Here.
Supervisor Desmond?
Here.
Supervisor Hume?
Here.
Vice Chair Serna?
Here.
And Chair Kennedy?
Here.
We do have a quorum with the members present.
First item, please.
First item is carried over from this morning. Item number 81 is to approve the financing district local goals and policies as a replacement to the current second amended and restated county of Sacramento, Special Assessment and Community Facilities District Financing Program local goals and policies.
Good afternoon, Chair Kennedy and Supervisors. Colin Bettis, your County Debt Officer. The item I'll be presenting on now is the recommendation to approve the county of Sacramento's new financing district local goals and policies. The reasons why we are recommending a replacement of the current policy include the following: to update the policy to bring it into current standard of formatting; to update the policy to mirror current Melo Ruse law for community facilities districts; to streamline the formation process for financing districts; and to incorporate a policy for tax increment financing districts. The most significant change is the addition of the tax increment financing districts, which, when formed, would redirect future growth of property tax revenue and vehicle license fee revenue from the general fund to specific uses that benefit properties within the financing districts. The recommended guidelines include limiting the formation to infill or brownfield areas, avoiding greenfield areas unless the board determines that there are exceptional public benefits; requiring a positive fiscal impact as determined in a fiscal impact report unless the board determines greater public benefit; capping the tax increment and VLF allocation at 50%; limiting the tax increment financing district terms to a maximum of 45 years; ensuring that funding is committed to infrastructure within the established operations and maintenance funding; allowing the county to terminate the tax increment financing district within 10 years if the project area doesn't develop as anticipated, provided that bonds have not been issued; ensuring that county contributions to multi-jurisdictional tax increment financing districts do not exceed contributions from other participating cities; ensuring that the number of county representatives to a multi-jurisdictional tax increment financing districts is greater than or equal to the representation provided by participating cities; and providing that unincorporated area will be the primary focus and priority for the formation of such districts, or the district shall have significant county, have significant county-wide importance. In addition to tax increment financing districts, other recommended changes to the county's financing district policies include aligning it to the current law and the county debt policy, changes to the advanced funding agreement process, allowance for the self-certification of prevailing wage requirements, and relaxing the requirements for property owners holding 10% or more of land within a district to provide a letter of credit to be a county determination based on market conditions at the time. And finally, it defines a process for determining the nonprofit organization that would benefit from a bold allocation when bonds are issued for a bold CFD. While updating these policies, county staff shared the draft policies with various stakeholders and received feedback, and while we accepted some of the requested changes, we did not accept all. Some of the recommendations from various stakeholders were to broaden the policy to allow for tax increment districts to have the maximum duration allowed by law and to allow for the maximum allocation of tax increment. There were also recommendations to define certain aspects of the policy in greater detail. However, many of those details would be district-specific and would not be beneficial to get into that level of detail within a policy document. The county staff recommendation presents a balance between flexibility and providing clear guidance on forming financing districts that would maintain a benefit to the county general fund growth and provide certain safeguards to ensure the policy serves the best interest of the county as a whole. And this concludes my presentation.
Thank you, Colin. Is there any questions? Do we have any public comment?
We do not.
All right. I will say, I think this is a great step towards transparency and predictability for everybody, and, you know, you've left it, not, you're not, it's not so prescribed that it's not nimble, but yet it still lays out clearly, you know, what we're going to do, and so, good, good work.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Looks like we need to take item on this.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry. We're, we're moving.
Second.
The vote.
Any item passes?
Next item, please.
Next item on the agenda, we're going to read into the record items number 85 and 86 together. The item is for PLMP 2023-00089, a Mission Avenue Apartments West, an appeal of the Planning Commission's effective denial of a development plan review, density bonus, incentive concessions or waivers, and design review for a property located at 3537 Mission Avenue in the Arden Arcade Farms Community. And also PLMP 2023-00087, again, Mission Avenue Apartments East, an appeal of the Planning Commission's effective denial of development plan review, density bonus, incentives, concessions, or waivers, and design review for a property located at 3532 Mission Avenue in the Carmichael Old Foothill Farms Community.
So Kimber, just to be clear, we're going to hear both items together, and we'll also hear public comment on both items at the same time.
Correct.
Thank you.
All right. Good afternoon, Chair Kennedy and members of the board. My name is Kimber Gutierrez. I'm a senior planner with Planning and Environmental Review, and I will be presenting both Mission Avenue apartment appeals, so that is east and west. I also have Christian Balthazar's name up on the PowerPoint slide because he is the project manager for the project and has done all of the work up to his point, so just wanted to acknowledge all the hard work that he's done up to now. All right. So I am going to start just kind of going over the location and setting and community context for both of the project sites. So starting with location and setting, the subject sites are located on Mission Avenue. Mission Avenue does serve as the dividing line between the Arden Arcade and the Carmichael Old Foothill Farms communities. The Mission West project, which is on the left side of the screen, is a 1.6-acre parcel located at 3537 Mission Avenue and is in the Arden Arcade community. It is also currently developed with two single-family dwellings. And then the, on the right side of the screen, we have the Mission East project site, which is a 1.05-acre parcel. The address is 3532 Mission Avenue, and it is in the Carmichael Old Foothill Farms community, and that site is currently vacant. The project sites are within the Mission Oaks Neighborhood Preservation Area. Mission West has an underlying zoning of RD 20, and Mission East has an underlying split zoning of RD 20 and RD 30. Properties on this particular stretch of Mission are predominantly commercial office uses toward the intersection of Mission and Ingle to the north, and then higher-density residential near the intersection of Mission and Whitney to the south. The immediately surrounding area to the Mission West site is general office uses to the north, single-family uses to the south, condominium community and undeveloped land, which also includes the Mission East project site to the east, and single-family residential and vacant land. and vacant land to the west. The immediately surrounding area to the Mission East site is developed with a condominium community to the north, apartment complex to the south, mixture of condominium and apartments to the east, and single-family to the west. So I'm going to start with the Mission West project details, and then I will follow those with the Mission East project details. I'll then end with the Planning Commission hearing summaries, as well as details on the filed appeals, and then ending with staff's analysis and recommendation. Before I review the entitlement request for Mission West, I did want to note that a code enforcement violation was opened for this parcel on October 2nd of 2024. The violation was for junk and rubbish on the project site. This violation has been remedied, and the code case was closed. Therefore, there are no active code cases associated with the Mission West project site. The applicant is requesting a development plan review pursuant to the Mission Oaks NPA for the development of non-single-family residential use on property described in the NPA, a density bonus, incentives, concessions, or waivers for a qualified housing development as allowed under the Affordable Housing Incentive Program, and then lastly, a design review to demonstrate, to determine substantial compliance with the Sacramento County Countywide Design Guidelines. To elaborate on the density bonus and incentives/concessions part of the request, the applicant is requesting a 50% density bonus, two incentives/concessions, and four waivers. Included as Attachment 3 of the hearing packet is a list of the requested incentives, concessions, and waivers, along with the applicant's justification for each item. And then Attachment 4 of the hearing packet contains a breakdown of the density bonus and incentives/concessions calculations for the project. So as you will see, the project does have three incentives/concessions available, however, they are just requesting two. Throughout the rest of my presentation, I will point out the areas of the site and of the proposed project where a deviation is being requested through an incentive concession or waiver. Here is the proposed site plan for the project, which consists of the construction of a three-story building to accommodate a total of 48 units. Five of those units are proposed to be very low-income units. A handful of deviations proposed relate to the building placement and facade, so the first waiver I do want to point out is for the rear yard setback. The zoning code calls for a 75-foot rear yard setback to the west, which they are proposing a 56-foot rear yard setback. The two incentives/concessions being requested are for our multifamily design guidelines. The first states that buildings shall be designed to offset windows between facing building elevations, and then the second is all units adjacent to common spaces shall have a kitchen, living room, or bedroom that provides windows overlooking such spaces. So there are areas of the proposed building, specifically in the courtyard area, where this, both of those standards are not being met. The site will continue to be accessed from Mission Avenue, which will lead to a parking lot consisting of 64 parking spaces for both tenant and visitor use. Tuck-under parking is proposed on the southern side of the building. There are two waivers being requested related to parking. Those include standard parking stall sizing and total number of parking spaces. The project is proposing more compact stall sizing than what is permitted, and the parking ratio proposed is approximately 1.3 spaces for each dwelling unit, which is below the standard parking ratio. So just to be clear, the total number required for this site, given the number of units and the types of, number of bedrooms for each unit, it's 66 spaces required. They are proposing 64, so two spaces short. Lastly, a six-foot-tall wooden fence is proposed as perimeter fencing to the northwest and south. Here are the proposed landscape plans. The project proposes street frontage landscape planners with street trees on Mission Avenue and parking lot planners with shade trees to meet the parking lot shading standards. A picnic table, barbecue, and benches are proposed to be provided in a common area courtyard in the center of the building, and this is shown as an enlarged image on the right side of the slide. A total of 32 trees would be removed. All of them are rated as fair or poor condition in the ARBRIS report, and the plans also show the addition of 47 new trees to the site with the proposed development. The last waiver pertains to perimeter landscaping, so a minimum seven-foot-wide continuous landscape planner is required for multifamily residential uses in all cases. They are proposing a seven-foot-wide planter to the northwest and south, however, there aren't any wheel stops provided, so vehicles will overhang, so it does reduce that allowable planting space by two feet, so they are essentially five feet in width. Here we have the east and south elevations for the building. The proposed height of the building is 34.33 feet, which meets the RD20 height standard. Here we have the north and west elevations for the building. This is where you can kind of imagine a little bit better the two incentives or concessions being requested. They are the west, shown on the west elevation, so the kind of the two interior elevations would be facing each other and would have windows facing each other and lined up, not offset. This is one of two sightline exhibits. This exhibit is depicting the location of the viewpoint of the next exhibit, which is a person standing on a third-floor balcony on the southern side of the building closest to the existing family residence to the south. Here we have the second sightline exhibit, which depicts a couple of things, the first of which is the viewpoint from the person standing on the third-floor balcony, and then another one being the height of the screen trees at planting, which is shaded in gray, and then the non-shaded tree is at 15 years of growth. The last exhibit is a rendering of the proposed buildings onsite, or building onsite. This view would be heading, looking south on Mission Avenue towards the project. The Arden Arcade Community Planning Advisory Council met on January 25th of 2024 and recommends, recommended that the Planning Commission approve the requested entitlements with the request presented on the slide. So they asked for a number of things to be looked at in addition to the project itself. That vote was a four yes, two no, one absent. Responses to these individual requests have been provided on pages 15 and 16 of the June 10th Planning Commission Staff Report, which is Attachment 21 of the Board Package. And then the Design Review Advisory Committee met on January 11th, 2024, and recommends the Planning Commission find the project in substantial compliance with the design guidelines.
Excuse me, Kimber.
Yes.
Supervisor Desmond.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm going to hold most of my questions till after you get through both these, Kimber, but I think it would be helpful if, do you think you could very briefly hit on those CPAC recommendations, just kind of the highlights of what your findings were in response to those recommendations? I think that'll be important, and they would apply to both projects, obviously.
Yes. Okay, so the first was the request to expand the public noticing radius from 500 feet to one mile. We did determine that expanding the mailing radius would be cost prohibitive and would set a precedent for infill housing projects moving forward, so we kept with the 500-foot mailing radius for these projects. For the comprehensive greenery review, the applicant didn't provide that sightline exhibit that I just went over, so that details the trees on the interior property lines and kind of the impact the third-floor balconies could potentially have to the project and neighboring sites. The third was the heat map of criminal activity within three blocks of the site. A community crime map, which was provided by the Sheriff's Office website, does show that the site is not in a high-crime area. I do have a later slide with that visual, so I can pull that up later. And then the onsite management plan. We did kind of inform the applicant team to reach out to the property owner for an onsite management plan. This management plan is not a required application item, nor is it a zoning code requirement, so it would be at the discretion of the property owner to provide that. I thought that they did. I'll let them speak to that when they come up to talk. And then the traffic study on Mission Avenue. The project, the project combined with the east project, so both of the project combined, would not generate enough new daily trips or new peak hour trips to warrant a traffic study be conducted, so that's, they had less than 1,000 new daily trips and less than 100 new peak hour trips. We did include DOT's letter in the report as well. I also have some additional slides later on, talking more about the traffic counts that were conducted in 2023 for Mission Avenue at Whitney Avenue, so I can go over that more later in the presentation. The heat map of transit stops, I also have a visual of that later on in the presentation. There are a total of four bus stops along Mission Avenue within walking distance of the proposed sites. That's two northbound and two southbound stops. The SEQA document prepared for the project, it was determined that a notice of exemption was prepared and has been included. That does not require a public review period or public noticing for that. And then, project elevations with sightlines, again, we went over those sightline exhibits and have those provided in the PowerPoint.
And you'll have one of those for the east project.
Yes, for east as well.
Thank you.
Okay. So moving on to the east project site. So the subject site does have two previous planning entitlements. It includes the approval of a 15-town home project, which is called Mission Manor Town Homes. It was approved in September of 2006. There was also a five-year time extension approved for the project in February of 2017. The necessary permits and development were not completed prior to the map expiring, which was on February 27th of 2022, so it did not move forward. And then on September 17th of this year, a code enforcement violation was opened for the parcel. The violation was for junk and rubbish on the site. That has been remedied, and the code case was closed, so there are no current active cases associated with the site. So for Mission East, the same entitlements are being requested: the development plan review pursuant to the Mission Oaks NPA, a density bonus, and incentives/concessions or waivers for qualified housing development as allowed under the Affordable Housing Incentive Program, and then a design review to determine substantial compliance with design guidelines. For this project, the applicant is requesting, again, a 50% density bonus, two incentives, concessions, and six waivers. Again, Attachment 3 has the list of those detailed out with the applicant's justification, and then Attachment 4 has the breakdown of the density bonus and incentives/concessions calculations. Similar to the last project, this one does have three available incentives/concessions the applicant is proposing two. Let's see. Moving on to the site plan. So this project consists of the construction of four three-story buildings to accommodate a total of 33 units. Four of those units are proposed as very low-income. The first waiver I wanted to point out is for the side yard setback. So the zoning code calls for a 15-foot side yard setback, and to the south, on the south property line is where that deviation would occur, and they're proposing a 10.2-foot side yard setback. The two incentives/concessions being requested are similar to the last project, they're for multifamily design standards. The first is the offset of the windows of building elevations facing each other, and the second states that trees, lattice, trellis structures, and/or decorative masonry walls shall be incorporated as part of the carports to minimize visual impact. I will provide the elevations later in, later slides to kind of show both of the buildings' window placements, and then decorative features for the carports are not being proposed for this particular site. The site will continue to be accessed from Mission Avenue, which will lead to a parking lot consisting of 42 parking spaces for both tenant and visitor use. There are three waivers being requested related to parking, which include the standard parking stall sizing, the total number of parking spaces, and parking and paving directly touching a residential building. So the project is proposing more compact stalls than what is permitted. The parking ratio is one space per dwelling unit, and there are instances north of Building B1 and Building B where the parking area and paving directly touches the building, and there isn't any kind of additional landscaping in between the paving and building. And then lastly, a six-foot-tall wooden fence is proposed to be placed on the northeast and south property lines as perimeter fencing. Here are the landscape, here's the landscape plan. The project proposes frontage landscaping planners with trees along Mission Avenue and parking lot planners with shade trees to meet parking lot shade standards. A basketball court is proposed between Buildings B and C near the southeast corner of the lot. This would serve as a site amenity and would also serve as the fire turnaround for the site. The site currently has a total of 26 trees, which would all be removed and are rated fair or poor in the ARBRIS report, and the plans show the addition of 35 new trees on the site with the proposed project. And then the last waivers being requested are similar to the last project pertaining to the seven-foot-wide continuous landscape planner. They are not proposing any wheel stops, so that two-foot overhang into the landscape planner would limit the planner to five feet instead of seven, but seven feet is proposed. Here we have the building elevations from all directions for both proposed Building Bs. So since the Building Bs are proposed to have a mirrored floor plan, elevation two, which is the top right, would be facing elevation two for the second building. So that's where the offset of the windows is not achieved, as the windows would all line up with each other. Onscreen now are the building elevations for proposed Building B1. Building B1 and both Buildings B will have a peak building height of 38 feet and 7 inches. And here are the building elevations for Building C. And then this brings us to the sightline exhibits. So this one depicts the viewpoint, so this is particularly looking at someone standing on a balcony on Building C, looking to the east. And this is closest to where the condominium community and the apartment complex is. And then here's the second sightline exhibit. The first showing the view line of someone standing on the balcony, and then again, the trees at planting, so shaded in gray, and then the trees at 15 years of growth, which are not shaded. And then the last exhibit I have is, for the projects, is the rendering. This is showing south, again, south on Mission Avenue, looking at the proposed project site frontage. The Carmichael Old Foothill Farms Community Planning Advisory Council met on January 10th of 2024 and recommended the Planning Commission approve the requested entitlements with a recommendation that the proposed wooden fence be replaced by an eight-foot-tall masonry wall. That vote was four yes, one no, and one recusal. The Design Review Advisory Committee met on January 11th, 2024, and recommends the planning, recommended that the Planning Commission find the project in substantial compliance with the design guidelines. And then also during that DRAC meeting, staff did, did bring up the CPAC recommendation to replace the fence with the wall, to which the DRAC members stated that they felt this would take away from the neighborhood feel of the area, and were not in support of that recommendation or that change to the project. Okay, so the, both projects were first heard by the Planning Commission on June 10th of this year. Mission East was heard first, and then following staff's presentation, 28 members of the public spoke in opposition, and one member of the public spoke in favor of the project. Comments included concerns regarding increased criminal activity, increase in traffic, pedestrian safety, potential to decrease property values, concerns with loss of privacy given the height of the structures, and an over-concentration of apartments in the area. Following the public comment period for the Mission East project, the Planning Commission did vote to continue the item to a date uncertain, for staff to research and provide additional information regarding the following items: cumulative transportation impacts, potential for on-street parking to be used, safety of the Whitney Avenue and Mission Avenue intersection, overall state of the transportation network, including transit in the project area, and additional analysis of the standards that are physically precluding the proposed development and what constitutes physical preclusion.
Supervisor Serna. Oh, okay. Continue.
No problem.
Mr. Chair, I'm sorry, I actually had a good question on that last bullet.
Supervisor Desmond.
What is, what is, what does that mean? What is, what is, what does that mean? I don't understand what that last bullet means.
Yeah, so the, when defining the term waiver, it talks, the, the government code specifically uses the term physically precluding. So essentially, essentially how we defined it, and I have the slide later, but the, the term physical preclusion comes from Government Code Section 65915E, and it's, it's used when defining the term waiver. So if someone's coming in for a waiver and they're deviating from one of their standards, it has to be, the development has to be physically precluding from them doing that standard. So they have to show and prove that it's not physically possible for them to achieve that standard with the, with the site and with the proposed project.
Okay.
The number of units. And also, I'll just cover this now, so we don't have to go over it later, but the, the government code does not provide a definition for physically precluding. So by law, when a statute does not define a term, we go to the ordinary meaning. So the word physical is defined as having material existence perceptible, especially through the senses, and subject to the laws of nature of or relating to material things. And then preclusion is defined as to make possible by necessary consequence, so rule out in advance. So therefore, in the context, the development standard at issue would be tangibly make the construction of the requisite density impossible. Okay. All right, so after, so, okay, so yeah, so after they voted to continue the item with this additional information that they wanted, wanted us to research, staff did not provide a presentation for Mission West, given the amount of discussion had for Mission East. So although we did not present the project in accordance with the Brown Act, the Planning Commission did open the public comment period for Mission West. We did have a total of 11 members of the public speak in opposition to the project, and the comments included concerns regarding increased criminal activity, increase in traffic, pedestrian safety, potential to decrease property values, concerns with loss of privacy given height of structures, and an over-concentration of apartments in the area. So following the public comment period, Planning Commission did vote to continue to a date uncertain to allow staff to research those additional items. So these next eight slides that I have do provide visuals and additional information in response to the Planning Commission's requested items. We have touched on a number of them already, so I'll kind of just kind of go through and touch on anything that I haven't covered yet. So the first was analyzing cumulative transportation impacts of both projects, taking into account established and proposed projects surrounding the project site. As I stated, this is something similar to what the CPACs had requested, the Art and Arcade CPAC requested. So we did coordinate with DOT, who prepared a trip generation letter that included both projects, and it did state that the projects would be exempt from SEQA vehicle miles traveled study because the site, both sites exist in a VMT efficient area. And then given this, oh, sorry, they also calculated that both sites combined would generate 670 new daily trips and 71 AM peak trips and 76 PM peak trips. So this is less than the 1,000 new daily trips and 100 new trips during the AM peak, PM peak hours needed to require a traffic study.
Supervisor Desmond.
So I will follow up on this, follow up on this one, since you have it up here. So, and maybe this is a DOT question. In, in terms of looking at the trip generation and the traffic counts, I'm just curious, just the historical context of this area, because I know that, you know, there used to be a hospital right down the street on Engel, and, and there was Los Sierra High School right down the street also on Engel. And, you know, I've lived in this neighborhood my entire, or lived in this area my entire life, and remember when those were both in existence and there was a lot of traffic in that area. I'm, I'm curious, from a DOT perspective, do you take into account that, kind of that historical context and the traffic conditions, I guess, that, that existed when those roads were built and both the hospital and, and the high school were, were open, Cameron? And how does, how does it relate to our, I guess, our analysis today in the context of these projects?
Cameron Chu, Principal Civil Engineer with the Department of Transportation. So as far as the historical uses, that's taken into account as part of the general plan roadway designations. So when we size all the roadways and determine what's going to be a two-lane or a four-lane road in general plan, that's all kind of based on the zoning of the properties and what land is anticipated there in the future. As far as the traffic study thresholds, though, we just base it on the existing conditions. So what's out there today?
Okay, okay, because it, I mean, obviously, I've thought a lot about these, these projects have a lot of discussions, but it does, it does occur to me that those, those roadways have been in that same configuration, that same size, from when those other uses were in existence on Engel, is that correct? I mean, they haven't not changed since, I don't believe.
We did take a look at the cumulative traffic numbers for that area, and it's part of the general plan, and the existing traffic count we have on Whitney today is about 7,500 cars a day. It builds out of the general plan, it's only really supposed to increase to about 9,500 based on the current growth projections in that area. So we're not really projecting a huge amount of traffic increase there in the future, which is well below the capacity of Whitney Avenue to carry.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you.
So along with the traffic generation letter, DOT also provided data on a traffic count that was conducted at the intersection of Mission Avenue and Whitney in March of 2023. The traffic count concluded that the north leg of Mission Avenue has a total of 2,815 northbound and southbound trips, and that, based on the road classification of a residential collector, the roadway does operate at an acceptable level of service. The Planning Commission did inquire as to why on-street parking was not included in the total parking proposed and directed staff to provide additional information on this topic. Upon review of the zoning code, it was determined that visitor parking may be satisfied with on-street parking spaces on the property or on adjacent street frontages at a one-to-one ratio. However, affordable housing projects are not required to provide visitor parking. So given that there are no visitor parking requirements for affordable housing projects, on-street parking cannot be used to satisfy the off-street parking and have not been included in the total number of parking spaces proposed. While that number of on-street parking spaces cannot be used to satisfy the off-street parking requirements, the project is conditioned to install Class A street improvements along Mission Avenue. So that would include, that would include road widening on Mission, and both project frontages would need to construct Class A improvements, which include curb gutter and sidewalk. So on the screen now, the, the applicant has provided a cross-section illustrating what the ultimate right-of-way condition would be. And as you can see, the, the frontage improvements required would allow for on-street parking to be available. And then this next exhibit is an aerial view of the proposed frontage improvements, and as you can see, a total of 11 on-street parking spaces will be created, four for the West Project's frontage and seven on the East Project's frontage.
Supervisor Desmond.
Can you go back to that prior slide, Kimber? Let me get my screen up here. The one that, the one before this. What, what's the current width of the roadway now?
Um, that's a good question.
It looks like, what, 84 feet? Just trying to get a sense of what the difference is going to be.
I don't see the dimension on the slide.
Okay, well, I mean, you can back that, so, but, what, how many, between both the east and west side of Mission, how many additional, what, what will be the, the length of that changed frontage or the improved frontage there?
So it is a...
100 feet, 200 feet, it'll be the entire frontage of just the projects? I'm looking over our DOT folks who are nodding their heads. How many, how many cars, how many parking spaces will that accommodate?
So the...
Do you have an estimate?
11.
On each side?
No, four on one and seven on the other.
Okay. I mean, it is a very legitimate concern that because of the decrease, marginally decreased number of parking spaces, that people will be parking in, in the neighborhoods, and I'm certainly sensitive to that. But if, because of these improvements, it'll accommodate most of those people to park on, on Mission, I think it definitely mitigates that concern, in my opinion, so.
Yeah, so this one outlines, this exhibit outlines the four additional spaces that would be created on the East project, and then here are the other seven that would be accommodated on the West.
All right, thank you.
Commissioner Desmond, before Kimber goes on, I wanted to get back to one of your questions. Todd Smith, Planning Director. The frontages in their existing condition of these two projects do not currently have on-street parking or sidewalks. So if, we have some aerial photographs that we can look up online to show just a, really a dirt frontage that may be used by pedestrians, but is probably not very safe.
Moving on to safety of the Mission Avenue and Whitney Avenue intersection, on the screen now is a criminal activity heat map that was prepared for the project site. The map illustrates that the project site, which is shown with the blue marker right here, is not in a criminal activity hotspot, and it indicates that the project site is not considered a high-crime area. Additionally, we had several public commoners raise safety concerns about the Mission Avenue and Whitney Avenue intersection. It was stated that the intersection has had many car accidents, and to some, it was considered dangerous. Commoners perceived that the proposed project would increase the number of accidents at this intersection. We did coordinate with DOT and provided a report of all the car accidents that occurred in this intersection for the past five years, which is included as Attachment 18. This report concluded that there have been a total of 14 car accidents in the past five years, seven of which included, or, sorry, seven of which resulted in injuries and zero resulted in fatalities. DOT also looked at the last 12 months of crashes, where it was identified that four incidents had occurred. Based on the Caltrans manual of Uniform Traffic Control Devices, this is below the number of crashes that are susceptible to correction by a traffic signal in a 12-month period. To address the Planning Commission's inquiry regarding public transportation in the area, staff did look at immediate public transportation that serves the area. It was determined that a total of four bus stops are along Mission Avenue and are within walking distance. The bus stops are associated with Bus Route 82, which operates Monday through Friday at 30-minute intervals from 5:15 a.m. to 9:15 p.m., and on weekends at one-hour intervals from 7:16 a.m. to 9:16 p.m. And then here, we just have a visual of the bus stops near the project site, which are shown in blue circles. Bus 82's route includes the University and 65th Light Rail Station and the American River College campus, so it provides riders with routes to access SACRT's larger transportation And we covered physical preclusions, so I'm going to skip over this slide, which brings us to the second Planning Commission meeting, which was on August 26th of this year. Staff provided a presentation going over all of the requested items that I just reviewed with you all now. There were a total of 13 members of the public who spoke in opposition to the projects. And following deliberation and then two separate actions, Commissioner Borha made a motion to approve the project, Commissioner Devlin seconded the motion, and then with a vote of two yes, one no, one abstention, and one absent, the motion to approve failed. So no action was taken, and it resulted in an effective denial of the project. Following that August 26 hearing, the applicant team Mogaveiro Architects submitted an appeal to the Clerk of the Board's office on September 5th. The appellant's provided a justification statement for the appeal, which states the county is legally precluded from denying the project, given no quantifiable specific adverse impacts upon health and safety have been identified. Additionally, the four justifications listed on the slide now were provided stating that the Planning Commission's actions violated a number of laws. This is also detailed in pages seven through nine of the board letter, and the appeal form and justification statement is included as Attachment 24 of the hearing packet.
Supervisor Hume.
Thank you, Chair. I just had a quick question, Kimber, regarding the actions of the Planning Commission. Do you, do you know, or can you recall what the justification was for the abstention?
There was no justification provided at the hearing.
They just didn't want to vote on it? Okay.
Moving on to project analysis, so staff has determined that the proposed projects are qualified housing developments for the Affordable Housing Incentive Program. This does make them eligible for the 50% density bonus, the three incentives and concessions, as well as unlimited waivers. Although the project is eligible for three incentives concessions, only two are being requested for each project. The, just to kind of give a little bit of background to, an Affordable Housing Incentive Program application shall be heard by the same authority as the housing development's other required entitlements. So kind of the trigger for the Planning Commission's review did fall on that development plan review that is required by the neighborhood preservation area. So all of the, the density bonus, the incentives, concessions, and waivers all need to be heard by the same hearing authority, and the hearing body shall approve the density bonus and requested incentives for qualified housing developments unless it makes one of the written findings that is provided. So from that review, the applicant has established that the requested incentives or concessions are required in order to provide for affordable housing costs as divide, as defined in the Health and Safety Code, as well as for rents for targeted units to be set as specified in the government code. Staff has also determined that the requested incentive concessions would not have a specific adverse impact, as defined in government code, for which there is no feasible method to satisfactorily mitigate or avoid without rendering the development unaffordable to low and moderate-income households. Therefore, staff previously determined that the approval of the project is appropriate and is required by law. That determination remains unchanged, and the, additionally, the Planning Commission's motion to approve the project, but the motion failing resulted in a de facto denial. This de facto denial did not result in the Planning Commission making any of those written findings to deny the project. So that motion to deny was never made. In addition to all of that, the projects can be found consistent with the general plan, community plan, Mission Oaks NPA, and zoning code. This project will create new housing opportunities to meet the county's housing needs. A notice of exemption was prepared for the project, indicating that there are no significant environmental concerns, and as previously mentioned, the projects were supported by DRAC and CPAC. Therefore, planning and environmental review staff recommends the board take the following actions for each project, so you will need to take two separate actions. To approve the appeal overturning the Planning Commission's effective denial of the proposed project, recognize the exempt status of the request under Section 21159.25 of the California Environmental Quality Act, approve the development plan review, approve the density bonus and incentives and concessions, and find the project in substantial compliance with the design guidelines, all subject to findings and conditions. That concludes my presentation. The applicant Mogaveiro Architects is available to also answer any questions.
Okay, before the applicant gets up, there's questions from the board. Supervisor Serna.
Thank you. Thank you, Kimber, for a very thorough presentation. So I guess the, the way I want to start out my comments, well, first of all, I want to say that I will adamantly, forcefully, energetically be supporting the appeal. However, I want to state clearly that it's really unfortunate that I think we have a bit of disconnection between this board and its planning commission on this one. And the reason I say that is, and this goes to the line of questioning I, I had for Kimber during our briefing on this, that if the Planning Commission is being educated, especially by county council, about kind of the parameters of discretion that can be applied on something, a proposal like this, and there's this weird disjointed disconnect between their first and second vote, and people are absent, and there's an abstention, I don't think our Planning Commission, quite frankly, is grasping the gravity of what their decision, their ambiguous decision will do or has, not just for the board, for the public. ambiguous decision will do or has, not just for the board, for the public. Because by way of effectively denying the proposal, they, I think, unfortunately, give the concerned local community the hope that there's some merit in the denial. But it was basically a denial, a perfunctory denial, based on the fact that you had people absent, and then you have an abstention. And, you know, abstentions, I, you know, this is my personal opinion here, abstentions should be used very carefully and very rarely. We are elected, they are appointed, to make decisions. Sometimes they're difficult decisions, sometimes they're decisions that, you know, we're going to piss off our constituents, but it's the right thing to do, or in fact, it's the legal, legally right thing to do, the legally required thing to do. And so not only am I going to be supporting the appeal, but I also would like to, I don't know, have the Planning Director, working with our county executive and Mr. DeFonte, really kind of look into, is there a way, I don't want to be too punitive here, or punitive at all, against our own Planning Commission, but I think they need a refresher course. There's three of us that have served on Planning Commissions up here that I think understand the gravity of that responsibility and the fact that, you know, we're not there to rubber-stamp things. We're there, as we are here, to apply, you know, our discretion, to ask questions, to make sure we understand the legal guardrails involved with our decisions. But this one just, it really has me questioning whether or not the Commission itself kind of understands what they're doing. I hate to put it that way. But it's time, I think, for maybe a refresher course of some sort for them to grasp that. And it's not just in the context of this kind of uncomfortable place that they placed this board. But we ought to be looking at, quite frankly, the policy on how many absences a Planning Commissioner can have or should have before there's some kind of repercussion. You know, there's an expectation that we show up, there's, you know, in my opinion, there's a similar expectation for them to be present, at least as much as we are. So, you know, it's a frustrating place to be, but I just wanted to, just as a matter of really addressing the process here more than anything, make those comments and statements and ask for staff's help and assistance to maybe vet further how we kind of keep this from happening again. Thank you.
Thanks, Supervisor. Supervisor Desmond?
Thank you. And unfortunately, I only served on a CPAC, was not on the Planning Commission. But I was also left scratching my head with the lack of action by the Planning Commission. I mean, it seemed to me, on the one hand, they had very little discretion really to deny this. Certainly, they could have asked questions like they did in the earlier hearing and get more information. But then that also begs the question for me, why did the applicant have to appeal a decision, really, that the Planning Commission wasn't really able to make? But I probably shouldn't be opening that Pandora's Box with the applicant here in the room. I did have a few follow-up questions for you. Maybe I'll start with you, Cameron, if you don't mind, just a couple DOT questions that I should have mentioned. And Kimber, I apologize for interrupting your presentation.
Oh, you're good.
You should have said, Supervisor, wait till the end of the PowerPoint. All of those are going to be addressed, so I apologize for that. Cameron, a couple of other things that come to mind, and certainly with my discussions with neighbors and my knowledge of the area there. You know, you have the two schools, you have Churchill Middle School right down the street, and then you have Mission Avenue, you know, one's on Whitney, one's on Mission, very close by. In any of your traffic evaluations, do you have a sense of whether, especially Churchill, because I think Churchill's closer, whether there is already any kind of traffic impact on Whitney during pickup and drop-off at Churchill? Was that part of the scope of anything you looked at, or even anecdotally, do you have any information?
Unfortunately, no. As Kimber mentioned, it didn't meet the threshold for traffic study. We did tell the applicant team if they wanted to voluntarily do one to address some of those concerns, they could do that, but it wasn't something that we could require under our DOT policy. Ultimately, they declined to pursue that, so we don't have that specific information.
Okay.
Although we will be pursuing a grant, or I think we already have started pursuing grants for Whitney Avenue to look at Class IV bike lanes and road diet improvements to kind of speak towards the safety aspect.
Okay.
There weren't enough crashes to merit installing a traffic signal, but there's other things we can be doing out there.
Okay. And certainly, depending on where, that's something we should always keep an eye on, you know, whenever we have new development around schools and infill development projects. And you mentioned something else. You mentioned the crash data. I'm glad you brought that up. Because I, correct me if I'm wrong, but I looked at that crash data as well, which is one of the exhibits here, and it seemed to me that all the crashes were either property injury, property damage only, or just complaint of pain, which is a very minor injury threshold. Is that correct, Cameron? Did I miss something with the crash data?
Do you have those numbers?
I don't have the...
That's right, Kimber. It's in the attachment, but that was my, when I looked at it, I did not see any, like, major, okay.
Yes.
And then Cameron, also, what about, you know, one of the concerns I heard, and I know there are some people in the audience today who maybe don't live right next to this proposed project, they live a little, maybe a little further away from it, but they are concerned of the, about the, kind of the commute pattern impact. For instance, people trying to get on Business 80, and maybe they're going, making their way to go north on Walnut, for instance, or other directions. Is that, I mean, do you have any sense of whether this increased traffic is going to have a negative impact on those kind of larger commute patterns of people in the area trying to make it to the local freeways?
So we did do a little bit of research, looking at our traffic model about the likely commute patterns in this project. We expect most folks accessing the freeway are going to go north on Norris and get on to either 80 eastbound or Business 80 westbound from the Auburn Boulevard ramps. It's not likely that too many people will be going east on Whitney unless they're accessing local destinations within Carmichael, like schools or shopping.
And some people, I'm sure, will go south on Whitney or Mission to get on Marconi and take Marconi down to Cap City, too. And then what about transit, you know, transit patterns? Because there's a lot of concern, again, about the number of cars. But do we have, I guess I could ask my RT board member colleagues here, is there, for multifamily housing, is there any kind of rough estimate for a percentage of the residents there that might be projected to use transit? I don't know. Do you?
I mean, that is baked into the trip generation estimates that we do, that not all of them are going to be vehicle trips, some of them will be transit trips. As far as a specific project in the area, though, I don't think I can speculate on a percentage.
Okay. But you did provide, we did provide the map, and there are transit stops, three or four very close to this project.
Day two, I believe.
Okay. Okay, thank you, Cameron. So Kimber, I had a couple of questions, and you've heard me talk about this a lot, you know, when these kinds of infill projects, my number-one concern, you know, traffic obviously is an issue, and safety, and aesthetics, but I'm always most sensitive to where you have a new multifamily use, especially a multiple-story project that interfaces right next to a single-family residence, like an existing backyard where someone has lived there forever, and all of a sudden, they have someone on an outside, you know, balcony looking down into their backyard. And I appreciate the, some of the renderings or the sightline exhibits that you showed here. First of all, just to confirm, the height requirements, they are not asking to exceed the county's height requirements?
Correct.
Okay. So regardless of whether it's two-story or three-story, there is a height requirement?
Yes.
And they could either do it at two- or three-story within that requirement?
Yes.
So that's, I think that's extremely important to hit home with that. In terms of kind of those sightlines that you illustrated, you showed 15, a tree at 15-years-old, and then you showed a tree at planting. I'm just curious, are there, is there more we can do to try to minimize, I guess, that privacy issue between someone's single-family or, I guess, condo backyard and the third story?
Yeah, we do have in our zoning code minimum requirements for like kind of the container size of trees that get planted. So there is some options to kind of include larger plantings when they're first planted instead of smaller ones. So that is an option. They are proposing a six-foot-tall fence that is kind of the minimum requirement, so there may be some available flexibility there. Yeah, those are two that kind of...
And I know we're going to be hearing from the applicant, and I'll ask the applicant those questions as well, so. Okay, that's all I have for now, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Okay, so you know others? Would the applicant like to come forward this time?
So Chair Kennedy, if I could do so and swear in any that would like to address the board this morning?
Okay.
So if you would wish to address the board about items number 58 and, number 85 and 86?
Anybody in the audience who's going to address this issue before the board needs to be sworn in, so if you could stand and she'll give the oath, and you can raise your right hand, and she'll administer the oath.
So please, thank you. So please raise your right hand, and the appropriate response is "I do." Do you swear that the testimony you are about to give this board is the truth, so help you God? If you do not swear, do you so affirm?
I do.
So when you go to the podium, please state your name for the record and the statement I have been sworn. Thank you.
Thank you. Proceed.
Good afternoon, Chair Kennedy and the board. Thank you very much, Supervisors, for taking the time. I'll just introduce the gentleman briefly to my right. This is Eric Price. He is the owner of KJAC's Properties. They will be the eventual property manager of this company, and he's going to be part of my presentation today, so I just wanted to acknowledge his presence. I do want to thank Kimber and Christian for all of their tireless work on this project. I think, Kimber, that was an appropriate shout-out to Christian. You've been a real pleasure to work with, very professional through and through. And thank you very much to the board for the opportunity to speak about why we think this is a great project for the area. I do just want to really briefly discuss a couple of things that were...
For the record, your name?
Excuse me, Chair. My name is Dominic Mogavero. I'm here with Mogavero Architects. We're the project applicant.
Thank you.
So just a couple of things that were discussed in the staff presentation that I just want to touch on really quick before I go into mine. So the property frontages that will be improved, the Mission Avenue West is 230 linear feet of new Class A frontage, and Mission Avenue East is about 160 linear feet. We did provide a management plan in the Planning Commission subsequent item, as requested, and I actually do have a couple copies of that here, but of course, Mr. Price is going to be here to speak to that, and that may be a more appropriate play to provide. But I do have copies if you'd like to see them. And then just one quick correction as well. I think it was suggested that the parking ratio on the East site was one-to-one. It's actually 42 vehicular parking spaces for the 33 residential units at that property. So I would just say that Mission Avenue Apartments East and West are well-located and thoughtfully-designed residential communities that benefit the local area and allow residents of these future projects to benefit from the high-quality existing neighborhood as well. As mentioned, the total unit count between both parcels is 81 units with a mixture of one, two, and three-bedroom units. As also mentioned by staff, this includes nine units which will be affordable to very-low-income households, which earn 50% of area median income or below. This project seeks no subsidy of any sort from the county, SHRA, or any other entity. These projects are consistent with and subject to density bonus law, as well as the Housing Accountability Act. But most importantly, they are great additions to this area and responsible and well-located for new housing. Now, I will say, we know, based upon recent activity taken by this board, that you understand the importance of developing new infill housing. These proposed projects are great examples of well-placed, high-quality infill. This location benefits from safe neighborhoods, high-quality schools, good parks, services, and other amenities, many of which are walkable. As well, this region, as cited by staff, has a below-average vehicle miles traveled score. Additionally, these parcels have been zoned for three-story multifamily development for over 40 years. These proposed projects are consistent with the long-term vision and general plan for these parcels. In that regard, the project has been thoughtfully designed to blend in with the surrounding neighborhood as much as possible, including selection of comparable materials and forms such as brick and lapped siding, which match the surrounding neighborhood. The projects will also directly benefit San Juan Unified School District, which we understand is busing students in from more far-reaching parts of the county in order to maintain enrollment. While we were not able to get the exact numbers anticipated, we know that these projects will bring new families to the immediate area, reducing the need to bus in, thus also saving on costs. Additionally, these projects will pay almost $400,000, $389,000 to be exact, in school impact fees alone when approved for building permit. More generally, we know that these projects will benefit the area. They will bring 81 new households to this rather urbanized stretch of Mission Avenue, completing the development of the final vacant parcels on this block, where existing uses include other multifamily ownerships such as Cortland Lane, north of the East site, as well as rental, medical office, and retail. The residents of these projects will be patrons in the local economy and will be active members of the community. It is important to note that only one single-family home exists on this block where the development is proposed, and we have approached the design of this project to mitigate the impacts to that owner. This includes setting the building back as much as possible from that existing single-family residence, well beyond what was required by code. Now, I will pause briefly and ask Eric to do a brief presentation about his company, KJAC's Properties, how they will manage the project, and to speak briefly about how they will oversee and approve tenants as well.
Eric?
Thank you, board. I was sworn in. My name's Eric Price. I'm the owner of KJAC's Property. We manage about 4,000 apartment units in the greater Sacramento area. I have about 100 employees that oversee management and maintenance of properties very similar to this, most of them older and not quite as nice. And I'm just here to say that I own a, sorry, I manage a number of properties for the developer here. They are a good owner that lets us do our job. We are very capable of doing our job professionally, and the property will be managed well. As someone who consults with property owners on a regular basis, it seems a little disappointing for it to get this far, to get a development push-through. We need more housing in the area. I see that firsthand as the owner of a property management company. I see that firsthand as a board member for the Carmichael Improvement District. And I'm kind of curious why we're here, to be honest, along the lines of what Supervisor Serna said, this seems like a big waste of our time and money. And if all the developments that all of my clients want to build have to go through this arduous of a process to get an approval, we're going to have a lot less development. And we need more development. So I'll stop there, and we can move on to what you want to finish on, unless there are any questions.
No. Thank you.
So I think one thing that Eric, I think, just briefly forgot to mention was that new residents of the market-rate units are typically required to have two-and-a-half to three-times average monthly rent for their income, and they have a very strenuous approval process, including...
Yeah, no, I went off on a tangent on my notes. I'm sorry if I can finish up. There will also be one full-time manager at this site that lives on-site and one full-time maintenance technician. Those are two new full-time jobs that will be here, so along with housing the 81 families that will be here, there will be two full-time jobs. We will also be contracting out the landscape maintenance and pest control and other professional services with licensed vendors, licensed contractors. KJAC's Property is also a licensed general contractor, though we don't plan on doing any construction for this project this time. Sorry.
Thank you, Eric. No problem at all. And I will just say, one other thing that Eric shared with me, just in regards to the code enforcement and sort of challenges with the site, is there were ongoing negative activities at both of these vacant parcels. They have been a little bit of a magnet for portability, and actually, my client proactively demolished the house on the West site to limit that kind of activity and benefit the neighborhood well ahead of starting construction, frankly, before the project was even approved. So that actually decreased her potential resale value of the property. I will say thank you, Eric. I think that, you know, your perspective and experience suggests further that these projects will benefit the immediate area and the neighborhood. On that note, I just want to make a couple quick more points before we move into deliberation. Today, during public comment, you will likely hear from some community members who want to do all they can to stop these projects. That includes all sorts of fearmongering about low-income residents, as well as falsehoods about the number and type of affordable units. They will say that the project is going to cause more crime, that a traffic study must be done before the project can proceed, and they will say that this project should not exist in their neighborhood because it will ruin it forever. What they won't say is that because they think that the quality benefits of their neighborhood, and let's be clear, everyone agrees that this is an excellent neighborhood to live and raise a family in, perhaps should not be extended to all county residents, specifically possibly new renters. So in that vein, I just want to touch on a few of these concerns briefly myself. In terms of safety, as discussed during the staff presentation, these are low-crime areas. That is one reason we and my client think it is a great location for more high-quality housing. More overall surveillance, we'll call it eyes on the street, benefits everyone. These new projects will add 20 new balconies and patios facing Mission, adding stakeholders to this stretch of Mission Avenue, keeping an eye out for bad behavior for all. This is a significantly better condition than the existing vacant lots, which we now know have been a problem of sorts. Regarding pedestrian safety, as discussed again by staff, this project will complete a disconnected sidewalk on the East side of Mission Avenue and add over 200 linear feet of new Class A improvements to the West side of Mission Avenue. These improvements provide safety for pedestrians of all types, but especially children, the elderly, and the disabled, while also encouraging parallel parking, further protecting pedestrians and cyclists, and slowing down traffic on the street. Regarding traffic, as discussed, this project will slow down vehicular traffic by adding Class A improvements. And as discussed earlier, didn't expect such digression, but it has now, of course, been further solidified that DOT... but it has now, of course, been further solidified that DOT does not feel that this, these projects require the generation of a traffic study even when viewed in aggregate. There will be some fear mongering about cut through traffic and how it impacts the surrounding neighborhood, but it's very important to note, there are no side streets connecting to the existing neighborhood from this stretch of Mission Avenue. It only feeds to other collectors, Whitney and Angle. So the likelihood of pedestrian or vehicular traffic actually cutting through the surrounding neighborhood is almost zero. More importantly, we know that this is a great neighborhood for people to live in. Most opponents will point to some of the older nearby multifamily projects as examples of why multifamily housing is bad. Our firm thinks that all housing is good housing in today's environment. But I think it is also important to note that design and management have a lot to do with how a property ages. We've already highlighted the high quality management services provided by KJAC's. But I think also worth pointing out that these other projects would never leave our desks at Mogavero. They do not emphasize eyes on the street. They do not embrace the neighborhood. They were built with cheaper looking materials that don't age well. Add to that poor management, and you can have issues over time. This project team is proposing a completely different type of community, one that conjunctively the owner, the neighborhood, management, and residents can all be proud of. These 81 new households will become neighbors as well, frequenting local businesses, attending local schools, using local parks and services, and looking out for their neighbors, maintaining, and dare I say, improving the quality of life for all in the area. I strongly urge you to consider the benefits of these applications as well as their conformance with an applicability of state density bonus law and vote to approve these quality projects. Thank you for your time. We do have others from the Mogavero Architects team and myself, of course, who are available to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Mogavero. Are there any questions? Okay, thank you very much. We will go to public comment.
So the first person that we have is Amber Viegas.
Hello, I'm Amber Viegas. I live over on Chamberlain, Chamberlain Way. First, I want to say I don't really need anybody to speak for me. I'm not here to fear monger. I'm here because I care about my community. And I'm asking you to uphold the NPA. We love our neighborhood. We want it to stay the same. And when I say that, I say we want to welcome new people. But this is a single family neighborhood. I think it's the American dream to own your own property, and all this is really doing is feeding into someone's, some rich person from Cupertino, who is probably out enjoying on our tennis courts right now instead of here engaging with the community about what we want and what we need. The reason why it has gone this long is because of her lack of engagement with our community. So just please deny this project as it is written. I would love to see new families come in and enjoy the same things that I have there. But the way it is written is wrong. It's absolutely wrong. The waivers, the traffic, cars on either side, what'd they say, 11? That's going to turn Mission Avenue into a single lane street. Please deny it. Thank you.
Thank you. Before the next speaker comes up, I understand that in these circumstances, emotions can run high. People have strong feelings. That's completely understandable. But if you could address the board and not members of the audience while you're speaking, that would be greatly appreciated. Next speaker, please.
Next speaker is Dev Berger.
Good afternoon. My name is Dev Berger. I live in the area in question. And I want to bring up a couple of things about safety. I believe it was June when we had a meeting, a planning meeting, and on that same day, there was an accident at the intersection of Mission and Whitney. It was very serious. On Wednesday before Thanksgiving, I was almost killed at the intersection of Whitney and Mission when a car went through a stop sign. So the concerns about the safety and traffic, we who live there can tell you that there are cars that go through the stop signs every single day, every single hour. And what Kimber didn't mention is, yes, there are schools nearby, but there's also a nursing home and assisted living. So we're talking about people that have to park for all of these, and you're not taking that into consideration. Nor are you taking into consideration for the Department of Transportation the people such as myself who suffer a near miss. That's terrifying. We don't get counted in the Department of Transportation statistics. So the aesthetics bother us. We don't believe the privacy will happen easily. The traffic, safety, the parking, the noise, all of this is real to us. And we want you to know that we have witnessed issues such as I've shared in this brief period of time that we get to talk that are really not safe for our community. And I'm not talking about crime. I'm talking about the traffic. And if you want us to believe that with a couple hundred more people moving in, that there is not going to be a problem with traffic and safety, then look at what happened when American River Hospital left, and those houses went in there, and there's been a lot of traffic problems. I ask you to deny this project. Thank you.
Thank you.
Nick Ayers.
Nick, are you here?
Good afternoon.
Afternoon.
I'm Nick Ayers. I'm a-
If you could speak between the two mics, we can hear you better. Between the two.
Is that better?
No. There you go. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm Nick Ayers. I'm a 69 year resident of Arden Arcade, 93 years old. I probably will never see the completion of this project, but I'm interested in conserving it for my daughter who lives with me. I'm very surprised that this has come to this point because we've already had four meetings on this agenda, every one of which has been highly attended, with the exception of this one. And everyone other than maybe one or two proponents have been opposed to this project. It just does not fit this area. It's a terrible fit. And I strongly urge you to oppose this project. Thank you.
Thank you.
Johnny Vega.
My name is Johnny Vega. I have been sworn. One overarching concern, these, is a three story building in a predominantly single story neighborhood. Therefore, I do not support the design. However, I support adding affordable housing and welcoming new families in a two story multifamily housing, including low income. There's no fear mongering here. It's purely aesthetics. It's just the design. We are single family, single story. My only ask is that the existing character of our neighborhood and community be strongly considered, and these projects to be lowered to two stories. Again, welcome the idea. Affordable housing is necessary. New families would bring a new vitality, a vigoration, well, vigor to the, to the community. That would be very nice. We have to move forward. Change is coming. Now, just a brief, as I got left here, the street we're entering that we saw on the screen does not reflect the actual width of Mission Avenue. Would have been nice to have shown cars parked on either side narrowing the pathway for two lanes to approximately 20 feet, which means people are stopping and letting each vehicle go as they can. Honestly, that rendering just doesn't cut what the actual view will be when there are cars parked on the street, and it falls back into the safety issue. You know, again, I understand the legal part of it. I've been listening to you, what you're saying. The substantial compliance and design guidelines, we didn't agree to those. Those, that's, I guess, a voting issue. But, you know, when you talk about representative legislation, maybe we were off and didn't vote in the right people.
Can you please wrap up, Mr. Vega?
That's it. You know, as far as the physically percluding may simply mean a reasonable obstacle in place to maintain existing design constraints to be removed to accommodate higher density.
Thank you, sir.
Okay. Thank you.
Next speaker, please.
Good afternoon. Pardon me. My name is Howard Lawrence, and I'm a member of the Mission Oaks North Neighborhood Association, which is in opposition to this project. But I want the board to know that I disagree with dissent from the association's opposition to this project. I want to share with the board an email I received inviting me to a community meeting on this subject. In pertinent part, the email reads, "Your help is urgently needed. A three story, high density, low income housing on east and west side of Mission Avenue near Whitney Avenue is being proposed." As they say in legal hearings, the document speaks for itself. I attended that community meeting, and I heard many, many speakers talk about their concern about low income housing coming into the community. Others were concerned about disturbing the atmosphere of single family residences in, in the community. I wrote an email to Supervisor Dick Desmond on October 30th in which I said that those two concerns I heard at the meeting were, at best, both a misrepresentation, or at worst, an example of nimbyism in action. 91 of the 81 units are set aside for low income housing. I see my time is running out, so I'll skip to the end. As you know, I have spoken to this board many times about the need to address the crisis of homelessness in Sacramento. We will never get a handle on the issue of homelessness until we address the adequate supply of affordable housing.
Thank you.
This project reaches, and it helps meet that need. I urge approval. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Howard.
Laurel.
Good afternoon.
Afternoon.
My name is Laurel Hollis, and I'm here representing Sacramento area congregations together, and I've been sworn. I wanted to address the regional housing needs allocation goals that the county set for itself. We're in year three of an eight year period, and in that eight year period, the overall goal was approving 21,272 units. At the end of year three, which is the end of 2023, we've approved only 2,189 units. And that's only about 10% of our goal. So I just want to point out, as others have said, that we really are far below what our goal is. And I think this development, while I understand some of the controversies and the emotions around it, that we have to build this kind of housing so that we can decrease, decrease homelessness and in general approve life in the county. So thanks very much.
Thank you. Supervisor Serna.
Thank you, Chair. I just want to respectfully correct the last speaker. It's not the county that sets those needs. It's the state of California. It's the Department of Housing and Community Development. And let me tell you, we're not the only ones in the state, but they have their critical eye on us very, very closely. And as you can see from our county council's head nodding, that means that, you know, we need to not only take into consideration the aesthetics and all the other aspects of a proposal when it comes to especially affordable housing, but also the fact that, you know, we're a team player in terms of what the state needs to achieve because we are woefully inadequately providing those opportunities for low income families. And so I just want to make it clear, the state is watching very, very closely.
Thank you, Supervisor. Great point. Next speaker, please.
Hi, I'm Barbara Milgram, and I'm here with SAC Act as well. And I'm here to speak to you really primarily as a concerned citizen about the housing and the homelessness crisis that we're facing here in Sacramento. It is a big problem. I don't have to tell anyone in this room that it is a big problem. The lack of affordable housing is clearly a big problem that we have in feeding our homeless situation. And it is the lack of affordable housing that is going to keep us from solving the homeless crisis. I am a concerned citizen. Nobody likes to see homeless people. I understand the people in the community who are concerned about traffic, who are concerned about privacy. Communities change. I live in a community we're having a building go up to. I understand the concern. Nobody wants their backyard to be spied on. I think accommodations could be made. Traffic is going to be an issue. Nobody can say that it's not. I'm sure everyone is going to say, oh, it won't be a problem. There will be more cars on the road. Things can be changed, other ways to solve the problem. But we need housing, and we need housing really, really badly. And I encourage people who have to make this decision to approve it to go ahead and do it because we need our community to move forward, and we need more housing, and we need it now. Thank you.
Thank you, Barbara. Next speaker, please. David Cousins.
Is this Mike?
Yes, sir.
Easy to hear. Good afternoon, Mr. Chair and members of the Board of Supervisors. I am opposing this project for various reasons, and that does not mean I am opposed to having more housing. And I am not opposed to having infill projects. The first point I'll make, and I only have two minutes, the cross section is inaccurate. It's misleading. If someone from the Transportation Department of the county would make an accurate cross section, having two buses of line 82 crossing each other at the same time, which is not likely but possible, where is there room for a parking lane and a bicycle lane? That rendering shows a bicyclist and a single car in the street with people walking around in trees. It's so inaccurate, it irritates me to be so misrepresentative. I was provided by the county Supervisor Desmond's staff yesterday late. They went to the effort of getting me the notice of exemptions for these two projects. I reviewed them, and in the back page, I noticed, which I assume applies to both sides of the projects, there's a provision for extenuating circumstances that will allow impacts to be considered if they're excessive. And that is the heart of my comments, that the parking requirement based on 5% of very low housing that provides 100% exemption for onsite car parking makes no sense. How can you have 20 times the impact without addressing it? Parking is already prohibited on one side of Mission Avenue. I don't understand how you can decide there will be new parking on the east side. Those are questions that haven't been answered. I realize the state is imposing requirements on the counties. I'm sure you're all aware of the five charter cities in Los Angeles County.
Please wrap up, Mr. Cousins.
I will. And I want to mention, the supervisor appointee as a planning commission who withheld his vote, did so because he had inadequate information. I heard that clear as a bell. I have it in my notes.
Thank you, Mr. Cousins. Your turn's up. Thank you.
Appreciate your apologies.
Yes, sir. Rick Eaton.
Good afternoon. I'm Rick Eaton. I've been sworn in and sworn out, I suppose. I'm a homeowner and a-
Not yet.
Not yet. Not today. I'm a homeowner and small business owner and a 50 year resident of Arden Arcade in Carmichael. I'm speaking today to urge you to approve both of these projects. I think in any development project, the people who think that they will be negatively impacted by the project are going to make their voices heard. Please keep in mind that the people who will benefit from these projects are rarely heard from in forums like this, and who benefits from good quality, moderately priced- For a community to thrive, it's vital to have a diversity of types of housing. I moved to Arden Arcade, to the Arden Arcade area from Southern California in 1975, when I was twenty-two years old. I found an apartment that I could afford on Edison Avenue, near to where I found a minimum-wage job. That's how I became part of this great community. Eventually, I got married, bought a home near Eastern and Marconi. Our kids went to Mission Avenue and to Winston Churchill Schools. I was active in scouts and in our schools. I joined a church. I enjoyed the benefits of a great place to live and a great place to raise kids, and I've also contributed to the community. But I wouldn't be here if there hadn't been an affordable place for me to rent back in 1975. Apartments and rental housing are vital to a healthy community. I think the opponents of this project are absolutely wrong when they argue that this will somehow hurt our neighborhoods. Thank you for your time, and I strongly urge you to approve both these projects.
Thank you, Mr. Eaton. Mundo Velez?
Good afternoon, county supervisors. Mundo Velez here. In total opposition of this project, I am one of the three hundred and fifty families who signed the letter opposing this project, and it was given to you. I hope you received it. This project, we looked at this project very unsafe. For those who intended to house, number one, this project is unsafe and dangerous for our children going to school every morning, whether they go onto Angle or Whitney. It is dangerous. One hundred and sixty new vehicles, at least, will be coming in here, polluting the streets with noise and smoke. I believe that this represents a danger to our seniors also. Please protect our community, protect our children, protect our environment. Decline this project. The aesthetics are horrendous. Now, let me, there's a lot of talk about all of these factors. I want to talk about something else. For first time today, I heard that the cost of letting people know beyond the five hundred feet of this project, it was prohibited. How did they get to that prohibition? The county treasurer prohibited it? The budget director of the county prohibited it? Or someone just made a decision that it was prohibited? How did that happen? That's why we didn't have much people here, as many as we have in the past here present today, because they were denied that information about this meeting. I'd like to talk a little bit about...
Can you wrap up, Mr. Velez?
Well, you know what? Architecture is a very fine, novel profession. Unfortunately, the values that this profession stands for have been violated here.
Thank you, Mr. Velez. Thank you. Robert Saunders?
A lot of presumptions were made by those who proposed these developments. However, very few were fact-based. The neighborhood around there, where the buildings are going to hopefully not, but possibly be built, I have always been multicultural, multi-ethnic, and in my estimation, being one of those people, my family and I have always embraced everybody in the neighborhood. And Mick is an excellent neighbor, who's like a family member. And the rest I have to say is former questions. Are you aware of the very large increase in traffic on Angle, on, excuse me, on Eastern Avenue, a few streets away, AM and PM, when Eastern, Angle and Whitney are used as roads to get to I-80, and it's very difficult to get out of that area, whether it's Whitney or the back end on Eastern? Did DOT include pedestrian traffic in their study regarding schoolchildren walking to and from school, AM and PM, et cetera, in the proposed areas, especially when cars are trying to get to and from I-80? It's usually coincides. Was an EIR report done to ensure the lack of soil contaminants and other potential toxicities regarding existing properties that have been there long before California laws were changed in the seventies and later? How many of you board members have two large developments like these proposed developments in your neighborhood? And when problems arise in the development, if the developments are built, problems that we've warned you about and are extremely concerned about, who do we hold accountable? Thank you.
Thank you very much. Do we have any other speakers, Madam Clerk?
We do not.
Okay, then we will bring it back to the board and start with Supervisor Hugh.
Thank you, Chair. Looks like I had maybe a response.
Oh. If you would like a wrap-up, that would be just fine. You have thirty seconds.
I remember that. I'm going to go back to big picture, as some of the ACT folks started bringing up. And I love Rick's story about his residency in the neighborhood. And I just, you know, just a couple of thoughts. The people that will live in these homes are just like and may well be the children of my fellow Sacramento citizens behind me. They are hard-working people, such as Rick pointed out, teachers, X-ray technicians, grocery store cooks, state employees, et cetera. These are families that cannot afford, commonly, at least not now, a down payment on a home and don't have parents that can provide it. These are young people, more commonly, like Rick was, many with children. They want to live in a place where their children can attend good schools like those in this neighborhood, and more likely can be able to learn independence from walking and biking to school instead of being driven, and thus end up being healthier children on many levels. There are grocery stores and pharmacies and affordable restaurants and dentists and churches, all within ten minutes of this location. There are thousands of jobs in this part of our larger region as well. I know that means they will spend less time commuting and therefore more time together as families, spending time with their children and being a good neighbor as well. Does that mean they can live with one less car and maybe save for kids' college education more quickly and have more disposable income for enjoying the pleasures of life? VMT, in fact, is a fraction in this neighborhood of what it is in many other parts of the county, like Folsom or Roseville or Anatolia or any of those places. That means lower accident rates. There's a direct correlation between VMT and frequency of accidents, reduced air pollution as well. And I just want to wrap up by talking about one of your really large responsibilities, and that's the fiscal health of the county. Fiscally, for the county, for the school district, and other public services, there will be an additional, at least four hundred thousand to half a million dollars of annual tax revenues. And that gets distributed, of course, as you know quite well. And that is without the need for one more new road, for any new utility lines for the county to have to maintain over the long haul. It's essentially free money in a lot of ways. Sheriff services are cheaper because travel times for the sheriffs is reduced because of the density of the residents. No new fire facilities, no new fire personnel. The schools will benefit from greater distributions from the state, the lower busing costs per pupil on average as well. Finally, the existing neighborhood businesses will benefit from eighty-one new families spending at least a million dollars a year in the neighborhood. So this is a win-win for everybody, both the kids, the families, the local businesses, and it is by far the most fiscally responsible approach to development for our county. Thank you very much, and we look forward to hearing your positive vote on the project.
Thank you. And just for the record, the clock, no, you can sit down. The clock was not running because this was the applicant appellate, and they have an opportunity to speak and give a presentation that is not on a time limit. So that's the rules. Okay, we have no more public speaking than Supervisor Hugh.
Thank you, Chair. I'd like to begin by thanking all of the residents that took time to come out and come down here today. It is not lost on me that you, I believe, are, you know, are well-intentioned. You're trying to preserve the character of your neighborhood and do what is right, to be welcoming, but also to protect what is the largest investment most of us make, and that is in our homes. However, in looking at this, the fact that this property is zoned multifamily was not done in a vacuum. And when you look at the surrounding properties, it actually makes sense from a land use perspective, from a intensity of use standpoint, that this is a likely spot for more dense housing to occur. That being said, back when I was Planning Commissioner, as was mentioned by my colleague, this would have been a situation where we could have worked with the applicant, worked with the community, had some leverage in order to make sure that the standards were abided by, that the impacts perceived, real or imagined, by the neighbors were addressed and mitigated to the extent they could be. However, that landscape has completely changed. And now, the term RENA was mentioned, before regional housing needs allocations. Those are mandated by the state that we have to identify and zone property in order to have an adequate inventory to accommodate the number of housing units that they say that we need. This would qualify as one of those sites. Furthermore, once that property is zoned that way, somebody mentioned legislators and voting for the wrong people potentially. We have housing laws, legislation, coming out of, primarily from representatives in the Bay Area and Southern California, completely different built environments, that are stripping local control away from jurisdictions just like this. And so I can tell you from personal experience, from the agency where I was an elected official previously, that were we to deny this project, it is reasonably foreseeable that either the developer and/or housing advocates and/or the Attorney General of the State of California would sue the county of Sacramento. And in the case of Elk Grove, that resulted in an eight-figure payout and the identification of a site where even more units would be built elsewhere in the city. And that was based upon objective standards, which is the only reason, other than health and welfare, for which you can deny density bonuses and incentives. So I agree that the Planning Commission was derelict in their duties, because there really is not a lot of wiggle room in this decision. And so I sympathize with the points that you made, but I certainly am not going to expose myself or this county to the potential legal ramifications were this to be denied.
Thank you, Supervisor. Supervisor Serna?
Great points, Supervisor Hugh. Thank you for those. I just want to say, and I've already said plenty, so I'll be very brief. I just want to thank Mr. Eaton for his comments. That was patently one of the best uses of two minutes I've heard in a long time in terms of just, again, reminding all of us of a shared narrative, that we don't all, you know, come with a birthright to a single-family home. We go through the stages of life, and we have to start somewhere. And this project, I feel very confident, is going to be that start for, you know, hundreds, if not thousands, of people. It was mentioned by one of the opponents about the American dream. Well, the American dream is not simply the appearance of, you know, an opportunity to have a single-family home. It's the opportunity to get started and to eventually get to where you can have, you know, the shelter necessary to shelter a family and do all the, you know, wonderful things that we expect, go to school, have their own families, develop careers, go to church, you know, purchase groceries from the local store. So it's really fascinating, because I hear you saying the same things in different ways in many respects. But if I could somehow patent Mr. Eaton's comments and, you know, replay them again in the future, because I don't think this will be the last time we are faced with something similar, I would do that. So thank you for those very pertinent comments.
Thank you, Supervisor. So I'll just make a few comments. First of all, you know, I've been approving projects, one way or another, in different capacities for twenty-four years, and I've learned over the many, many countless projects that I have approved over the years, particularly multifamily, where, as Mr. Mogavero said, the first Mr. Mogavero said, that this, you know, it's design and management. I mean, it's phenomenal how you see success or failure of a project based on design and management. I am confident, knowing this management firm and the work that they do, that the neighborhood's in good hands. As far as design goes, you know, I've got a number of projects in District Two that this design firm has designed, and it's top-quality work. And looking at the renderings and everything I see here, this is no different. High-quality, top-quality work, and so design management critical, and I see that as checked off. You know, this has another bonus feature, which Supervisor Desmond will appreciate, I'm sure, at some point in the future, and that's removing a blighted property that was there before. I can't get enough empty lots built on in District Two to stop illegal dumping and other nefarious activities that go on, so another benefit to it. This is not only housing, it's infill housing, which is extremely difficult to do. You know, we push for it all the time, and here we have, you know, a builder that is looking to do this, and that, as far as your VMT goes, that's the number-one area to address that. And then, of course, affordable housing. We do not, as you heard from our friends at ACT and others, we do not have enough affordable housing in this community. We talk every day as a community, and certainly in these positions, about homelessness. You cannot address homelessness without addressing the fact that we have a housing crisis, and particularly an affordability crisis. And finally, I'll just say that, you know, when you put a multifamily housing project like this on a SAC RT line that is this, that really is one of our premier lines, that gets you just about anywhere you want to go on the system, very conveniently and very easily, that, again, screams success to me as a project as well. So I will be supporting the project. And with that, Supervisor Desmond?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you to my colleagues. I think we work very well together up here in trying to strive for more housing while being sensitive to the needs of the community, and I very much appreciate being a part of a board that is this thoughtful. I also want to thank, you know, the constituents that I represent for coming here today. I know it is a long hike to come downtown. I understand your concerns and your frustration with this project. Again, I'm born and raised in the same community, know the community very, very well. And Eric, I'll take issue with it a little bit. I mean, I know you're very, you had a lot of consternation about this arduous process. I will never deprive the public of an opportunity to be heard on something. And infill is tough. I mean, it is tough. We are doing some great things at the county that is going to make it easier and hopefully less arduous. But, you know, I appreciate you're on the cutting edge of some of these things, because this is one of the tougher projects. But I will also counter my comments to you, Eric, with echoing the sentiment of the chair. You know, we couldn't have a better property manager for this project. I mean, if you look at the other projects managed by his firm, they're all outstanding projects in the Arden Arcade and Carmichael area. So that gives me a lot of hope with respect to this project, so thank you. A few things I wanted to mention is that, you know, there are certainly still some issues and concerns about traffic. You know, I think back to the time when that hospital was there, and you had ninety-five beds, three hundred staff at the hospital. You had a high school right down the street that had hundreds of students and several hundred staff. There was a time that intersection was much busier than it's going to be with a project like this. I think that is beyond dispute. And I am very confident in our DOT folks and our Highway Patrol partners that we can address issues that come up. If you look at the roadway improvements that the applicant is going to be forced to make, there's not going to be a situation where you're going to have cars having to... having to yield to each other so people can pass each other on mission. That is not going to happen. And let me see, a couple other things. The aesthetics, you know, Chair Kennedy mentioned this, the properties, you know, there, there's a lot of ugly-looking apartment complexes in Carmichael in that community. This is not going to be one of them. I agree that this is going to be aesthetically an improvement in that community. And, and something I also want to mention to, to my constituents that are here, you know, my office reached out on six separate occasions since September wanting to meet with Representatives from Mona, and we were, either did not receive a response or were not able to coordinate it. We, we tried very hard to sit down with Representatives of your neighborhood, of your Neighborhood Association because that's extremely important to me. And I know my colleagues appreciate the fact that, assuming this is going to be approved today, I'll, I'll be the one that gets, gets the heat for it when, when problems arise. And I will continue to reach out to your, your Neighborhood Association, your Community Association, to work through these issues as they do arise. The last thing I want to bring up, and, and this is for, for Dominic Mogavero, the younger, I suppose, is this issue I brought up about where these projects, infill projects, interface with an existing single-family home, especially where they're looking into a backyard. Dominic, you and I have had a conversation. I would like to ask you if you would be willing to, on the West Project, where it's, I guess, the south side of the project, to install more mature trees along that side where it abuts that single-family home and raise the height of the fence. Now, I know our, our fence height is, is seven feet, and if we were going to do more than that, I'm looking at our, our Planning Director now, we would need some kind of use permit. Could, could I make a request or make a motion to impose that on that from here? Todd?
So a real quick clarification on that point. We did take a look at the zoning code provision as it relates to fences. The seven feet is a limitation in single-family. Obviously, this is multifamily zone property. When I read the zoning code as it relates to multifamily uses, it says there's a minimum of six feet. It does not have a maximum.
Okay. And Dominic, you indicated to me you'd be okay with that. And then on the other project where you have, they're very close, the setback is not as far from the condo complex, I guess on the east side, and that third-story balcony is what concerns me, where it's looking right into the backyard. What, and I talked to our, our Planning Director about this and Kimber about removing the balcony on the third floor, which will probably make it, I guess, you know, a little more inexpensive for you, actually remove the balcony, but also do the same thing there in terms of more mature trees and an eight-foot fence. Would you be willing to accept those if my, my colleagues agree and I impose that as part of a motion?
Please, can you, just, can you come to the podium just so we can get on the record?
I forgot that we're on video. Supervisor, that would be just fine with us. To make sure I'm clear on the east side, you would want an eight-foot fence, but we would just want to be clear on exactly what the, where the context is. And then the mature trees, I think that's a win-win for everyone.
And remove that one balcony on the third story that's looking right down, and it's actually pretty close. Okay. And on the, on the west side, it's just the fence and the mature trees where it abuts the single-family home.
I think that's a totally reasonable change to make, and we're happy to do that.
Okay. And with that, Mr. Chair, I'd make the motion with those, a motion to support staff's recommendations and deny or support the appeal with those additional conditions placed upon the project.
We have a motion second. Before we vote, just, is staff clear?
Yes, we are.
Okay, thank you. Please vote.
And is this for both? We're taking, we can take them both together for 85?
That was, was that West?
So that was on the West. That was number 85. And I'd make the same motion to approve the appeal and impose those additional, those additional conditions on the east side.
Unanimous vote.
Thank you very much. Thank you, everybody, for coming out. Next item, please.
Okay. Item 87, Board of Supervisors' Appointments from Own Ranks to Various Regional Boards and Commissions. There's three boards here that we need to make some appointments or reappointments. Regional Water Authority, the current member is Supervisor Kennedy, and the alternate is Mr. Grinstead?
I'd move to keep it the same.
Okay.
The vote?
Unanimous vote. Sacramento Central Groundwater Authority, the appointed member is Patrick, Supervisor Patrick Hume. The designee is Matt Seetal, and the appointed alternate is Kerry Schmitz.
Mr. Hume?
I'll move to keep it the same.
Okay, second?
Unanimous vote. And then finally, this is the SETA Governing Board. The appointed member is Supervisor Kennedy, and the other appointed member is Supervisor Desmond.
I would move to keep that the same.
Okay. Unanimous vote. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is your nominations and appointments. Item number 88, you are continuing to January 7th the Community Review Commission, Casumnas Area Community Planning Advisory Council, Sacramento County Alcohol and Drug Advisory Board, Sacramento County Behavioral Health Youth Advisory Board, Sacramento County Youth Commission, Veterans Advisory Commission, continuing to January 28th, American River Parkway Advisory Committee, Assessment Appeals Board, Cemetery Advisory Commission, Children's Coalition, Elk Grove Casumnas Cemetery District, Galt Arno Cemetery District, Law Library, Board of Trustees, and the South Sacramento Area Community Planning Advisory Council. Your first board is the Adult and Aging Commission.
Reappoint Deborah Bonner and reappoint Deborah Larson and continue the remainder to January 7th.
Thank you. Developmental Disabilities Planning and Advisory Council.
Reappoint Patty Pacheco and continue the remainder to January 7th.
Equal Employment Advisory Committee.
Reappoint Martin Ross and commit, continue the remainder to January 7th.
Human Services Coordinating Council.
Continue to January 7th.
In-Home Supportive Services Advisory Committee.
Continue to January 7th.
Lock Management Corporation, also known as the Association.
Please continue to January 28th.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk, did we have Mission Oaks Recreation and Park District?
We're coming up on that.
Oh, okay.
Yes, our next one is the Maternal Child and Adolescent Health Advisory Board.
Reappoint Effie Ruggles and continue the remainder to January 7th.
Okay. And Mission Oaks Recreation and Park District?
Please continue to January 28th.
North Highlands Foothill Farms Community Planning Advisory Council. We'll start with Supervisor Desmond.
Please reappoint Suzanne Yule and continue the remainder to January 28th.
Thank you. And Supervisor Frost?
Please nominate Tamara Sandifer.
Okay, would you like to continue to January 28th?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Public Advisory Board? Health Advisory Board?
Reappoint Bakalu Amari and continue the remainder to January 7th.
Thank you. Recreation and Park Commission, we'll start with Supervisor Desmond.
Please reappoint William Hambrick.
And Supervisor Frost?
Continue to January 28th.
Thank you. Sacramento County Commission on the Status of Women and Girls, we'll start with Supervisor Serna.
Please continue to January 28th.
Supervisor Kennedy?
Continue to January 7th.
And Supervisor Frost?
Please nominate Rachel Williams.
And Supervisor Hume?
Please continue to December 10th.
And then, Chair, we do have a youth commissioner seat. Are you, do you have that on your notes? Let me just bring that back if we need to.
Nope.
Okay. Sacramento County Employees Retirement Board?
Would that, I have, I have one name without a title. Would that be Brooklyn Pruitt?
No, I, I have.
Oh, here we go. Okay. Yeah, Robert Igualo?
Yes, sir.
And continue the remainder to January 7th.
Okay. You only have one seat on that board, so that one's finished, so we'll close that one out.
Okay.
Okay. Sacramento County Mental Health Board, we'll start with Supervisor Serna.
January 28th, please.
No problem. Supervisor Kennedy?
Continue to January 28th.
And Supervisor Hume?
Continue to December 10th.
Thank you. And then Sacramento Housing and Redevelopment Commission, Supervisor Hume?
I would like to continue to January 7th.
Okay, thank you. That concludes your nominations, and now we're at the county executive comments.
Thank you, Flo. Supervisor, just wanted to make a couple of quick announcements, try to keep it within my two minutes, to celebrate three pretty large accomplishments. One, recognize Alice Kruger. She's our Sacramento County Employee Benefits Manager. You may know her from open enrollment, you may know her from health and, all the health and dental benefits, the deferred compensation, the student, thank you, the student loan forgiveness program that she runs, and also the health student loan program that she also runs. In addition to all this, she was recently recognized for the 50 corridor TMA or the Transportation Management Authority for her Golden Trail Blazer Path Awards for promoting sustainable transportation for Sacramento County and Sacramento County residents. This is perfect timing, given the cap that you just approved on November 6th. With Alice's leadership, the county continues to offer resources to employees to shift their attitudes and transportation methods to alternative transportations. She does things like promoting information, transportation information on our employee newsletter, hosting Clean Air Days, Clean Air Day events, hosting bike repair events, and also coordinating the county's employee transportation survey, which will be used for strategic planning for our transportation and commute alternatives for our employees. So thank you to Alice and what she has done. The other one is I'm equally as excited about, and you've probably heard this for quite a long time. I remember talking with Bruce Swagstaff some time ago about this. Sacramento County Public Health has earned their accreditation for the Public Health Accreditation Board, which is an incredible event. They've been working on it for quite some time. I think Supervisor Kennedy and I talked about in interview that you've done.
Supervisor Serna as well.
Supervisor Serna, thank you. Dr. Cessier has been working on this for quite some time, and we're incredibly proud of what this does, which means that Public Health Division has met the high national standards of public health. The accreditation shows the public health's commitment to quality, accountability, and continuous improvement. And with this accreditation and what we've been focused on for quite some time, in addition to all the, the requirements of the accreditation, but this also opens up doors for other programmings and grants and other opportunities as having that community, or having that accreditation. So very proud of Department of Health Services and Dr. K and her team, or Dr. Cessier and her team, sorry. The last thing I would do is, the last thing I would mention is Sacramento County Animal Shelter received an award from the Sacramento Bee as Sacramento's favorite list. Readers voted the Bradshaw Animal Shelter as one of their favorites, and they were very happy that they received that award. So thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. And I think between 2020 and 2023, the public actually knows her more as Dr. K.
I try not to do that.
Supervisor Serna?
Great, thank you. So I was going to make mention of this privately with our county CEO and our clerk of the board, but reminding myself that what I want to say and propose involves, most importantly, my colleagues, I thought this would be the right time and place. And I'm not to be too presumptuous here, but, you know, assuming I am elected to serve as next year's chair, and knowing and confirming that we have, I believe, assigned 12 Wednesday holds for, for board meetings, I would like us in the next two weeks, or at least before we leave for recess, to maybe reconsider with the cooperation of the offices of my colleagues, adding some of those Wednesdays. Because one of the things, and this is just a pet peeve, and maybe others share it, but I cannot stand being rushed up here. And, and, and it's, it's nobody's fault. I mean, our clerk of the board does an incredible job, and her staff, at trying to figure out how to time items, and, and, you know, there's so many uncertainties to what comes off consent and, you know, how many, how many people show up. So I know that we are already doing our very best, so it's absolutely not, this is not a criticism of that tremendous effort. But I do think, especially with some large-scale master plan approvals in the very near horizon, and given the fact that, quite honestly, we, we have a number of perfunctory items on almost every agenda that I would like us to think more carefully about maybe adding some Wednesdays, maybe no more than three or four, and then doing kind of what we did in the past, and in the past, that means about 16, 17 years ago, where you, we all expected that there would be two board meetings, each of the, the two weeks that we would have board meetings during the month. And the Wednesdays were held for land use approvals and, and things of that nature. I would like us to maybe not necessarily resurrect precisely that format, but maybe look at with the addition of some Wednesdays, just having that flexibility to maybe, you know, reassign things, have, have the time, a wider timeframe to reassign things so we don't feel rushed, or like we can't ask the questions that we want to ask, or, or the, the public doesn't feel rushed, or staff. The other thing I can't help but comment on is it drives me nuts when I see in the back of chambers, staff sitting around for hours waiting for an item, and knowing that they have so much work that they need to accomplish, we're kind of unfairly keeping them from what they principally are here for. And while I appreciate, you know, that they, they have the interest and they do come regularly to board meetings to provide important testimony, perhaps we can just tighten up how we manage their use of time so that it's much more efficient. And I think by adding some, some more days, we can do that, and then, you know, maybe even think of reconstituting the whole concept of lunch for people, which we don't currently have. So that's what I wanted to share with principally David and Flo, but in all fairness to my colleagues, obviously it impacts their schedule, so I thought I'd bring it up in, at the end of today's meeting. So I look forward to working with, with both of you, my staff, I think are, are well aware of this now, that it's an interest of mine, and I think it's something we can probably accomplish in the next couple of weeks.
Thank you, Supervisor. Thank you. I won't let the door hit me on the way out. Supervisor Hume?
Thank you, Chair. I apologize I didn't go through the formal process of doing an in memoriam, so I just wanted to note the passing of dear friend of mine, Jack Simas. Do you have him in memoriam?
I do, that's my name.
We'll just, yeah, you start. Thank you. Jack Simas, 89, passed away at his home in Wilton, California on November 11th, 2024. Jack was born in Ione, California on October 19th, 1935, to John Thomas Simas and Irene Ann Allen. He served in the U.S. Army at Fort Hood, Washington. There we go. Fort Hood, Washington. Jack married Glenda L. Walton on May 21st, 1955, and was married for 69 years. Jack and his brothers owned Simas Floor Company. He continued stopping by the shop until he was 84. Jack had a rich, fulfilling life centered around family, home, and community. Living in Wilton for 58 years, he made their house a home, gardening year-round and sharing the fruits of his labor with others. On Saturdays, he wore overalls and a T-shirt while working on his property. Jack was a deeply beloved husband, dad, grandpa, and papap to his family. He was a rock to many and a character to all. He survived by his wife Glenda, four children, Larry Simas, Joan Catenhorn and sons Tanner and Samuel, Michelle Simas and sons Jonathan, Christian, Julian, Scott Simas and their children, Austin, Taylor Cooper, Cannon, Sophie, three great-grandchildren, and brother, Ken Simas. He was preceded in death by his mother and father, John and Irene Simas, and siblings, Alan, Robert, William, Marion, Margaret, and David. Thank you, and I apologize for stepping on any toes.
Thank you. Supervisor Frost, and thank you for giving me the, the note before the meeting.
Oh, no problem.
I appreciate it.
I just wanted to close in memory of a good friend of mine who I met through my service with Sacramento County. It's Eldorado County Supervisor John Heidall. And John Heidall was born on October 10th, 1951, in Series, California, to Joel and Margaret Heidall. He grew up in Series along with his six siblings, working on the family ranch, growing peaches and cherries, and driving for the family trucking business. John earned his Eagle Scout rank by the age of 16. He met his future wife, Eileen, in religious education classes, and they started dating in their senior year of Series High School. John went on to study mechanical engineering at Cal Poly, San Luis Obispo, where he earned his bachelor's degree. John and Eileen married in 1972 and moved to the Sacramento area, where John built a successful career in aerospace industry, working for 31 years at Aerojet and 10 years at Northrop, Northrop Grumman. John's true calling and passion, however, was public service. He used his extensive knowledge, clear vision, and personal connections to He used his extensive knowledge, clear vision, and personal connections to improve the community in his 46 years as an El Dorado Hills resident. His motto of service before self guided his involvement in numerous boards and committees, helping veterans, seniors, and youth. A member of St. John's Parish for 50 years, he sang in the choir, served as a lector, and was a life member of the Knights of Columbus. He served the last eight years as an El Dorado County Supervisor, District One, working to enhance the area's quality of life. John was a devoted husband, father, grandfather, and a man of deep and abiding faith. After suffering a heart attack, John was called home to the Lord on November 2nd, 2024. He is survived by Eileen, his wife of 52 years, their five daughters, Catherine Maureen and, Catherine Maureen and husband Ben, Christine and husband Josh, Rachel and husband John, Brittany and Marissa, and 12 grandchildren, Jacob, Samuel, Tyler, Evelyn, Rebecca, Ryan, Claire, Luca, Mateo, Theo, Walker, and Waverly. He is also survived by siblings Claudia, Marty, Mike, and Rita, and preceded in death by his parents Joel and Margaret, and brothers Rob and Joel. John had not run for reelection. He was going to retire, and his wife were going to travel in their RV. They were good friends of my husband and I, and his community talked him into running for the, I guess, the fire department, and he won the election three days after he passed. It was a, a big surprise to all of us, and I wanted to close in memory of John. May he rest in eternal peace.
Thank you Supervisor. So we will adjourn today in the name of, in the memory of Jack Simas and John Heidall.